Wait, can we turn subtitles back on?
No, that would destroy me. That would kill it. That would kill it.
Yes!
Oh, that would destroy it.
We were doing work uniforms.
My god, Aiden.
We're doing work uniforms?
We're doing work uniforms.
I'll, I'll charge. Do you want me to charge fifty dollars now or a hundred dollars after I climb?
Jack, why?
Cause I'm a prostitute.
Now I need to take this shit off.
I can't.
It's uncomfortable. This is why I quit.
Are you ready, Luke?
I'm, I'm ready. I can't guarantee if it wags out.
Hey, I got, yeah, I got red zeppelin in the back here.
Let's just start the game, guys. I really wanna play the game. It is recording. It's been recording.
Okay, cool. Alright, I'm gonna, I'm gonna... Yeah, alright, we all ready?
Alright.
I'll aid him later. Yeah, I mean, that, that, that doesn't, that doesn't affect how we start. In fact, Coleman will be there as well.
Coleman, you can leave.
Yeah, that's right. He's dead.
He is currently dead. Uh, we have to wait for Aiden then.
Also, Lexi, you should get off of Discord.
Oh, yeah, I forgot.
Am I still on Discord?
I got too caught up in setting up Charmander.
Honestly, look, uh, it's funny, like, looking at Charlie, this is, like, ha- it kind of fits, like, your voice coming out of there, it kind of weirdly works. Alright, Aiden's here, that means we can start.
I know it's really small, but I just wanted Lex.
Oh, nice.
Hello, everyone, and welcome to Campaign Two Point Five, it's a Christmas special, even though it's no longer Christmas. Oops, my bad. Last we left off, our group of, uh, a- a- adventurers struck a deal with the mafia, uh, requiring them to slay a kraken so the mafia could put down Hawk. The captain of the guards who was giving them a little bit of trouble. However, complications arose, the kraken was fought, but one of the valued allies, Dark Knight Grim Reaper, sadly passed away. Anyway, I am your sex worker dungeon master, Jack Corey, and I'm going to start doing those kind of interactions again. I forgot to do it last time. Um, and we're just gonna jump straight into it as the, before the group, as the group could barely mourn their companion, they saw Saint Nick in the night sky.
Mourn?
So, as you guys look up in the sky, you see the sleigh bells ring, dancer, prancer, vixen, all the fun gang, as they slowly fly farther, farther away.
Wait, sorry. I, I saw Aiden's message right as Jack.
Only Karuk.
Um, okay, so... What would you all like to do?
Let's panic.
Yeah, let's panic. I was about to ask, can we panic?
Wait, so Santa's heading towards the town or?
Actually, can I, can I, can I roll for a panic attack check?
Yeah, sure. Roll me a wisdom saving throw.
Alright, we still have the coaster over here.
Yay! Yay!
Yeah.
Nah, I don't know. They've only been for like, they've only technically been for two sessions, and Zephyr, I feel, rolls well enough to be a completely different character. Uh, I rolled, I rolled a thirteen for the wisdom.
Um, you kind of begin to like, oh no, oh no, 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 like, all these thoughts are crossing your head, and, but you're, you were able to calm yourself down well enough without suffering any, like, psychic damage or anything like that.
Oh my god.
Panic attack is psychic damage? Wait, what?
Oh god.
Oh god!
Hold on, I wanna, I do wanna, uh...
You ever have a panic attack? It sucks.
Oh, no, yeah, no, I've had them. They, they suck a lot.
This is Santa. I think now's a great time to try and grab the eyes of the kraken, like, we can't...
Yes, you go over to the... The giant head of the kraken and, uh, both, I'm pretty, I know, o- 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 one person tried to attack the eye, but it didn't, I don't think it worked, so there's two perfectly good eyes.
No, we missed.
I tried. It didn't work.
Yeah, there's two perfectly sustainable eyes.
Okay, I wanna grab both of them then.
Alright, cool. You, uh... Rit, writ both eyes out of the giant, uh, head, uh, has like the eye tendrils or whatever, rip off, uh, and they're a little s- slimy and sticky, but you got them in your hands now.
Oh, okay. Uh, yeah, I'm gonna put them away. Uh, I guess, and, uh, I'm gonna, uh, can I loot, uh, Coleman's body?
I think, I think his body is the first place I go, so let it be known.
Oh, so you wanna go loot him first?
So, Anisha...
So you wanna loot him first, is what I'm doing.
Anisha, you looting him?
You, you walk up to Dark Knight and you see... You, you see, uh, Karuk standing over Dark Knight's body.
I'd probably be over there too at this point.
So, uh, Karuk, you watch as Anisha kind of goes into loot.
Have you no respect?
What? It's not like he's gonna need it.
Back up.
He'd be fighting valiantly for us. We're not to be disrespecting him by taking all of his worldly belongings.
Aren't you a part of his demise?
Demise?
I saw you smack him.
That was two peas in an accident.
Nah, but you're two times bigger than you normally are.
I... I am not to be encouraging this discussion.
I'm still...
Leave Dark Knight alone.
Anisha still goes in for the...
Yeah, can we try to...
Can I, like, grab her head and, like, lift her up?
Get it!
Roll me a, roll me a post athletics check.
Athletics, okay. Oh, my athletic thing, good.
Uh-oh.
Oh yeah, I got it too.
Alright, I have a plus nine modifier. I also rolled a two, so that's...
You just don't get a nat one.
Yeah, alright, you are hopefully holding Anisha's head as Anisha's, like, not even, like, but you bet, you don't, you don't even know she's struggling.
What might be telling you?
Let go of me already.
You are not to be touching him. We will be burying him as he is.
Jesus, fine, just let go.
Um, before, before, before Karuk drops, uh, Anisha, Macostra's gonna attempt to mage hand at least one of the eyes out of, uh... I'm trying to do it at least stealthily or just in the chaos.
Yeah, roll me a, uh, roll me a stealth check.
Alright, um, this is a weird question. I have, because of the armor I'm wearing, I have... I don't, I'm not getting it, I'm not asking for advantage. Um, I'm actually asking for something different. Uh, because of the armor I'm wearing, I have disadvantage, but since it's a magical thing separate from my body, would it just be normal?
Uh, sure, yeah, I'll see.
Alright, thank you.
Uh, I need to actually add the eye.
Uh, fifteen.
Cool, roll me a perception check.
Anish, Aniswee.
What the fuck is that? That's a mod one.
Oh, really?
You... So, you actually didn't get two eyes. You only got one. This whole time, you only got one, according to your own thoughts now. And as you're looking at that one eye, you're getting real distracted, because it's looking kind of tasty. And you, you, you know they're poisonous, and you wouldn't eat them, but god, you wish you could, cause this looks...
I, I wouldn't eat them, okay?
Scrumptious.
I was about to, I was gonna be...
Like, you, you shouldn't eat it. It's poison, but, oh my god, if you could. You've never seen something that looks tastier or more delicious.
That gives me ideas. That gives me ideas. I know what I'm gonna do when I get back to found now.
Oh.
Oh no.
Hold on. I need to still add, uh, I'm not even, I've just realized, I've been rolling with Delilah this entire time.
Oh my god.
Hey, there, Delilah, what's it like we managed?
Oh, I forgot to switch back to Anisha.
Well, then, switch back.
I am so...
Uh, my...
Have we buried Grim Reaper?
Yeah.
Yeah, let's bury Grim Reaper.
Room begins the process of burying Dark Knight Grim Reaper.
Uh, I do also think, I don't have, I do have better perception too, but I don't think I would have noticed anything with my rolls so far.
Yeah, because with a mod, when you have roll, what did you, like, roll base, like a... Yeah, a two versus, unless you have a thirteen.
Yeah, no, it's, it's a plus one for perception and a plus six.
You're distracted because that, that eye looks really tasty. Anyway, Dark Knight's buried. Does anyone say any words? I'm mourning him.
For sacrifice is not to be forgotten. Farewell, Mabuki.
Alright.
I was worried when I thought, sorry.
I just wanna, uh, put a flower by his grave.
Oh, yeah, you put a nice little flower next to his grave.
Didn't, didn't he ever drop a dagger or anything?
Anisha starts digging up the grave to loot it.
I'm not gonna, I don't...
What are you asking for, Macostra?
Um, I have an extra dagger. Um, I think just from having, no, I don't, no, I don't, never mind. I was gonna put a dagger by the grave, but I thought I, yeah.
Idiot.
Yeah, uh, instead, I think they'll just think to themselves, uh, just a general, "I'm sorry," just like a, "I'm sorry," this... This needs to stop. "I'm sorry, Dark Knight. You were a true friend." Just like to myself.
Wish we would be finding out who he really was, though. That would have been nice.
It's okay, Karuk. I'm, I'm sure, maybe we'll know someday.
Do we bury him? Did he bury him with the mask on?
Pretty sure.
Probably, if we bury...
I, I wouldn't have taken it off.
Yeah.
Damn it. I, uh, I kinda wish I'd been now.
We are probably to be going.
The killer Santa was headed towards, uh, Ryson. We should be on our way.
So, as you guys begin to head your way, Karuk came here on a horse. So, two of you could go by on horseback and try to get there, uh, quicker.
Uh, can I go on horseback? Somebody?
Sure, who else would like to?
Uh, Karuk not being horse skin, hold Karuk and other person. Somebody else...
I'll, I'll go on it. I'm small.
I don't want Anisha to go with me.
Too bad.
Any kind of shoes, Anisha?
I'm mad at Anisha for trying to loot, uh, Dark Knight's body, so I asked Macostra if Macostra will come with me.
Sure. Uh, Macostra, Macostra will, um...
You're not even questioning who the fuck...
As, as, uh, as they get up there, I take, like, uh, the polymorph potion out and I chug it down again, and turn back into Zephyr.
Okay, that's the thing.
Uh...
I didn't know that existed.
Zephyr and Anya?
Zephyr and Anya are on the horse.
Hey, the, the, in, out of character, the mob isn't gonna recognize Macostra.
Hmm?
That is...
No.
The mob isn't gonna recognize them, so might as well just, yeah.
Cool. Yeah, you watch as Macostra's face warps back into the features of Zephyr.
From, from here on out...
Get on the horse.
From here on out until further notice, I'm Zephyr. The mob isn't gonna recognize anyone else, so we should probably get going.
Alright.
So, you guys on the way? You, everyone begins their journey. However, um, no one can quite outrun Santa, he's on a sleigh. Um, so i- it's hard, uh, the horse, or e- e- even on foot, you guys wouldn't be able to get there soon enough. Which sucks, cause I would love to show what happened at the town, only someone was sat there right now. Oh, wait!
Oh, son of a bitch.
Uh, someone is. That's Coleman. Uh, a carriage... Pulls into the town and stops. There's one, uh, very tired-looking, like, intern-looking guy, uh, massages his head and he turns and says, "Alright, we're here, sir." As, um, slowly, two boots, or two, like, shoes, tch, tch, land in the snow.
I open the door from the carriage, and I look around at the town full of band, like, mobsters and bandits and thieves doing all their crazy stuff, and everything getting ruined, and I say...
Yeah, baby! Hell yeah!
Yeah, yeah, I know.
We're all very mad at you.
Was this the fucking Palutena reveal trailer?
Luba is in Smash.
Oh god.
Luba lobs his way in.
Hey, anybody here know where I can find somebody in charge of this town?
Um, Kyle kind of steps up to you and, uh, is like, "Okay, um, Ryson has a mayor, from what I believe," as he checks, like, his, uh, information. "And she is the bastard son of the former king who was killed in Babylon. Um, so, uh, the king of, 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 of..."
I really don't care. Where is her office?
Uh, I'll, I'll take you to it. As he begins running, "Oh, um, currently, there's a mob turf war going on. Uh, the mafia is fighting the guards of the town."
Yeah. I think I can tell.
Yeah, you watch, it's just like, it's, like, a guard, it's just like slitting a mafia member's throat, and he's just like, "Moth scum, ah!" as he, like, falls on the ground. Yeah, um, let's go! As, uh, you begin shuffling your way down there.
Alright.
Um, as your other intern, um, Terrence walks up behind you and says, "What are we doing here again?"
We're here to look into that Killer Santa fellow. Uh, I, I think they may be connected to the events of Nocturne. This is just the guidance of my, my, with the great Luba, told me that these events may be connected.
Yeah, when I signed up to work at your church, it was because my mom made me. I didn't know I'd be having to go to a fucking mob town because of you.
You're fine. You've got divine protection on your hand.
Yeah, well, I'm not sure Luba's even real, and Kyle's like...
It's alright. Everyone will come around eventually.
I mean, why is the god named after you? Why would you name a god after yourself?
I'm named after him! Not the other way around. Not the other way around. Let's go talk to the mayor.
Alright, yeah, you guys begin shuffling over that way, um, as you arrive at the mayor's office. Um, as, uh, there's a, there's a red-haired man, so standing outside of there, just kind of, whew, like, fanning himself as he looks in and says, "Um, hello, how can I help the three of you?" Fine, gentlemen.
Hello, I'd like to speak to the mayor of this fine town.
Um... Can I ask, who are you?
Who am I? Who am I? I'm Luba Hubbard, the, the great founder of the Church of Luba and the sole survivor... Wait, no, no, no. I'm Luba Hubbard.
Sole survivor of what?
Sole survivor of the Nocturne calamity, uh, founder of the Church of Luba. I'm a very important person, and I need to speak to the mayor of this town.
And I'm Kyle, Kyle says. Hello, Kyle, I'm Hawk. Hawk says, shaking his head. And, well, as much as I would love for the three of you to meet our mayor, we're currently under attack by the mob, so I can't just let anyone go into see here. Fascinating as letting a sole survivor would be. Uh, do you know how many people come here claiming that, by the way? More than one!
Alright.
So many people. Oh, okay.
Alright, listen to me for a second. I'm here to help with your little mob problem. Why, why else would I come to a garbage hole like this?
Oh my god. Making fun of my hometown. Alright, cool. Yeah, no, 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 no. No, let's see how this goes for you. Please keep going.
Oh boy, we have another Sam cake.
Woo me with your words, magic man.
I need to speak to the mayor. Either, either you're gonna let me in, or I'm gonna let myself in, if you understand what I'm saying.
Yes! Oh, yes! You know, with the mob going on right now, my job's been so boring. It's just people coming up trying to kill me, but you are a delightful change of pace. No, 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 please, please, go ahead and make me move out of the way for you. Oh, yes. Come on, come on, hit me. Hit me, come on, come on, come on, please, please, come on, hit me, come on!
Alright, I, uh, I, uh, swing my mace at, I, no, 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 I, uh, I touch him and use inflipped wounds, first of all.
Roll the, roll a touch attack.
Roll the touch.
I'm gonna work the indie beyond with the new computer and watch the animation actually work the way it's supposed to and not lag. Cool, I got a seven, or twelve, I got a twelve.
To hit?
Yes, to hit.
A twelve to hit?
Yeah.
Are you... Kind of like going for him, and Hawk just like s- slightly moves out of the way and you miss him, as he says, "Looks like you missed."
Alright, I, uh...
Try again.
I pull out my mace.
Oh, you're getting that evil on my ass. Okay, I can dig it.
What are you...
I'm just gonna try to hit him with my mace.
Oh, god.
Oh.
Hawk, this time, he looks like he's having a little more trouble, but he parries it this time, as he, um, goes. Interesting, still no, but I like your, I like your style, Mr. Luba. You got spunk.
Surely, if you don't want me to talk to the mayor, there's someone in this town that I could talk to about the problem.
What problem? The mob?
Who cares about the mob? The Killer Santa!
Well, that's a plot twist. Alright, come on. As he, uh, turns around and starts walking forward with you. Wow, you should have said that from the beginning, muchacho.
I give a weird look at my goons and start falling.
As, uh, Ky- Kyle looks at you and just gives you a thumbs up, and Terrence is like... Yeah. What would you, uh, what would you find? So, yeah, you step into the, uh, the town, uh, the places, you see just a bunch of guards kind of laid up, kind of in their, uh, in a resting place, kind of, uh, there's some... These look like people who got out of the way and were not damaged, but all of them look very tired. Uh, and as Hawk brings you forward, he brings you, uh, into the mayor's office. As, uh, the mayor is just looking, she's looking incredibly stressed, as she looks up at you and says, uh, "Can I help you?" Oh, Hawk, who have you brought to me?
Oh my fucking god.
Guys, if you don't want me to use Fire Emblem music, I won't. It sounds like you guys hate...
Honestly, it's a nice change of fire to hear things that I don't know.
It's ins- it's just weird to hear it coming from you, Jack.
It is.
I'll stop using it.
It's, it's a nice change of pace.
I was just listening to this song earlier today, um, while playing...
You've seen Blade out of this.
Um... Well... Does, does nobody here know who I am? I, I feel like, you people, I'm the, literally the only person who survived the, whatever. Uh, my name's...
Survived the what? The mayor says.
Survived the Nocturne event. Everybody else died, and I'm fine, because my god, Luba saved me. Luba Hubbard, founder of the Church of Luba, nice to meet you.
Never heard of it, but nice to meet you too.
This is why I don't come to Sestern. Alright.
Kyle says, "Yeah, fu- fuck Sestern. This is Starfriend, sir."
Right, my bad. I, I live in Sestern. Uh...
Yeah, that was honestly there, yeah, you kind of had a senior moment there, sir.
Hey, hey, don't talk back. Fine.
Oh, dear god.
I, uh... So, uh, I'm here to help with you, the, my church is here to help with your little, uh, Killer Santa problem, also maybe the mob problem, if you care about that? Well, what do you mean, what Killer Santa problem? I was let in here because I mentioned Killer Santa.
No, I let you in here because you said you had, um, stuff, information about the mob, Hawk says. What's this sort of Killer Santa though? Let's talk about that. Could be interesting.
I've, uh, heard from a reliable source that there's been some Killer Santa... That, that the mob here has some information about Killer Santa, and I'm thinking, and you say it's false, but I've heard from a reliable source that there's a Killer Santa in this area.
Uh, Laura's massaging her head and says, "So, who is this reliable source? And if it is your god, you can get out of my office."
Well, of course, I checked to receive guidance from my god before I came here, but no, I have a worldly source about the Killer Santa, uh... I'm afraid I can't share that with you right now.
Yeah, that's real fascinating. Hawk, why did you bring this man to me? And Hawk says, "He said he had information about the mob, but looks like..."
If you wanna know about the mob, I can tell you about the mob. They're here, and they're scheming, and they're doing stuff, and they're... They're, they're making bold claims, bold claims about the Killer Santa.
What is happening?
Alright, fine.
Can I roll persuasion for this?
New persuasion check.
Oh my goodness.
God, uh...
This poor man has lost everything since he lost suggestion.
Fourteen.
Uh, Hawk kind of looks and smiles at you.
Nobody knows who I am here.
Just says, "Alright, I have an idea. Laura, let me make this man a spy, alright? We'll have him infiltrate the mob, and it'll be in and out easy as pie. How about that?"
I, 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 I'm a member of the church. I'm a known member of the church. I'm not sure how easily I could infiltrate this...
Yeah, buddy, hate to tell you, nobody knows what the fuck your church is here, alright?
Well, the mob's not from around here, so maybe they, they might... Fine, I'll try this little spy. If it goes wrong, it's your fault, not mine. I told you this was a bad idea.
Be whiteful. Anyway, um, I guess we should be on our... Do you hear that? As... You do hear something.
Uh-oh.
You swear you can hear sleigh bells. As Laura says, "I don't hear anything."
Well, I hear it.
As they get louder and louder.
So, there, there's a window in this room, right?
You're gonna fly through it?
There is a window.
I'm not gonna fly through it. I'm gonna look out the window and be like...
Is it broken still?
Sleigh bells ringing.
As you see, I think you're getting closer and closer. And you see Santa. Roll me a perception check.
Is he gonna kamikaze into the building?
Oh, ooh, twenty-eight.
Oh my god.
Oh, dear god.
Santa, you see Santa standing on top of the sleigh, holding an ornament, and he pops it open and throws it.
Run, run, run! Grabbing Kyle and, uh, Terrence. Rush out of the room.
Um, Hawk, uh, uh, seeing, kind of realizing the same thing in a split second, also kind of like dives forward and just has, like, just barely missing... The ornament comes in the room, explodes, just barely missing Hawk as he lands, uh, next to you and says, "That was a close..." Fuck the mayor, as he turns back.
Oh no!
And there's a bunch of gas around, as the gas kind of disperses.
Am I also breathing in this gas?
Oh, no, it's just the mayor that breathes in the gas.
Okay.
You die, you die.
As she, uh, oh, fuck. No. Ah, gentlemen, what are we doing? We need to get set up for the Christmas celebration. I've been focusing too much on the mob. I forgot about the reason for the season.
Oh no.
She's walking out, uh, as she says, "Everyone, everyone," and she go- turns to the guards, "You don't need to worry about the mob anymore. They just aren't feeling the Christmas spirit."
I'm gonna use this first level detect magic to see if I can figure out what the hell's going on here.
Oh god, it's something, yes, a type. Oh no, oh no!
I think it's a nade.
Um... No, sorry, I was just getting the song up.
Okay.
You detect some innate, a magical ability radiating off of her, but it's not like suggestion, and it's not like any other mind control magic you've seen.
Fuck.
It's almost as if...
Why are you...
Her brain's been rewired.
Oh no. He's under some kind of spell. I can't qu- I can't quite get a read on it, but...
So, you want us...
My brain's been rewired.
You want us to stop going after the mob, miss? Yes, yes, the problem is not that they're evil or attacking our people, the problem is that they don't celebrate Christmas. I want us to pull out all the stops, alright? Big ass tree in the center of the town, carolers, twenty-four seven. Each one of you needs to learn the harmonies to some Christmas songs, alright? Bob, you'd be a really good bass, as Bob says, "What? No, I wouldn't! Why? Oh my gosh, and Sal, you're a pathetic excuse for a tenor."
Who are all these people that she's talking to?
Cool.
The guards.
The guards.
Okay.
Oh my gosh, twenty-four hours a day, I want all of you to be rehearsing the Christmas carols. I'll be working on the tree. We need a big celebration.
Don't listen to her!
Stop focusing on the mob.
That ornament did something. It's got some kind of unholy influence.
Hawk, would you please kindly escort this man out of my building?
Hawk, you, you, you know what's happening. She breathed in the ornament gas. You saw that, right?
I don't know what you're talking about. Come on, let's go. As, uh, as Hawk puts his hand over your shoulder, and begins walking with you, he just says, "Just play a walk."
Oh, this is unacceptable. I'm an... You can't do this to me!
As Kyle and Terrence both, like, look at each other and are like, "Um, thanks for the chicken, miss," as they walk away, and she... um, thanks for the chicken, miss, as they walk away, and she's like, I didn't give you guys a chicken, as they say, ah, run! And eventually step out, um.
Goodness, holy crap.
As you guys kind of, uh, as Hawk kind of looks and says, oh. Uh, okay, okay, let's do what to do. I need you to not do anything for like, five hours, he hands you a, a key and says, I need you to stay in this room alone and isolate yourself for like, seven hours, okay? Then I will come get you and I will explain everything.
But what is this key?
Just listen to me right now, alright? This town's fucked right now, and I need your help. Here, he uh, writes down an address, this isn't in, the, the room's already settled for, it's, it's a room I got, just, just go there and wait. Can you do that for me?
So you want me to go to this inn and wait?
Just wait, all you need to do, and I will come back and then you will, my, I will explain everything to you, but if you're not there, then just don't leave, alright? As he uh, kind of
Alright.
Dashing up to his tower, and uh, he's kind of planning something.
Well, boys, let's head to the inn, I guess.
Sounds good.
Hell is going on here?
Uh, you guys arrive at the inn and get in the room, as Kyle and Terrence, as they saddle, Kyle and Terrence begin just kind of like pat cake, pat cake, and Terrence is like, take her, make me a cake as fast as you can.
Okay, I'm gonna get, I'm gonna get you two a separate room.
Uh, yeah, it's about, uh, I think I said it was like, yeah, it's, it's about for both of them, it costs about eight gold for them to both have a room, or it's, yeah.
How much gold, wait, how much gold do I start with coming in here?
If you want them to share, I think it's
We'll say you have about fifty gold, just because you're a pretty money minded person.
Okay. Wait, what am I doing? Uh, inventory. Where's the gold? Oh yes, currency. Sorry.
Fifty gold.
So how much, how much was it to uh?
About eight gold for them to have a room tonight. Since they're both, it's assumption that they'd both be paying for it. So yeah, they have their own room, as uh, you, do you wait the full time?
Uh, I think I had it in there, I think I kinda see I don't leave the inn, but I do wander the inn a little bit, just to see if I can figure out who else is staying here.
Um, it looks like, let me investigate check.
Sixteen.
Hmm. Um, let me go, sorry, let me go, song up. God, why is this not here, sorry?
What's happening, sorry, I was in the bathroom for a second.
So as, okay, with sixteen, you look around and there's something that kind of immediately sticks out to you, and it's the fact that it looks like a lot of people have left this place. Um, because of the mob and everything that's going on, it looks like a lot of people just found this place um, not to be that um, let's say inhabitable, but recently about, there's about a collection of like, three rooms that are like, your neighbors, and all of them seem to be inhabited right now.
I can't tell who they're inhabited by.
No, but it looks like there's uh, you have like, three neighbors, like
The inn's only gotta, the inn's only gotta be business. Wonder why their rates are so high then, whatever.
As uh, five hours pass, Anya and Makosra, you arrive at the town.
Oh wow.
Should we go in here until we figure out what happens to the rest of everyone? The Killer Santa could've been in here.
That's true, we should try and see if we can like, if we talk to the mayor or something, see what's going on, if we
I don't trust the mayor, we are planning to poison Hawk, I don't think we should talk to the officials right now.
Okay, well, what, what should we do?
First, I mean, I'd like to get rid of this eye, so that I don't like, fulfill my promise to the Johnson.
Right, okay.
As to me, you can go do whatever you'd like to, but I have that thing I need to take care of.
I have a question.
Hmm, yes.
Me, or uh?
DM is uh-
Or Makosra.
Okay.
Do you always, or I mean, have you always um, done that uh, thing you just did?
What thing?
Where you uh, changed your, your form?
Not always, but recently, that's, yeah. That's all I'm gonna say about that. Um, for the time being, while we're in the town, just continue to call me Zephyr.
Okay.
As, as you guys uh, talk, you watch uh, Amelia, the guard, pass you guys, and she says, oh, hey. Have you guys seen Dark Knight anywhere?
Uh.
Not right now, we got separated from our group, we were traveling north.
He uh, promised he'd meet me tonight, and I haven't seen him.
Oh, we'll try to figure out what happens, yes.
Cool, thanks, see you, as she keeps walking forward.
Zephyr.
She doesn't need to know, also, why was Dark Knight talking to her?
He was doing his own kind of little mission thing, I don't know, Dark Knight worked alone.
He did. Um, Zephyr also yells out to Amelia and is like, hey! Was the Killer Santa here?
As Amelia slowly turns uh, to you, just says I don't know, get a job at the guards, maybe we'll tell you. As she uh, just keeps walking forward.
Bitch, I say under my breath. Uh, and I tell Anya, she's definitely hiding something.
Probably.
Let's go, I guess, I need, I, I'm, I, Makosra would really like to go figure out these guards, this guards, uh, not the guards, uh, the mafia situation at some point.
Yeah.
As well as just being very precautious because of all the other contextual events that have been happening right now in the town at the moment.
Um, as you guys walk forward, you hear uh as Hawk lands next to you guys and says, there you are, my friends.
Hi.
Hey, 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 Hawk.
I, he puts his hand on either of your shoulders, I want the two of you guys to meet, come on, let's go.
Alright, cool.
Okay.
Oh dear.
As she begins bringing you guys towards the inn.
Uh, hey Hawk, um how's the town going? We left in
Oh, splendid.
Okay. Can I roll insight on that? Cause I know it's very much not fine. Oh shit, almost, uh, eleven.
Um, can't really make it out, as he says, so where were you guys recently? What were you guys up to?
We went north because you, because of the mafia attacks for a bit.
Interesting.
While we were traveling, just trying to get away from the town, when we were heading north, we heard
What brings you back?
We heard the Killer Santa sleigh bells come overhead, heading towards the town, we immediately turned back. You know our goal here was to hunt down the Santa. We were just ahead of our party, they should be returning soon.
It's fine by me, as you guys arrive at the inn, and he says, I have, uh, he's a, he's a religious man, and he's very, very notable, alright? You, you'll love him, he's just super likable.
Uh huh.
As he opens the door, and you see Luba uh, masturbate, no.
Wait, are you opening the door to my room?
Yeah.
I feel, I feel
No, don't!
Oh, cool, as he uh, oh, tries to open it. Hey Luba, it's me Hawk, open up.
Hey, hey, I've been waiting here for five hours, what do you want me to do?
Uh, these are some associates of mine, and legally, I'm not allowed to interfere with anything, but I have introduced you to you, and that concludes the extent of my involvement here. Also, I heard rumors that the mob has a uh, a base underground, again, legally, can't do anything about that, but if you guys were to, you know investigate, could be fun. Toodles, as he just jumps, as he uh, runs to the window, opens the door, jumps out.
That man is very
Nice to meet you, uh.
Uh, Anya, and, and you are?
Luba Hubbard, founder and, founder and leader of the Church of Luba.
Makosra has a very oh shit moment, uh
Yeah, was Makosra, I guess Makosra would know Luba.
No, Zef, no, uh, Zephyr. Hmm. I did, I did send you like, a copy of the notes, Jack.
Also, I am, also I, also after being the sole survivor of Nocturne, I think a lot of people
Yeah.
What, what, was Luba really public about that?
Thing is, Luba, you claim that, no one believes you.
Oh.
Because so many other people also claim that, a lot of people are like, I also survived Nocturne.
Yeah.
It's, it's a cloud thing, so you've never, you've never risen to the top as like a particular like, oh, this guy's the actual sole survivor.
Yeah.
A bunch of people claim that.
And Jack.
We're gonna cut over right now
Yeah.
To uh, Anya, no, Anisha, Karuk, and Gonka, as you guys are just walking through the snow. Uh, trying to get back to the town, or running. Um, yeah, and as you're running, uh, once again, Gonka, as you look up to the sky, you see the stitches. Um, that no one else is quite able to see, kind of going with you.
Is anybody else able to see that in the sky?
Eee, what?
Oh, the You don't see it?
I, you're pointing at nothing.
Huh. Okay, nevermind.
I guess it is nothing.
The bird, kiss the bird.
Okay.
Just gonna keep running, I have a little bit. Um, cool, Karuk, do you do anything?
Uh, nothing in particular.
Cool, alright, um, as you guys are uh, running, you find yourself getting closer and closer to the town, you're all, you're probably just based on the fact that you guys are adventurers, uh, you, you know, you're not that much slower than a horse, so you guys will be there in a bit. Um, as the town's getting closer and closer. As uh, we're gonna cut back to, just checking in, as uh, we cut back to the uh, rest of the group, uh, introducing themselves to Luba.
Yeah. Um
Founder of the Church of Luba, nice to meet you. And you are?
Uh, Zef, Zephyr Rat, yeah.
Hello, nice to meet you, Zep.
Uh, nice to meet you.
Uh, any of you part of any churches?
Well technically, your patron comes out, Anya.
Oh god.
She's me!
Uh, yeah, technically, I guess.
Yep, the hell are you? And what the hell are you supposed to be?
Uh, that's my patron, uh, he can ignore you.
Alright then, well uh, I can assure you, the patrons the Church of Luba offers a very, very, very great I was trying to think of a better word, but great, great fit. Uh, so, why did the Hawk bring, why did Hawk bring you people to me?
Uh
We're trying to take down the Killer Santa.
Ah, fellow hunters of the Killer Santa, I see.
Yes.
Yes, I received a vision from my god, Luba, to, that was, that told me that I needed to uh, investigate the Santa killing, that they were connected to the horrible events in Nocturne.
But, but isn't your name Luba?
Oh good. God, Luba gave, when, when he bestowed his power onto me, he, he, I was reborn, and he was, and I was given the name Luba Hubbard. So I'm named after him, he's not named after me.
So wait, if you're reborn from him, then you are the god, so you worship yourself?
No, 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 not that kind of reborn, it's like a, like a, like a spiritual cleansing, you know?
And as Luba begins to explain the, the, the information of the Church of Luba, at this point, uh, you know, a couple, you know thirty minutes pass about like, the Luba explanation, do or take. Um, as uh, the three of you finally arrive in town.
Where are we to be finding um, 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 what are their names be?
That's a great question, I'll get back to you.
Um, Zane, and um, um
Zane.
Um, Anya, where are we to be finding them?
I, we should check those, tell maybe, right? Cause that's, that's where we kind of set up, right?
I have a better idea.
Yeah, okay.
Alright, I walk a little bit into the town to where people
Oh, I just gotta shout again.
Zane! Lisa!
As uh, Hawk says, hey guys!
Oh god.
Oh, hi!
It's gone pretty good, Karun, um, as he uh, lands in front of you, uh, your friends are in the inn, so I'd recommend go talk to them, I introduce them to you.
I be telling you, Gonka, is what I be saying the whole time.
Shouting works, my, my apologies, Karuk. I'll try that next time.
Yeah, that's real fascinating. Bye! Talk to a triple backflip up onto the roof, and just begins dashing again.
Let us be making ace to my bookies.
Uh, and as you guys run into the inn, uh, Luba, you're just now finishing your explanation as the three of them
And so then, I was blessed and my power was given to all the people of Cestern, but after what happened in Nocturne, now I Oh hello.
And where does the Yes, I do have a question. Uh
Luba Hubbard, founder of the Church of Luba, nice to meet you.
Uh, Anisha, a pleasure.
It's nice to be meeting you, I am Karuk.
Karuk, alright.
So, why is he here?
Well, I'm here to help with the Killer Santa. Cool.
And
Also a god, I think, I'm not really sure.
I'm not, I'm not explaining this again, I'm not explaining this again.
He's also a man of faith.
He's a god?
I'm a man of faith, I am not a god, I am not a god.
Roll me an insight check.
Wait, are we including Anya and me?
Uh, sure.
Eleven, or wait, no, uh, sixteen.
Uh, mod twenty.
Oh my god. Holy shit, Karuk.
Uh, seventeen.
Four.
Uh, Gonka, this man's a god. Uh, Karuk, you are, you are somehow the only person to realize that this man is bullshitting everyone. Uh, he does not believe anything he's saying.
Right, well, uh, how is Luba be knowing about the Killer Santa? I, I
He's a god, he's not here?
I was informed by my, I was informed by my god, my deity that I worship, that the Killer Santa was connected to the events in Nocturne, of which I was the sole survivor.
Okay, but how would he really knowing?
Hold on, wait, wait, wait.
Well, I mean, if you're talking about worldly sources, I have my worldly sources, uh
I see.
I heard about it the same way you guys did.
How did we be hearing about it again?
Is he gonna roll, yeah, roll this.
My bookies, how would we be hearing about this again?
I rolled a Hold on, I rolled a
Nobody has been knowing!
I rolled, I rolled a twenty-five in deception.
Oh shit.
Wait, isn't it, we got a letter, didn't we?
Yeah, we got a letter.
Yeah, we got a letter saying
Oh yes, yes, uh, uh, Steven, he is be telling us.
Yeah, did you get a letter from Steven, Luba?
Uh, yeah, I, I got that letter, now, uh How long have you guys been in this town?
We're calling him Steven now, okay. He did roll a twenty-five in deception.
Yeah.
I feel like he, you don't have to trust me, I just
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Now how long have you guys been in this town?
Oh, I, I guess, right?
Yeah. They're here too, at this point.
And uh, have you guys seen the Killer Santa recently?
Yes.
We were just
In fact, we did.
We were just north of the town, uh, trying to get away from the mob when we saw him fly back down south towards the city.
Well, I saw him firsthand, I was visiting the mayor's office, and he flew in and threw a, an ornament bomb, and then it exploded, and there was gas, and then the gas
Sorry.
Can I make, can I make an insight check on this? And then, and then the gas polluted the mayor's mind, and now she wants everybody to put up Christmas decorations and shit.
I mean, it does seem a little far
Do I make an insight check on God?
Yeah, I wanted to
I like the fact that
Will I just believe God, how does this work?
Yeah.
It's uh, it's up to you, Gonka, how much you believe this man, or just his
I would, I, Karuk is normally very trusting, but he already knows that he's full of shit for one thing.
Yeah, and this sounds, this sounds, this sounds, so I feel like I would roll insight on it.
It's a lie! It's a lie!
That's, that's Luba's lie, isn't it?
I have fifteen.
She rolled a twenty-two.
I rolled a twenty-two.
Oh shit.
Oh wait, what, uh, what was, what was the statement made?
It wasn't a lie, I just, it was just straight up
He was describing
Oh, that's, that's I thought it was something else, no, yeah, they, um, he's telling, God is telling the truth.
Of course God's telling the truth, how can you doubt God?
Here's
Well, do you, do you vocalize that you believe him, Gonka?
Well, do you, do you vocalize that you believe him, Gonka? Or do all of us accept?
Can we choose to believe or not believe, uh, the statement about the, uh?
I think.
He, he, here's the, here's the spectrum, Karuk knows he's lying about believing, everyone except for, Gonka believes he is god. And then the rest of you think that he just, he, everyone, the rest of you think Lava is some kind of god that he believes in.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Got it. Cause there's so many gods in the pantheon that you're like, nah, that, that sounds about right.
Gotcha.
Makes sense.
Yeah. An overly religious man.
I, Jack, just one thing, the, Macostra does have a lot of Zephyr's notes about, uh.
You're in Zephyr form, too.
Yeah.
You should, so I think Zephyr would at least know of, like, know something.
I know that he's like a cult leader, at the very least, and that he is, that he's very devout and funny, I guess. Yeah, I just, I just, I just didn't wanna be like, out of like backstory knowledge dictates this, I guess.
So, uh, where were we?
You were. Uh, before we go cover uh more about mayor business, uh, I am having question.
Yeah.
Uh, yeah.
You say you are a sole survivor of Nocturne incident, yes?
Well, yes, yes, I am.
Oh shit.
So, nobody else survived, just, just you?
As far as I know, nobody else survived, I, I, I came there on the behest of a, a party of adventurers.
I.
See me in Cester, uh.
I would like to roll insight on that.
I would as well. Anyone who would like to? I'll roll to see, like, just to make sure that he's telling the truth, if that's all.
Ah, God.
I got a three.
Jack, mm, okay, wait.
I rolled a twelve. Uh, ma- um.
What did you look at?
Anisha, you got a three?
Yeah.
You're looking at this man. And you get distracted because, wait a minute. Did I fall? Oh, God, what is this? He is the sole survivor of Nocturne, you know who else fought in Nocturne?
No.
No, wait, hold on. It's add, that's a three, it's a three, it's not a natural one.
That's a thing.
No, yeah, I'm, I'm fucking with you, um, you just, it's like, what the fuck, I don't know, uh, you, uh, you really can't make heads or tails. I just wanna fuck with you, uh, what'd you roll, twelve? Lava's kind of, when Lava's honest, Lava's honest, you get the sense he is telling the truth about this, what about you, Macostra?
Um, I'm scared if I roll really low here, I'll lose the nu- that knowledge, hmm.
Just roll.
Okay.
Roll.
I'm scared to roll, I'm scared to roll, I'm scared to roll, twelve, 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 twelve.
Metagaming, metagaming.
Unless you get a nat one, in which case you will, like, come on.
I will, I will, I got a seven, it, it rolled off the one, it rolled off the one, total twelve.
Um, again, Lava's pretty brutally honest, but you can't really make heads or tails about it.
Gotcha.
But, uh, why does, this, my past does not matter as much here, I'm just trying to figure out who caused the events in Nocturne, and I think the Killer Santa may be connected. Especially after running into him and he, he went out of, he went out of his way to attack a room that I was in.
I agree with him.
Karuk has connections to somebody who likely passed in Nocturne incident, so if Santa is connected, then Karuk must be killing Santa.
Ah, I like where your head's at, big man, alright, now, uh, now, now that everybody's together, let's say we leave this place, I've been hanging out here for long enough, Hawk told me to wait here for all of you. Man, I was getting bored, uh.
I agree, should be.
You all show me around this town, I've never been here before.
Should we go out right now? It is being trashed by a mob.
Uh. Alright, I don't, I didn't, you're all talking at once, but it's alright.
As you guys, you guys hear a knock on your door. I would open it.
Hello?
Karuk, as Karuk opens the door. La 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 la, as you see a bunch of carolers standing outside of your door, but it's all the guards just going, we love Christmas, la la la, la la, Christmas.
Karuk, close the door right now.
Uh.
Ay! Christmas is nice.
Yes, it's, I'm sorry, we're just not good at this, but the mayor asked us to go carol door to door, so.
I told you, mayor's under a Christmas spell. A Christmas spell.
Christmas spell?
I just in the holiday spirit, Karuk respect that.
Look, you can believe me or not, I don't care, all I care about is finding the Killer Santa and figuring out what his deal is. Now, can, can we go or not?
I.
Please part ways, we must be getting through.
I follow Karuk out the door.
I'll follow him as well.
Yeah, I'm coming too.
Uh, I, I, I will say I'll leave, but I'm going somewhere else, I'm not following the group.
Ooh, where's Anisha going?
Alright. I wanna go, I wanna go to the library, this will be interesting, cause I guess I'm gonna do this, cause I think it's more important, but whatever.
Okay, well, I definitely, can I roll perception check to see if I notice Anisha breaking up?
Dude, I'm not doing it. Anisha's not doing any stealth, any kind of stealth checks, you see, you see Anisha.
I noticed it, I don't do anything about it, but I make a mental note of it.
Um, before, before I get up and leave, I'd like to ask Anisha, hey, Anisha, I need that other eye.
What did you say?
I need that other eye, and I think my mic's just being bad, I need that other eye.
What, either eye, this is the only eye we have.
I need all the eyes, okay, uh, the eye, you have it, I need it for the trade.
Uh, hmm, I have to think about what I'm gonna do here.
Can I, did, did, did the mob ask for two eyes in the deal or one eye?
I don't think so.
Just one.
Just one, okay, I was trying to recall, because I was scared it was gonna be like a technicality that you didn't deliver both. Okay, nevermind, my bad, my bad.
Not even trading anything, I think they were just like, do this, and we're like, okay. Yeah, here's the thing, I, I know what I'm gonna do, and hmm, I kinda need it.
I'm scared because, yeah, I'd leave, I'd leave.
As everyone, uh, makes their way out, um. Karuk. Uh, as you're walking, you, um, you, you accidentally bump into someone, uh, the small goblin. Uh, this, like, things fall everywhere on the ground, uh, you kinda like, you guys bump into each other, so like, you turn the corner and they're like, oh, ah, fuck. And they start like, picking up their stuff and putting it back in their backpack, just, just a lot of stuff thrown.
Oi, very sorry.
Oh, uh, it's fine, I wasn't looking where I was going. Who are you?
Goblin? Name is Karuk, uh, you?
Hmm, uh, my name's Caitlin.
Caitlin, hmm, is nice name, uh, anyway, uh, I should be going, I'm trying to find Killer Santa.
Okay, I'm with them, but I don't think I've ever, I don't think I've ever met Caitlin.
No one here's met her. As, uh, she's, she kinda stops for a second, and says, interesting.
Hey.
Well, I'll be on my way, as she just begins walking along.
I think that was. I think that was, the, I think that was the, Zephyr says, I don't respect, I think that was the goblin from the tournament, you know, the.
Zephyr at the tournament? I'm very confused. Where wasn't they?
Yeah.
That's very. Where weren't they? You literally looked at the character.
Was at the tournament too.
Yeah.
This is, this is true, might be, not sure.
Hmm.
Maybe, anyway.
Yeah.
Should be going.
Yeah, well, it's, uh, so where are we going exactly?
That is for you to answer, after Santa is throwing, uh, uh, ornament ball, where does he be going after?
I didn't get the chance to see, I had to dive out of the way and, uh, grab my little attendant, oh, my attendant, I forgot about them. Uh, uh.
You have followers here?
You wanna be having slaves?
Slaves, they're just followers of the church, uh, their names are Kyle and, uh, the, Terry, I don't know, uh, they're, uh, I have them, I have them booked in the room right next to mine, uh, we shouldn't need them for now, I'll, uh, I'll, I'll, uh, make sure they're doing alright when I come back to the end.
It's being fair.
So, uh, what do you guys, yeah, so, uh, you guys have been in this town longer than me, uh, where do you think we, where do you think we should go for info?
Um. I mean, do we know that Santa left the town? He could still be here, and, yeah.
Oh, I'm sure he's still here, he wouldn't just fly in ornament bomb and then leave.
I mean, that's a strategy. You know, just bomb it, leave ready, wait for the effects to, and then come back in.
Alright. Well, since it seems like y'all are out of ideas, I can tell you where I always go when I need to think things out, the Biggy Piggy. And I, follow me, and I start sauntering over to the.
Yeah.
Find the Biggy Piggy.
Hmm. Okay.
Going to the Biggy Piggy now?
Uh.
He is, I guess. Um.
He is.
As everyone begins walking forward, you realize that, um, as that, as that goblin had bumped into you, um, they, they have a, they gave you a slip of paper written in orc. Uh, do you speak orcish?
Yeah.
Cool, as it's, as it's, as it's read out, it, uh, there is a room number and it says, um, I have info on Santa. Do not tell anyone else, including, uh, your five friends.
Interesting. Okay.
Uh, yeah, cool, as, uh, everyone heads over to the Biggy Piggy, um, you all get a table, I assume?
I'm Anisha, it's still.
I'm still. Anisha, who, uh, settles, and you all settle yourself then, so, what is the topic of discussion?
So, Mr. Lava, um.
Uh, hold on, hold on, no business before ordering, uh, excuse me?
Uh, yes, how can I help you?
Wait, did I still go to the Biggy Piggy or did I go to the room? You didn't say.
You, you can choose.
You can choose. I'll go to the Biggy Piggy first, I'm hungry.
You know what? Just give me one of everything on the menu.
Oh dear God.
What is everything, sir? Uh, not everything, you could, uh, remove the salad. How much do you think that would be?
About thirty gold?
I'd like a salad. I'll, I'll have what you're having. I, I.
Yeah, I like that you're just like, oh, take some of that, who does that? Someone's like, I'll get mac and cheese, and you're like, oh, I'll just take some of you.
One of everything on the menu?
He'll have the same thing I'm having, but yeah.
No, 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 I don't have any money.
Yeah, just give me one of, just give me everything meaty, I want meaty things.
That'll run you about twenty gold.
Alrighty.
Alright, fine.
Uh.
Rest of you?
I will be having pigpen with side of piggy fingies.
Alright, that'll be about four gold.
I'll skip out on food.
He says twenty, you Gonka?
Uh, I'll just have some water.
Water, that's free, and, uh, you?
Who?
Macostra, uh, Ma- Macostra, he's talking to you.
Um, I'll, no, no thanks, I'll, I'll skip.
Cool, and you, my, uh, tea plant friend?
Um, I'll just have hot chocolate.
Cool, that'll be about one gold, awesome, well, everyone subtract that from your account, as, uh, he, uh, says, cool, well, I'll be right back. As he happens walking away.
Oh, man, I can't wait, I haven't eat, I haven't, I haven't, I haven't eaten a good hearty meal in days. I've, I, I've been traveling to this town for a while now, uh, it took a long time, one of my attendants had to stop and go visit a friend's house. Uh, we had to move, we, it's been a long ride, but, uh, it's good to be here.
It's important to have your nutritious eight thousand calories a day, Mabuki.
Exactly, this one gets it, alright, now what did you wanna, now what did you guys wanna talk to me about?
Um, well.
I'm not supposed to talk about it.
You, your character would actually do that, I'm just.
Not supposed to talk about what?
Uh, the note that somebody gave me, I'm not supposed to be talking about.
The note that who gave you?
Oh, that, 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 that girl that I'm not supposed to be talking about.
Karuk, what have you been?
Cannot talk about it.
Karuk, have you been seeing someone?
Oh my god. Can you, can you yell about it?
Seeing, uh, around five people right in front of me, I missed the point.
Uh.
You know, I think this is a situation where, uh, think of it like a confession. Talk to the guy, uh, you can share with me, if you want, you can, uh, you can whisper into my ear, and I lean across the table. In my ear.
Uh, he'd say I'm not supposed to be telling anybody, no whispering, no yelling. Uh, I think.
You think?
Yes. No think often, but sometimes.
No think.
You can respect that.
Alright then, I guess, uh, we can talk about this, we can talk about it later, uh, Costra, or. No, no, she's not, Zephyr, you had something you wanted to?
Uh, yeah, um, I need to drop off something with a contact I have here in the city. Same thing as Karuk, th- if more people found out about it, the worse our situation would be.
Alright, alright, everybody's got their secrets here, I'm here to help, this is not a, this is not a secret keeping society, I mean, I don't have any secrets. I'm an open book, I told you everything.
Then, then tell me this. Then tell me this, what happened in Nocturne?
Well, I, I was summoned there to fight for a group of adventurers, uh, against Lyran and their disciples. And, uh, you know, we were fighting, and then, the, the main adventurer group left to go like, do some big thing. Uh, I don't know, I wasn't paying attention, I was fighting some, somebody else, uh, and then, you know, we're all fighting, and then suddenly, everybody just collapsed. I was the only one left.
Even the adventurers?
Well, I don't know what happened to them, I, I couldn't find their bodies. I, I wandered around looking, I was shouting out, I'm like, Myra, uh, Gretchen, Monty, where are you guys? I, I couldn't find them.
Everyone?
Uh, go back second.
Myra?
One after that.
Monty.
You are meeting a. Monty in Nocturne?
Uh, yeah, Monty Eldon, mate, and I didn't meet him in Nocturne, I met him in Cester. Uh, him and his band of travelers came to, uh, look into the cult, look into the disciple cult that was taking over the region. They did a great help to me in, uh,
Disciple cult?
What does he be doing?
So, you know, he be in Nocturne, you sure about this?
Well, I don't know, I mean, every, I, I looked for their bodies, but I couldn't find them, uh.
Could not find anybody's bodies?
I could not find the bodies of the adventuring party that I first met in Cester, uh, Hux, Myra, Gretchen, uh, Monty and, uh, what was it, Paultit, Paultit, yeah, the, the other, the churchgoer. But, I mean, she was in a mask, so I don't like.
Those names sound familiar, uh, Mabuki was writing to me time to time.
Who's Mabuki?
Uh, Monty, sorry.
He call, he calls a lot of people Mabuki.
Huh.
Good friend of mine, way back, but, uh, Karuk is assuming he dead now, so, after Karuk done here dealing with Santa, he have to find out why, and somebody is having to be killing.
So that's your motivation in all this. Well, I'm also trying to find out why, I mean, hundreds of people died in front of me, of course, I'm gonna ask some questions. Everybody else around these parts seems to have forgotten it all. I can never forget.
So could I.
Is our, is our food coming yet? Yes, at this point, they sit down on your food.
Ah, yes, thank you for every. I just probably getting hailing burgers and shit. I haven't even liked this in a week.
Suddenly, Lava's boogie to nine nine eight.
That's such an image, oh my god.
Wait, that means we finally gonna ma- make the hype chart with Boogie.
Yes!
Oh my god. Good old Biggie Biggie hospitality, eh? Uh, McCos- uh, Zephyr, I keep thinking that he's McCoaster, Zephyr, you you want something?
Um, sure, sorry for assuming earlier, I don't have any gold.
I handed him like half of a burger that I already took a bite out of.
I, um, McC- um, Zephyr kinda like flips it around and starts like nibbling on the edge, really trying not to get to the part. That he bit into, so it's kind of like, there's half of it just there.
Well, yeah. It was good to. What, what were you gonna say?
No, sorry, I.
Well, Karuk, it's uh. Good, good to know someone else here shares the same passion for finding out what happened in Nocturne that I do, uh. Any of, any of the rest of you know anybody who died in the Nocturne of the calamity? Oh yeah, Anisha's not there.
Uh. Here, it's all, I'm the only one who knows, anyone else?
Right, well, um. I, I must be going, I have a secret meeting, yes.
Ah, yeah, the secret meeting with the girl, alright, uh, we'll talk about that later.
I'm.
Back soon, yes.
I must.
To figure out what to get.
I. Uh, the waiter brings a drink to you and says, uh, courtesy of that gentleman over there, as you see Jonathan at another table waving to you.
Hmm. Uh, I give him.
Jonathan?
The guy who asked him to get the eyes.
Mm-hmm, um, hmm. How do I wanna respond to this, fuck? Um, I. Um. I give him the rest of my burger. And I'm like, tell him that. I have his food and I wink at him. It's it's an inside joke, please just deliver the message for me.
Um, the waiter's like, okay, he walks and he talks to Jonathan, the waiter walks back and he says, the man says he doesn't swing that way.
Uh.
Uh, do you, do you guys, do you guys, do you know this guy?
Uh, I.
Looks like a mafia member, does he look like a mafia member?
Yes.
Uh, I I whispered a, I whisper to, um, I whisper to Lava, that's cuz he is. And I kind of like, kind of like give him the eye like, please be quiet, just like.
How do you know him?
As we're gonna cut over to Anisha.
I'll be right back.
You arrive at the library. Uh, you walk in and you see the librarian, like, you wanna, and says, hello there?
Hello, I was hoping you had like a cookbook section somewhere?
A cookbook section? An interesting request and one I would be more than obliged to bring you to, as he uh, so looks over and says, right there is our cookbook section.
Thank you.
And I'm.
Yes, of course.
I am going to look and see if there is a way to cook the Kraken's eyeball to where it won't kill me.
Alright.
I forgot about that.
Yeah, you forgot, you told me that, didn't you?
Tell me an investigate check, I brought this up by myself.
Cooking check, cooking check.
Oh, that was so close to natural twenty, uh, seven.
What?
Uh, no, I was, it's like one.
Oh, like the dice.
Yeah.
You can't really find anything about Kraken's eyes in any of the cookbooks that you read.
Hmm.
Hello, you seem to be far in trouble, maybe I could be of assistance to you.
Uh, yeah, I was hoping.
You know how to cook this, I'm gonna bring out the Kraken's eyeballs.
Is that a Kraken's eyeball I see before me? Most intriguing, where did you get your hands on one?
I killed one earlier at the hospital.
My god, well, you're not one to be opposed, well. Yes, 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 so we're looking at this Kraken's eye, I don't think it's very cookable, I mean, the. Well known for being poisonous.
I was wondering if there is a way I could cook it to where it wouldn't kill me.
Well, we could squeeze every last drop of poison out and cook it up in a fire, I suppose. We just need to try to squeeze all the poison out of it, make sure there's no, nothing left.
Alright.
You know, I kind of fancy myself a a cook, um. Wanna go in the back and try to do that with me?
Sure, if you would mind.
Yes, I love cooking, he says.
Oh my god.
As he's just being stretching to the back, he like.
Stupid.
Flips over some books and like knocks over some like first editions. As uh, could it, you arrive back at, you arrive at the uh room number that was given to you.
Oh, plug. Alright.
As the door opens, as uh you see the Goblin woman is now wearing like a a sweater and some glasses and her hair is kind of like up in like a bun, and so she looks up to you and says. Oh, hi.
I'm here for a secret meeting, Mustak.
Oh, yeah, I'm glad you didn't bring your friends, o- otherwise I wouldn't have met with you, um.
No, I be telling them that it is secret.
Hmm?
It is secret, right?
Yeah, and you, you told them that?
I told them that it is being secret.
Talking whatever, come on then.
Yes.
No one followed him either, so there you go.
I mean, I thought, Lava, Lava probably would have, but there's this mafia guy that Zephyr's talking to, so he's just gonna.
Sits down, as uh she sits down with you and uh. Looks up you and says. I know you're friends with Monty, right?
Yes, I was.
Yeah, he uh. You might know or maybe not, um, him and I fought in uh in a tournament together.
I thought I is knowing you from somewhere, not sure though.
Yeah, uh, I don't know if you know this, he uh was not a fan of goblins for a long time.
Is he be changing that?
Well, I think me and a friend of mine broke through that to some extent.
You must be good Goblin if Monty be interacting with you.
Yeah, yeah.
If if you be knowing his name, then you and him must have been very close, yes?
Um, well, I don't know, I think he might have. Become. A. I was wondering if you've been in contact with Monty.
Recently, I. Of course not, he's, well, I have reason to believe he's dead.
Yeah, 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 you know, that 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 would make sense. And you have not heard from him in the last year.
Uh, you have no idea how much I wish I had.
Did you? Did Monty tell you much about? What was going on with him?
What was going on with him? What are you talking about?
You know, hi- his his battle against the disciples and stuff.
Uh, he be telling me little details about his journey, told me friend of his kill baby once, uh. He tell me little things, he's, he was not be letting me in on things that I was not be needing to know.
And. If you were in a room with someone. Who. Was responsible for his disappearance. Even if they did it for noble reasons. What would you do to?
Noble reason or not, I made Monty a promise one day. And he made me the same one. If anything were to happen to either of us, then the other would see towards that those responsible for their death. Would bring the same fate onto them.
Alright, this is a circle.
As uh she begins like looking out the window, um. She uh, she kind of, she's pondering something. As uh, she says. Karuk, I think uh. A storm's coming of sorts. Nocturne, if you haven't already figured it out, was only the beginning. But, I think people misinterpret what's going on. I mean. Have you ever been hurt by this world? Have you, have you ever had something just go so horribly wrong that? You 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 took it out on all of those around you?
This is sounding like something very personal, uh. Is, is, has something happened?
No, it's not about what has happened. But about what will. I I I brought you here cuz I said I had, I have info on Santa and that's mostly true, but. I have something I need to do in the coming weeks. And I don't know if I'm strong enough to do it.
What is that?
My boss has ordered me to do something. And. I trust him with my life, but I'm also scared. Scared of. The consequences.
Well, you seem nice enough, I assume your boss is the same, I would just trust his judgment, you know?
Yeah. I think you're right. Sorry, but I kind of brought you under false pretenses, I uh. Monty seemed to think very highly of you and I thought. I thought very highly of him, so I was wondering if you'd be the same. You are. You're a good guy, Karuk.
Thank you, thank you very much, you seem not too bad yourself, uh, Carl?
Nah, nah, Caitlin.
Caitlin maybe, yeah.
Yeah.
Oh my god.
So, Santa?
Right, Santa. Um, he's gonna be making his next attack on this town very soon, but I don't know exactly know when. Except for, I know who does know. I guess. Um, you're gonna need to. Here, she pulls out a map, right here is the mafia's base. Uh, down there, they have a sort of monster. I, it's a Dracalich, it's a sort of skeletal dragon that liches control. He's guarding a lot of information, but if you can take him out, you should be able to learn something about Santa's next move. I don't think the mob and Santa are working together, but. I'm also not entirely sure if they're opposed. Do you know what I mean?
Yes, Karuk is seeing.
Well. I came here cuz I trusted you and I, I get the sense that you might be able to do some good.
Can I be telling Mabukis at least?
Yeah, 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 of course, I just. I I wanted to talk to you about the whole Monty thing in private because. I don't know. Wasn't ready to have that conversation in front of a bunch of people, you know?
I am the same, I. I miss Mabuki greatly.
Hmm. Yeah. Me, uh, me too.
Well. It is nice to be speaking to somebody who knows him as well, it has been a long time.
Yeah. Karuk. You're gonna. Hear a lot of things about. You're gonna learn more about me in the future, when I'm not even there. And it's not gonna look good, but I want you to know. I never do what I do to hurt people. And. Every life I've, I I. Every mistake I've made. I deeply regret. But I have done with the interests of people like you and Monty, good people in mind. And when you learn, if you le- ever learn about who I am. Uh, you're gonna hate me. But I want you to know right now. I do it because I care.
Yes, well, you seem like good girl, Caleb, and. I think you are overestimating Karuk lately if you think he is to be learning, but if I do, I will mind what you have said.
Thanks. Well then. You might pursue me later, or some associates of mine, uh, my boss has a lot of interest in this whole Santa case, but it seems like you guys got the hang of it.
I think we do, we will be killing this scally bitch with no troubles.
Yeah, best of luck to you. See ya. As uh she uh opens the window and jumps out.
Why can't people lock those doors, he's, he's like damn.
Because it's more fun to take life a little less seriously, she says uh outside the window. I I I s- I walk out through the door. Like a normal person. Um, and as you walk out. For the first time in a while. You and Monty uh were the best of friends and. It's not that you guys have like a spiritual or any connection, but you always kind of. Could feel the other's presence. And right now. You almost get the feeling as if he's thinking about you right now. And you're thinking about him.
I will do you proud, Mabuki.
Cool, we're gonna cut back to the rest of the group in the Biggie Piggy.
Uh, hey, hey.
So how do you know him?
Uh. Uh, long story here, I'll conclude a. Relationship with him real quick, this was the ending of it, um, waiter, uh, can I?
Yes?
Can I get a to-go box?
Uh, sure.
Uh, thank you, thank you, um, does the waiter walk off?
Yes.
Uh, kind of like under the table, like to the side, like, uh, I open up the to-go box and use May Chan to throw the eye into the to-go box. Um.
Can I like, can I like roll perception to try and see this?
Sure.
Uh, I wouldn't say. I'm kind of just trying to keep it like, it's under the table, I don't think. I don't think I would be like seek super duper secretive, I guess.
Yeah, Lava, you can, you can see what's happening.
Is that a, is that an eyeball?
Do you really care that much?
Well.
At this point, I like it's closed and it's like on the table.
You people tell me, but it seems like you're all doing your own thing and nobody wants to clue me in.
This was.
You, I I pointed Go- I I pointed Gonka, cuz I'm tired of Zephyr like non-answering my question, you. What is up, what, what's up with this group, what have you guys been doing, why do you have an eyeball, what's going on, wha- how, what?
Mister Lava, I can explain.
Does God not know?
Miss, uh, Miss, Mister Hubbard, uh, I can explain, just a real. When we first got here. When we first got here, we traveled together and were invited to a party. Where we thought the Killer Santa may be, we had another friend, uh, another person in the group in Ara Kokra. Um, who was a very great and honorable dude, um. He. A lot of us. Uh. He went by the alias Dark Knight Grim Reaper.
What the hell kinda name is whatever?
Uh. We. Lost the fight. To say the least. And. We were attacked at the party, um, there was some magical sludge-like creature and consumed everyone here, um, besides me.
Sounds like a real sludgy time.
It was, the. And I made a deal with that man over there to get everyone's lives back and this was his asking price. It's nothing more, nothing less, yes.
Alright, man, uh. You want that, go ahead.
Yep.
Tell you anything about Killer Santa?
Uh. Not really, no, honestly, nah, he said nothing of the sort, this was just to get my friends back.
Why don't you let me take the eyeball, you 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 seem nervous and I think, I think I could, I think I could handle.
I would. You can come with me, but I need to deliver it myself, otherwise there will be.
Fair enough.
Dire consequences. Uh, and I kind of like, I I g- I get up with him and I'm kind of like holding the the to-go box. Um. Uh.
How are we all doing today?
Uh.
I have, um, a gimme.
Yeah, yes, here's your, here's your dessert, Johnson.
One second, before you hand it over to him and I kind of stop him for a second. I'm Lava Hub, uh, founder of the Church of Lava.
I really don't care, I just need that gimme.
Yeah, yeah, Johnson, he's something, he's somebody I just met today. Yes.
Yes.
Cause he takes the box.
I'm here to help with the Killer Santa situation.
Delightful. Have fun with that. Don't take any wood nickels, kid.
Yes.
Alright. As he, uh, looks over and says, alright, come here.
Okay, wait, no, 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 no.
To me, to me or to.
Wait, stop, stop.
I'm trying to break the curse on your friend, alright?
Yeah.
No, no, I'm not saying that in character. Did you just call him like kid?
Oh, no, god damn.
I'm gonna like smack the box. That with the eyeball and it'd be like, hey! Yeah, Laba's not intimidated by the mafia guy and he doesn't know that you guys are under a curse. I smack the box. I'm like, hey, don't disrespect me like that, little man. I'm here to help you.
Uh. Zephyr kind of motions himself a little bit away from, like away from, uh, Laba.
Another guy at the table says, I just need to snap my fingers and your friend over there, boom, explodes, disintegrates. However, I want him to die. So I'd suggest that you don't mess up with this transaction, my friend, just because you're. A little sensitive about being called kid.
Laba.
The mafia is going to intimidate a literal god?
Laba.
Mafia's a joke.
You will kill your friend. Stop.
Laba.
Okay, alright, alright.
Laba, calm down.
I just need to snap my fingers.
This is not part of your affair.
Are you onto some kind of a?
Do you turn your sensitivity up again?
Yeah, didn't, couldn't, you tried?
Tried?
Damn. Honestly, I'd kind of like to try this on Discord at some point because Zoom has its own like set of audio issues.
I like seeing you guys.
I hate.
That's true.
Discord is not good because the last time.
And like, my camera will work, but it's not gonna load any of you.
Maybe, maybe, uh, we can try, we can figure this out later. I, I would like to maybe try something like that. Um. Yeah, Zephyr, Zephyr looks to, looks to Laba and he's like, Laba, get out of this now. This wasn't part of you. Please don't interfere in this. It's almost over.
Are they threatening you?
This was willing.
That's when the entirety of this process has been threats. We saved their lives, so then they did us a favor. Can I please remove the curse and we can take our eyeball and move on?
Uh, Zephyr like holds out his hand, the same hand.
Great, as he takes your hand again and you watch like the thing on your arm. Goes over to the other guy's arm.
Thank you.
Lightful, as he takes the box and opens and says, alright, well, sorry about the little trouble there at the end, but.
My apologies. I, uh, I'm new to town and I misunderstood the situation.
I bet you misunderstand a lot of things. Anyway, we will be on our way.
We should too, Laba, and I tried to motion to get away.
We should be able to, uh, put our dog down very soon. Wouldn't a bird pun be more accurate? Put down a parakeet, I guess? I don't know.
Kill two birds with one stone?
That's a really good one. Oh, but if we were killing Amelia too. I don't know. Anyway, we'll be on our way as they are just being walking out.
So, uh. Do they need that asshole?
I don't know. I don't care. I just did it to save my friends.
That's a lie, isn't it?
Yep, roll deception.
Oh, sure. Uh.
You do know what the eye is.
Do you know what the eye is?
Damn it, uh, eight.
Roll inside Laba.
Come on.
Um. Mod twenty.
Zephyr's lying, Zephyr's lying to his.
Zephyr, you know what they need the eyeball for.
So what if I do? We need to get.
I'm here to help you. You can tell me.
You can help me by not asking any more questions. What they do with the, I know what they do with the eye, but I don't care.
Figure out anything and I slam my hand on the frickin' counter of the Biggie Piggy. Cause nobody will tell me anything and I'm actually angry, uh. I'm here to help you. I haven't done anything to make you distrust me. And yet none of you people will share any information anytime I ask you about something. It's, oh, I don't wanna tell you. Oh, I can't help you. Oh, I need to do anything. You're gonna tell me what you know or I'm gonna leave and stop working with you fools.
So you know, Jack, I'm on my way back to the Biggie Piggy to share the information I have.
You're gonna, you, you're gonna tell me what the eyeball is for or I'm gonna stop helping you fools.
Uh, okay, uh, Laba, we should, fuck. Do I have the spell?
We can go to a more private place.
At this point, Karuk enters.
I think I made a bit of a scene.
I agree. He has information and I point to him.
Hey buddy, you gonna meet with that girl of yours?
Yes, I have come back from my bookie and.
How was it? Did you have a good time?
Good times, but actually quite depressing.
And I pull out the map of where, uh, I assume I have the map that she marked with where the skeleton was. Everyone looking at the map, you can see that, um, the mafia's, one of their current like bases of operation is stationed. Uh, under a, under the library of all things. Does it say on the map where the skeleton, like, does it like say skeleton anywhere? Um, no, it does not say about the Dracalich.
Now, this is what I, now, this is what I like to see.
So, let, let me explain. Uh, under library, there be this creature that they be having, uh. The mafia be using that we need to take out. It is. It is called, it, it. It was a.
Beholder?
Whatever it was, I'm sure we can take it out.
No, I have this. I know this.
Alyssa, are you here? Can I roll?
Wait, is Alyssa?
Yeah.
See if I remember.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just wondering because she hasn't said anything and I'm pretty sure she's here, yeah.
Yeah, Anya's just been hanging out.
Alyssa's just quiet.
Alyssa's listening.
Alyssa's just quiet. We should know this.
Yeah, no, I, I know Alyssa's quiet.
Okay, but she's still not even talking now. Is everything? Yeah, she was. She talked for a bit.
Yeah, she's there.
She was right here. She was, yeah, no, she's just been, she's been quieter than Lexi, which concerns me.
Is everything okay?
Yeah, seriously.
Alyssa, is everything good? We got Alyssa?
I think, uh, here's my thing. Zoom cuts people out when they're not the main person talking.
Yeah, fucking hate Zoom.
Uh, it's harder to talk over people in Discord though, that's.
Well, we know if someone's talking in Discord at least. We know if someone said a word, whereas in Zoom, Lexi could just not be heard.
Is there a way to turn that off?
I think, I think there is.
Um, yeah.
Yeah, wait, because of that, that could be, that could be, that could be, that could be pogger champ.
I feel bad because I just keep thinking that Lexi's being quiet.
Yeah.
They are talking more than anyone else.
No, I don't talk that much.
Yeah.
Cause it's different from person to person because like Coleman was able to talk while Lexi was just talking.
Yeah, but sometimes like.
It has something to do with your settings.
I think so.
Um.
Y'all, can we get vaccinated soon?
As soon as possible, my dude.
Please.
Let's see.
Man, I feel like I'm the only one who actually kind of prefers to online stuff.
You guys are.
I do too.
It's easier for me to pay attention when I don't have to be physically.
Yeah, we can, here, let's look, well, we're gonna disperse and take a quick bathroom break while I try to find if there's a way to, cause I know there is.
Well, I don't know, I don't know what we would, I don't know what we would look.
Uh, I recommend going to, um.
I have fear to ask.
Yeah, uh, what is it?
I am not be sleeping well the past few nights. No offense by these, but. You remind Karuk of, uh, my mother. Are you be knowing any bedtime stories?
Actually, I could justify having a bedtime storybook in my bag right now.
Yes, you fully could, like.
Can I go get that?
Yes.
Go, come on!
Of course, one percent.
I wanna hear this. I have to hear this story.
Yeah, improvise on bed.
The bedtime story.
You really just went up to Lexi and like, do this now. God, you actually, you really be acting like Craig, huh?
Oh, no. Oh, no.
Oh, no.
Uh-oh, no. Is it time for a second Aiden-Alyssa romance?
This is Aiden-Lexi, what?
Oh, Lexi's acting like Craig?
No, Karuk, whatever, whatever, whatever. This is so besides the point.
Everyone except for Lexi, shut up.
Oh, why?
Tell us.
Because you're.
Fuck you! Dude, I hate this now.
I'm fine, fine, fine. You can describe the kind of bedtime story you tell.
Alright, okay, the bedtime story is about this, this sad gnome. Um, who lost something very important to him. And he found out that. Somebody else had taken it, uh, this, this item that meant a lot to him.
And this is the point where I would fall asleep.
Perfect, there we go.
That came, that came a lot easier than you thought. Gonka, eh, for a second, you're kind of felt some like, oh, that's kind of nice, you know? Takes you back a bit, you know, to the good old days. Uh, and as we're gonna cut now, as Gonka, you plop down to go to sleep yourself. I assume you, you, you're gonna attempt to take a long rest?
Yeah.
Alright, um. You were once again brought somewhere that you've never really been before. As you see a weird sight, you are outside of the building. And you see that, you see two people you've met, you saw before in your last one. Um, the first one is a masked figure tied up on the ground, uh, unconscious. And the other is some elven woman getting ready to jump through a window. As, uh, as the window is broken open, uh, you hear her say. It's you, Alyssa.
Alyssa.
Myra.
Do you not remember?
Come on, Alyssa.
This is you. The right, it's Myra, Punt, and one off.
What?
We flashback.
You have a question to ask these people.
I have a question to ask who?
About the location of this. You say, where is he? That's, we're in that moment.
Oh. That scene, yeah.
Yeah.
Where is he?
What the? Who is this person? As, uh, Gonka, you're, you're just standing outside, uh, looking over Punt and then all of them.
Wait, so, so, so there's, there's an unconscious person on the floor?
On the, oh, yeah. Wait, I thought it was still.
I can't change time. I can't do anything.
Remember I tied you up and I put you on?
Yeah, but I thought it was still on your shoulder at this point.
I don't know.
Fine, the unconscious person's on her shoulder. Where is he?
What the, what's going on?
As, uh, Myra, you turn back and see this, uh, person who wasn't there previously, standing there.
Who are you?
Who are you and why do you have an unconscious person on your back?
Long story short, I need them so I can get money. That's my god, can I try to tackle this person?
See, this is what I love. Introduce any other campaign's playable characters to Myra and they're instantly like, what the fuck is wrong with you?
What the, who the fuck are you?
I, I.
What the fuck is your deal?
I know something now.
Oh, Luke might have figured something out.
I did figure something out. I'm not, I'm not saying anything. Move on.
Yeah, fuck this person. I wanna try to save the person on their back.
Time, it's time, bye.
Um, yeah, roll.
Do you still have Myra?
Roll a strength check.
Oh my god, okay.
Oh, no.
Roll, oh, Myra, you also roll.
Wait, wait, I gotta pull up Myra's stats. Hold on. Give me like five seconds.
God damn it. You broke me, Lexi. You broke me, Lexi.
Five, here we go.
Lexi, you broke me.
I broke you?
Nothing, nothing, move on.
Okay.
Gonna put Trump in the B tier.
Okay, let me pull up my characters. Let me open Myra up here. Alright, I didn't do too hot, not gonna lie. For a plus five, oof.
Alright, Myra, what'd you roll?
But Lexi, what did you roll?
I rolled a nine.
Okay, I rolled a ten?
That's the Myra roll.
This is so fucking amazing.
Barely manages to dodge out of the way. Um, as, uh, Gonka goes to try to tackle her, as all the executives who've just been a witness, this just starts screaming and running away.
Oh, I didn't even get to say the line where I'm here to babysit.
I'm the babysitter!
No, 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 you yell that as they're running away. And then Gonka is fighting you.
Like, Myra yells, I'm the babysitter!
Are you babysitting this woman?
No, I'm here to babysit the baby of the Biggie Piggy.
There's no baby here!
Well, I have to get to the baby. That's the whole point.
I don't think you should be with a baby.
As two buggers come down holding a baby and this, and the baby says, what is the meaning of this? What is going on right now?
I'm here to make you with me. It's a, it's a warlord!
It's a warlord baby!
Yes!
You may kiss my fingers. I give you full permission.
We need to kill him!
What?
Baby?
I would rather you didn't.
Not again, not again.
Don't kiss a baby.
Throw him against a wall.
No!
That, the rewrite can't be.
As, um. Gonka.
Yeah.
You wake up.
Oh.
No.
The most terrifying nightmare of all.
You feel something drawing you to these people. This is the second time that's happened. Not quite sure why. As the next night's shenanigan, um, Anya, you are able to sleep successfully. You already had a flashback, so. Um.
Awesome.
Makosta. It's time for an insomnia check.
I haven't had my spell slots in like three days.
Good luck. I tried three times trying like to pick up that.
No!
That's a nat one. Makosta, you do not sleep tonight, at all.
Damn, damn. Somehow in the morning time rewinds, you have to be awake. There're two nights.
And next insomnia check will be at this event.
Oh, no!
You've done.
You die from lack of sleep?
Everyone's, uh, everyone's attempting to sleep to some extent. Except. For Laba Hubbard. Laba, what would you like to do?
Well, uh, it really sucks that Luke rolled a nat one for what I'm trying to do. Uh, so this may actually be good in the war run for you, um. Because I. Want to, uh, there's a reason that I was pestering Makosta and Anya to try and sleep with. To try and come to stay in my room. Uh, so I sneak out of my room. I think Anya's still in the lobby because that's where she was when I left. I head to the lobby. I'm like. I head to the lobby, I'm looking around. I don't see Anya. Oh, god damn it. Where the hell did she go?
And.
Well, cause she said she was gonna sleep in the lobby.
Yeah.
Yeah, but then she went to the room, so. I, you did go to the room, right, Alyssa?
Yeah, I did.
You met a gaming.
I mean, realistically, inference probably would just.
Damn it. Did she go to the room with? Um, um, so I sneak back to their room and I, uh. So I head, I head to their room. I assume I would know which room there is.
Yeah, you know which rooms there is.
Let me, uh, let me look because I have certain spells here, uh, and I cast clairvoyance on the inside of their room.
There it is.
Choose to either hear or see what's going on. So I cast it at the top of the room so I can look and check. Alright, are they all asleep? And I cast it.
Uh, you see Makosta's tossing and turning and is not able to sleep at the moment.
Why must everything be so difficult? Uh.
That's the wrong person.
Do I have any sleep spells? I do not have any sleep spells. Why must everything be so difficult? Yes, there, you're right. Um, I said it right in my DM to, uh, Jack, but, uh, why must everything be so difficult? I, uh. My character would misgender people?
Is that Winston's voice? Is that Winston's?
My character would misgender people.
Uh, I thought, I was talking about the Ben Shapiro Winston thing that.
Okay, yeah, I'm making jokes because I'm figuring out what I'm gonna do now. This insomnia thing is not good for me.
What if like when Winston kills Frasier, he like called her like the F slur? He was like.
I mean, I don't think, I don't, I think even if Makosta knew they were having a powdered insomnia, they would still try to fall asleep.
Okay, I have a question. Whose bed is closer to the door and whose bed is closer to the window?
Uh, my bed's closer to the door.
Okay, interesting.
I'll take that.
Probably.
And I DM'd you something.
Why must everything be so difficult? Um.
Oh, that's the twist, Jack? Yeah, that's the twist.
Shut up.
What?
Yo, were you guys talking about the crime boys?
Oh yeah, that still hasn't happened yet, holy shit, um.
Crime boys aren't till campaign three.
Wait. We're just distracting him at this point, we're distracting him, we keep going.
Alright, alright, alright.
I can't find any good spells, uh, oh no, here's what I do, um.
You cast sleep?
I don't have sleep, I checked.
That'd be so funny. Knock on the goddamn door!
But I don't wanna wake you up!
What?
Um.
You don't have that ability.
Okay, here's what I'm gonna do, I'm gonna use somatergy to, uh, create a, some ominous whispering from outside the window. And I, and I, and I start, uh, so I'm, can, can I like control what it's, what the whispering says?
You know what? I don't know if you can or cannot, but I'm gonna, I'm gonna lie. I'm gonna lie, cause that sounds cool.
Makosta, come out to here.
What the fuck?
Come out the window and come talk to me.
You know, you know that like feeling when like, when you're laying in bed, but you instantly like awake and you're at full attention, like you're just like.
Roll me an ins, roll me an insight check, Makosta.
Okay. Uh, it's a thirteen, uh, twelve, twelve, another twelve, I've been rolling seven on every insight check.
We've been contacted by mysterious forces like this before, so this could be worth checking out.
Okay, uh, Makosta gets up and kind of like looks towards the window and kind of like looks out the window, kind of.
You don't see anything?
Hmm. Can I roll like an arcana check on just the general area?
No, why would you? Can you justify why you would roll specifically on arcana?
Because I heard a voice from outside, I look outside and no one's there.
Fair enough.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Roll me an arcana check.
And you're still hearing them whispering.
Yeah. Uh, oh sorry, where's my arcana? Okay, another seven! Okay, twelve again, twelve again!
No magic that you can detect.
What the fuck? Okay.
We need you to come out here.
Alright, I'll be down in just a second, let me get my stuff. And I like get my armor on and everything and I go out the door, cause I'm not gonna go out the fucking window. Do I, do I hear, do I hear a, okay, okay.
He's so large.
Theoretically.
Roll me a perception check to hear those footsteps.
Boogie two nine eight runs outside your hallway.
And who doesn't dive out the window?
You got way too used to that, uh, perception?
Yeah.
Oh god, I'm, this is rolling though, this is rolling, this is what I'm scared of.
Wait, is it like?
Uh, another twelve, my third twelve in a row!
Roll me a stealth check, uh, my, my.
No!
Oh no, seven!
You hear, you hear. Boom, 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 boom.
Makosta immediately like murders intent spy shit, opens the door, looks down the hallway.
Uh, wow, whoa, whoa, uh, that was what, what's going on? Oh hey, uh, Makosta, I was just, uh, headed to the, uh, the bathroom.
Outside?
We're headed back from the bathroom, yeah, uh.
Why would you go outside of your room to use the bathroom?
Insane.
My, uh, uh, child came in and clogged my toilet because, uh.
Why would he come into your room?
Because Anisha had clogged the other toilet, you know what, it's fine, uh, I, I just, I had to use the like, the lobby bathroom, it sucks.
Does the lobby have a bathroom?
Yeah, I don't know.
Okay, okay.
I had to use the lobby bathroom, it's unfortunate, uh, what are you doing up at this hour?
I heard you run across my, why would you run too?
Uh, well, you know, I, I just, I really need my beauty sleep, so I gotta get back to my room as fast as possible.
And you are ruining my beauty sleep!
What? Oh, I'm sorry, did I, uh, did I wake you up?
Yes?
Well, uh, my apologies, uh.
God, that's deception.
And I, uh, I, oh, I slowly like opened my.
Can I roll insight on all of this? I didn't want to interrupt the moment, but Makosta would definitely be like, what the?
Yeah, now, cause I'm acting weird, yeah.
Okay, if I roll another fucking twelve, I'm leaving. Okay, a seventeen. Wait, no, nineteen, fuck, my thing's a plus five.
For perception.
For insight, insight, insight.
This man's lying to you. Unless, wait, Luba, roll me deception.
Yeah, yeah, that's actually, yeah, that's fair.
Uh, twenty-one.
Oh my god, okay.
This man's not lying to you.
I have a plus nine mod, so please keep asking me to roll deception.
Fucking cultist.
Persuasion, deception, intimidation, plus nine.
Well. I wish you good luck with your shits, probably all the food you fucking eat.
Thank you.
Now be quiet, please.
Our goal was to end this like around five thirty to six, I don't know if we could do that with combat? Should we save combat for next session, or do you want, do we just wanna power through it?
I prefer to power through it, I'm.
I.
It's gonna go longer.
I'm gonna go long too, I have nothing, nothing really doing tonight, I can just order something.
Yeah, okay.
Alyssa, is, is everyone okay?
Um, okay, so Luba is making.
It's all in the recording.
He's trying to, uh, get into Anya's room so he can infiltrate Anya's dreams, but fricking Makosta rolled a nat one on their insomnia check.
Wait, why, wait, why do you wanna? Why do you wanna?
Don't worry about it, don't worry about it, uh, but Makosta rolled a nat one on their insomnia check, so now Makosta's fucking awake and I have to figure out how to like get rid of her, them.
I see.
So that's lit, and it's not working.
Hold up, wait, so.
I almost shut my door all the way, and I'm like, you know when you stand right behind the door and you're like peering out it to make sure, to like see what Makosta does next?
Hmm. Um.
I want that height chart as soon as we can get it.
Yeah.
That's deadass I can make a drink.
Here, uh.
If everyone wants to send a silhouette of your character.
I will, actually.
And how, how tall they are.
Yeah, silhouette in height.
I actually will real quickly.
Seven feet tall.
No, Jesus!
I'll get, I'll get the boogie image, anyway, everyone keep going.
Uh.
So I'm like watching the door, Makosta, what are you doing?
Uh, give me a second, I'm sending Lexi my thing. I'm sent, I'm sending my Lex, I'm sending Lexi a picture of me.
The Mission Impossible music is perfect, watch.
This is such a meme moment.
That's the fucking.
This is just Luba being, trying to be sneaky.
Alright, um, uh, hmm. As I'm, as I'm like turning around, I use minor illusion to cast a voice screaming from downstairs, did someone clog the toilet? And I go back to my room.
Why?
To scare you, I don't know, because they think, because they think someone clogged the toilet.
I guess, yeah.
Um, and Makosta's attempting to fall asleep again, this time in full armor at this point, because they're too lazy to take all of it off again.
Oh god, um.
And they lock the window too.
God damn it!
Hmm, actually, wait, no, hold on, hmm. Fuck, wait, hold on. God, wait, fuck. I'm, I'm in a, I'm at a, I'm at a dilemma here, do I wanna try to sleep again? Or do I wanna keep going with the flow and try to investigate the voice, because Makosta legitimately thought there were voices?
Well, my spell only has a thirty feet range, so I don't know, and it only has a one minute duration.
Will they continue, well, Makosta's still under the, hmm, sorry, okay, sorry, this is me like, thought processing out loud, um, fuck.
I'm just saying that I don't think the voices are gonna be coming again.
Hmm, fuck, um, I think Makosta would just try to go back to sleep again.
Okay, um, but you, you're not gonna be able to sleep tonight, obviously, but.
Alright, um, but yeah, Makosta this time is like, like lays down, covers overhead, just trying to get some shut eye.
I'll have to figure out what she knows about the dream at late, and I shut my door and, uh, give up the, give up for the night on this.
And awesome, and Anisha, do, do you do anything unique tonight, or?
Uh, I said I would take a hit.
Oh yeah, alright, roll me a wisdom saving throw.
Alright. Not the best, but alright, it's not horrible, eleven.
At least it wasn't a twelve.
You get a little bit of shit going on, but it's, uh, it's about, it's about your normal shit, and you get enough sleep. So everyone gets a long rest except for Makosta who has one point of exhaustion.
Fuck me.
Image of Boogie.
Boogie two nine and eight!
Where's that full body image of him going like, like I can't find it.
Did you not have it on your computer?
Oh, I feel bad, I sent.
Does someone have that one from like the original height chart?
I don't think we made an original height chart with Luba ever.
But yeah, but, but, no, but I, but I sent it, is the thing.
We would have to go back months probably.
But you can use the lookup feature.
Oh, I, I don't know Discord, I don't know Discord shit.
Yeah, you have a.
Yeah, from.
Anyway, just, just keeps, just keeps going, just, just keep going.
I'm just gonna.
Do we wake up in the morning?
Jack's messages in this channel until I find.
Is it, wait, is it Lexi's message or is it Jack's message?
Wait, I, I, guys, I'll, I'll, it'll be there. I'll find it.
Okay.
Yeah, if someone, if someone else looked for Boogie, I'll, I'll keep the session going, so, um, everyone gets some sleep. Everyone falls asleep except for Koshua who has, and you all wake up in the morning. Just, yeah, or you can just find a, a Boogie image that you like.
There aren't many full bu, there is a lot of full body pictures of him. Oh, fuck, fuck, oh god.
Uh, and Anya, you wake up to just Makosta going, fuck, fuck.
Morning already, god damn it. Hmm.
As, uh, what is everyone, what would I?
I do not want to look at images of this man.
Haha.
What would I like to do today?
Try to sleep again.
Get back into my room and take a shower.
Yeah, um, Makosta and Anya, you watch as Anisha reenters the room.
Out!
Oh, uh, roll, roll stealth check.
This is not good, cause I have to go at disadvantage.
Oh, why's that?
Because I have, uh, yeah. Fuck me, the first one was actually good, alright, ten.
Alright, both of you guys roll me perceptions.
My, my passive perception's eleven.
Then you can take, then you can take your passive as, uh, you watch as Anisha's trying to sneak in.
As I see them sneak in, I just scream, out!
Jesus Christ, I wanna take a shower so I don't smell like this.
Preseditation, try to get the smell off.
It's not even Makosta's room?
Like, it is my room, you little shit!
What the hell are you doing in here?
I took it, you never came back.
Do you even pay for it? Cause I for sure as hell didn't.
Wait, you didn't pay for it, I, fuck, ah, whatever.
Oh boy!
Makosta's the ultimate moocher. They just mooch off everyone.
They did? Okay, they had their, okay, they should probably, hmm.
I have not paid for, I did not pay for my room, cause I didn't stay in my room. So.
There goes me like not adding gold, because I wanted starting equipment and then I was like, wait, I don't have gold, ah, what if, wouldn't it be funny if I just said, oh, they got robbed at some point?
Yeah, you, you could have, we had the thing, we were just like, you have this much gold.
Eh.
You jacked us.
I guess character choice, I don't know.
Yeah. Alright.
Ah, god.
Wait, do you actually cast preseditation?
Yeah, I tried to get the smell off, I did last night too, at the moment you were shitting.
Yeah, all of this, all of this, any remaining shit is like flung away, I guess?
I was, I was more so using it to get rid of a smell, not fling away the material.
I still wanna take a shower then.
The smell is gone as, um, Anisha just wants to take a shower in her own room.
Go ahead.
Alright, I'm taking a shower, fucking hell.
What gave, I, I like, I kinda walk up to the, to the bathroom door, I'm like, what gave you that shit so hard?
Hey, you might have gotten food poisoning.
From what, what did you eat?
I found it, I found the image.
Pog.
I just had to search, uh, Jack in Jack's campaign before a specific date went on, I found it.
Can you post, I wanna see it, I wanna see him, I wanna see him.
Everyone is currently role playing, keep role playing.
Oh yeah.
Krakens, I?
Why did you eat the krakens up? Oh my god, Makosta was having the realization of, this is an item that could get me killed, and then instead Anisha ate it, and then had the shits for an entire night. Ah, you are.
Did you ever give the other kraken eye to the guy?
I did.
Yes.
You are a fucking, okay, uh.
I, I was hungry and it looked good, I made it so it wouldn't, well, kill me.
Did you get rid of the poison?
Uh, we did, might have landed on a mafia member.
Ah, it's a mafia member, who cares? Um, well, do you mind if I stay in here for a bit, I'm trying to get some rest? Last night, another person had to take a massive shit and then woke me up in the middle of the night.
Ah, shit, sure, I don't need.
Hmm, thank you, and then Makosta attempts to lie back down and try to sleep into the morning for at least a short rest.
Uh, roll me an insomnia check.
Is this one at disadvantage? Is it, uh, should it be disadvantage to fall back asleep?
But you never were asleep.
You never fell asleep.
You never were.
No, 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 but like, uh. Does, okay, but does. No, 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 but like even with, even with insomnia, it's not like, once you, once you fall, like, once you stay up for a while, you can't just not stall for, like, once you get insomnia, you can't not sleep again forever. Like, there comes up.
That's why I'm asking you to roll for it.
Okay, but like at disadvantage, okay.
Anyone ever play a diabetic character, that's just gonna be every five minutes, like, I checked my blood sugar.
Okay, a fourteen, a fourteen.
Okay, you are able to get a short rest, if, if, as long as you sleep. Four hours un, uninterrupted.
Wasn't it one to five, no rest?
Are you, unless you're trying to take a long rest?
Oh yeah, shit, um. I'll take a long rest, I'll take a long rest.
I'm assuming you guys are gonna go.
Yeah, I.
The library today.
I'll take, I'll take a long rest, I'll take a long rest. I'll take a long rest and, um, I'll leave Anya a note basically saying, sorry, couldn't sleep last night, please leave me alone.
I think Anya's still in the room.
Yeah, I'll just leave it like on the nightstand or something.
Okay.
Cool, as, uh, the rest of you, what, what would you like to do today?
So I go, so I head into the lobby and I'm just.
I, I prob, yeah, after my shower, I probably would head into the lobby as well.
I would do the same.
Well, good morning, Anisha, Karuk, hope you slept well, hope you, uh, shitted less.
Let's not talk about it, please.
Fair enough, fair enough, where's the rest of the gang?
Karuk slept like baby, Gunka is be telling me good bedtime stories.
Oh, well that sounds, well that sounds nice, uh, now where's the other two?
Oh sure, bright and early, we must be fighting this, um, um, still cannot remember, but this.
I'll go, uh.
Makosta is doing bad.
Sorry.
Anya, do you, do you come downstairs?
Can I?
Anya?
Anya?
Can I, can I amend one thing to my note real quickly, sorry, just one thing.
Sure.
Uh, I wanna say, I wanna talk to you at some point, just, I, at the, like, a note basically saying, I wanna talk to you about something.
Thank god.
Just at some point, just at some point, just at some point.
Sure, yeah, cool, that's on the note, Anya, you see a note on the nightstand that says, uh, couldn't sleep, I wanna talk to you at some point.
Don't wake me up.
Don't wake me up, yeah, alright, cool, uh, as, yeah, Anya joins the rest of you guys downstairs.
Alright, there we are, there's everybody, now there's one more, uh, Makosta, where are they?
I just said.
Makosta fell asleep, they couldn't sleep last night, so they're.
Oh.
How long it be going to take until we are to be fighting this thing?
Yeah, I, I, I mean, we should probably head and fight this thing like today, is, was Makosta planning to just like sleep through the fight?
I don't think so, they just said to not wake them up and they'll be up soon.
Well, there's no, uh, issue with preparing for another few hours if they need the rest.
I suppose you're right.
Let's go find Alder.
Alder.
We need someone.
You guys are told, guys, the mayor's gonna make an announcement.
We could go check that out while we wait for Makostra, there we go.
Uh, would that be taking like six hours?
We'll see how it's been happening.
It still might be a good idea.
Somebody come in and say that, it's not like.
Yeah. The announcement should be in about, well, it's gonna be in the afternoon tonight, so you all should be, uh, best be there, Hawk's gonna be there too.
The afternoon tonight, okay, so what time is it?
Uh, it's the morning right now, so it's like about, um, nine, nine PM.
Alright, well, I guess we can wait, well, what do you think? Should we wait one more day before we head into the mafia headquarters?
Uh, Karuk, you got the sense that time was of the essence with this one.
I think we need to be hurting, this one day could make all the difference. I hate to say it, but I'm not sure if we will be able to be waiting for uh, um, Michael.
That's what I was thinking too, I just wanted to uh, read the room, you know, uh.
Makostra in the bathroom.
Time's of the essence, yeah.
You seem like you're friends with Makostra, can you go uh, convince them that uh, time is of the essence?
They're gonna be really mad if I wake them up.
Well, they're gonna be more mad if I wake them up, so either you do it or I do.
Leave a note and.
Yeah, I'll I'll leave them a note.
I I would say it's better that Makoto is a little bit angry than we get screwed because we don't fight this thing and I agree with that.
Alright, alright.
Uh, fine.
That's just no harm, if they don't wanna come, they can just go back to sleep.
Yeah, that's true.
How how about this, how about this? We do not be waking them up now, we give them some time to sleep, three, four hours, but.
What, what's the time right now?
It's about seven P, uh, seven AM.
Seven AM.
At noon today, we are going to go and fight this creature.
Do you think we have time, then yeah, that sounds good to me.
Sounds good to me.
And oh, I love a plan.
So, what do you guys do in this time other than just prepare for the fight?
I wanna find a job. I need money.
Alright, where where would you like to work?
Uh, is there like a job board, like in every other fucking town in this continent?
You know what, no, because you're making money. No job board, yeah, there's a job board. Um, there's a lot of, there's a, it's all Christmas related setup, so it's all stuff like getting the trees ready, uh, caroling is one of them.
I don't know.
And then there's one called Christmas sex, and it's, there's a question mark next to it, but that is, that case thirty gold.
I got the.
The other two jobs are fifteen gold, and the other jobs are fifteen gold, but Christmas sex question mark is thirty gold. In parentheses, in the job description says, this is prostitution.
Alright.
Aw, if only Myra was here, she can make.
Yo!
Christmas Myra.
Christmas Myra gets so much holiday cheer.
Fire Emblem Hero's Christmas Myra skin.
Uh, yeah, I don't think it's do that, so I'm going to go and do getting the tree ready.
Cool, uh, yeah, you spend the entire, you spend your your time just getting the tree ready and you're paid fifteen gold for it.
Yay.
I wanna talk to Anya, so.
Uh, Karuk, what would you like to do?
Uh, I go to find somewhere to gamble.
Oh my.
Hell yeah, man. You go to a, you go to a casino as um, a guy named Johnny Game comes over and says, hey, I'm Johnny Game, how you doing? Can I help you?
Uh, looking for somewhere to burn some cash, ah, you came to the right place, muchacho.
Uh, how would you like to do some slot machines, eh?
Hmm, I don't know, something, maybe it's something that's a little more, you know, man to man.
Would you like to arm wrestle?
There it is.
Arm wrestling, eh? Hey, this guy knows me, alrighty then.
Alright, bring out our contender, that's just a giant guy comes out.
Hello. Arm wrestle you.
It's nice to be making acquaintance, yes?
It's nice to meet you too, let's begin the arm wrestling.
Uh, Romeo, how how much mon- how much money would you be putting down, as he uh, puts down a sack of uh, twelve gold, let's show much on foot, dude.
Sure, I'll match it, and I put down twelve gold on my own.
Brilliant, let's begin the arm wrestling.
Roll me an opposed strength check.
Oh.
Boy.
I wanna see this.
I'm I'm gonna make it box of doom, fuck it.
Box of doom is way more fun, eleven, eleven, eleven.
You got this.
Watch me fricking lose this.
You beat this guy.
Oh no.
As you take the, uh, you get twenty, or yeah, you add add twelve gold.
Oh.
Oh, that's tragic, that is.
Alrighty, uh. Okay, okay, I give you one more chance, I give you one more chance.
Okay.
One more time, and this time I am going to be putting in, and I put in twenty gold.
He puts in one gold, no, he also puts in twenty gold.
Alrighty then.
Sixteen.
Uh oh.
On Aiden, don't lose it now. God.
Yo!
Uh, you get twenty gold, and it's just like,
I don't like this. I should repeat people, you're all stronger than me, and that's not fair.
Oi, oi, I just, uh, I have good luck, I um, uh, you will win it begging no time, you're strong, man, yes?
I am strong.
Hey, you 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 very powerful, it was a fluke this time, but.
Yes, I agree.
You're going to have plenty, plenty of people coming in here, and you are going to boom, 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 you need all that.
Yes, you are right, thank you, sir.
Aw.
Johnny Game's like, wow, you're winning a little too much, huh? You better leave or I'll have someone break your kneecaps, am I right? That's not a joke, I am not joking, kid, that is a thing we do here.
Alright, I I book it, I I leave.
Gonka, what would you like to do with your dad?
Oh, I'll just look for some work.
Cool, uh, you.
I wanted to, um, check out any like weapons place.
Nice, uh, yeah, you go to uh, the weapons shop, as um, let me pull up that information. Uh, ta 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 ta. Sorry, I have to go onto my Google Docs real quick.
I am silhouetting Boogie right now.
Oh yeah, uh, make sure to send in your silhouettes, everyone.
Yeah, I'm missing a few, I think.
I think Will. Uh, Will, Alyssa, and Will, Alyssa, I think are the only ones? Will, yeah, Will and Alyssa are the only people that need to send in their sl-.
No, I I sent mine to Zoom, that's the.
Uh, then Alyssa, send Anya.
Oh, I don't have anything based for Anya.
Just find like a tiefling image then.
Yeah, just send in like anything.
Just a tiefling that has a general body shape of uh, you would think Anya would.
Yeah.
You don't even need to be that, if you don't want it, I can just put a stick.
Anya's like five seven, I don't know, I didn't really think about it.
You can just find a tiefling. Um, awesome, uh, Gonka, you walk in, uh, to the uh, damaged delta store, a store run by a dwarf named Yorok. As Yorok looks up at you and says, oi, how can I help you today?
I love your accent.
Thank you very much, now then, what can I be doing for you?
Uh, I'm looking for an improvement on my weapons.
Improvement eh, uh, what kind of improvement you looking for?
Either better weapons, or maybe you could amp mine up a bit.
Well then, let me look at what you got right now. Uh, anyway, give me that, give it to me, come on.
I have morning star and two spears.
A morning star eh? Well, I can give you some more spears and then we can see if we got a better weapon for you. Hmm?
Yeah, no, that sounds good, that sounds good.
Great, um, he goes through his stuff, anyway, what brings you into town?
Um, you know, just some family business.
Hmm.
Fun stuff.
Is it uh, a family, uh, family business or a family business?
Oh, no, it, there was a death in the family, that's why I'm here.
Alright, I'm gonna, I'm gonna shut up now because, uh, that's that's on me? That's, that is Yorok's error, alright, I I made a mistake there by implying something that is uh, it's clearly not true. And uh, to be honest, I'm 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 deeply ashamed of how I've acted in front of you.
Oh, no, you've been, you've been perfectly sweet, don't, don't even worry about it.
Listen, I'm, I implied something that uh, is just not, not good, and uh, it won't happen again.
Well, I I understand, I don't worry about it.
That one's on me, alright, we all, we all make mistakes.
Alright, well, well, thank you.
Have you ever done some inner reading, have you ever read about the spirit?
Spirit?
I believe that she, that as people, we are, we are, we are culpable to errors that we make.
Mm-hmm.
I believe, that's one that I just did right now, on on, I messed up, that's, that's on me, okay?
Okay.
But I need you to know that.
Well, you know.
And furthermore.
Okay.
When people, people are not willing, these days, people do not apologize, you know? All they do is just, they say it's, it's nonsense, that's like, it's not my fault, but that's one, this one's, this one is my fault. And I'm taking full responsibility for it. Alright?
Okay, you know, I I accept your apology, I I accept your apology.
Thank you.
You know what would be great is some kind of discount.
Bro, you know what, I should three points. I I like that, I like where your headset, and I'll have to oblige for you. See, I look through stuff, now, I don't have, I know the morning star ain't better than what you got, but I could get you something uh, a better weapon in general, if you want like a good axe.
I can do that, yeah.
You looking for a, you looking for a great axe? Great sword, a halbert?
How much, how much are your great swords or great axes?
A great sword uh, would be a, would run you about thirty-eight, great axe would be about hmm, twenty-two.
Okay, so for the great axe, you wanna knock it down to nineteen and you got yourself a deal? It's not too bad.
What, it's good enough for me?
Alright, that, well, thank you, this is my pleasure.
Takes out uh, a great axe and hands it to you, and before he answers, you know what, I just got to say, a lot of people aren't willing to um, hold others accountable the way that you are, but then asking for that discount, you're actually asking for forgiveness in a way. And I think we can both learn something from this, you see, the spirit of humanity and of us as people, is, and he just keeps lecturing you, hands you the weapon and uh, finishes the transaction, it's like, and you want some more spears, I hear?
You know, I'm bust out of gold, so you know, no more spears.
Well, it's a pleasure doing business with you.
A pleasure.
Can I just say, as uh, we're gonna cut over.
Uh, Luba, you attempt to find Anya, correct?
Yeah, yeah, wherever Anya is going, I am always.
Cool, uh, Anya, you watch as Luba's following you.
Uh, can I help you?
Oh, uh, I I I just wanted to ask you a question, uh, yesterday, uh, when you punched yourself at the Biggie Piggy, uh, is that like a, is that like a normal thing for you, just like having weird like dreams?
Kinda, I I don't know, sometimes it happens when I'm sleeping and I have a dream about my past, I, I I haven't really told you everything about me, I I don't remember anything about me, all I know is what my name.
You don't remember anything?
No.
Now, how long's that been going on for?
Uh, as long as I can remember.
Yes, I, I suppose you're right, uh, so, when you came to this town to look for the killer Santa, uh, you didn't remember who you were, or?
No, all I knew was my name, I didn't even know where I was from, I was just out wandering in the snow.
Well, uh, how'd you hear the name the uh, how'd you hear the name the Dreamer?
It, it was in my memory the other day, I don't know.
In your memory?
I don't know who that is, or why I would know them.
I've met a fellow before who goes by the name The Dreamer. He was uh, he was not a very nice fellow, I'll tell you that much, and uh, I believe he may have something to do with this whole nocturne thing.
The Golden Door.
Nocturne thing, um.
Have they, have they told you what that was, what happened there?
Uh, a bunch of people died because of something, I'm not entirely sure.
Because of some kind of twisted god figure, and uh, you know, people say it was Lyran, but, I don't know, I think The Dreamer could, I think The Dreamer could be involved, so, well, uh.
The Dreamer?
I I don't know anything about the people you're talking about, so I'm I'm kinda confused.
That's alright, that's alright, I just thought I'd ask, uh, what did they say about this Dreamer, do you remember?
Uh, do I remember?
Um, you just remember that someone said he was coming and that he liked fruit.
I just remember someone saying that he was coming over and that he really liked fruit.
Fruit, yep, that sounds like the Dreamer I met. Well, uh.
You know what's funny, is like, Luba and The Dreamer kinda got along, is the funniest.
They didn't, they didn't.
I think, I'm pretty sure The Dreamer's like, I like your accent, and Luba's like, oh, thanks! The extent of their interaction.
I mean, they did kinda fight a bit, but.
Well, uh. It's The Dreamer I know. Well, uh, thanks for talking to me, uh, if you remember anything else, uh, let me know.
Uh, sure, no problem.
Now, what are you, now what, now, now what are you headed to do uh, for the rest of the day?
I'm just kinda waiting for Makostra to wake up so we can go, I don't really have much else to do.
Yeah, I feel a little bad because I uh, I woke him up last night heading back from the bathroom, uh, I I, sometimes I walk a little loud and uh, yeah.
Yeah, I don't know why, but I thought I felt thumping.
Yeah, yeah, well, Makostra seemed to feel it too. For, for uh, person that's trouble sleeping. Well, I'll I'll see you, I'll see you at noon.
See you then.
I watch, I I watch her walk away with.
Uh, does anyone have anything else they'd like to do before it comes time?
What, what time do you think it is?
Oh, after that, it's, you still got a lot of time left if you want, if you have something you wanna do, Luba.
I think.
I may or may not regret saying that.
Well, I'm going to uh, I think I'm gonna head into town and uh, just try to like, do some invest, do some wandering investigating, get a good grasp on the town.
Uh, roll me an investigate check.
Nat twenty.
Holy shit.
Hell, yeah.
Um, as you're investing in the town, here's what you want, uh, the town was a war zone when you first got here, and right now, it's weird. Because all the guards are now dedicated to setting up Christmas stuff, so the mob's kind of like pulled back, there's no longer like street brawls, because they've been ordered to not really engage the mob anymore, so the mob's just kind of out in the open sometimes. Like, sometimes they're just like out committing crimes and no one seems to care. Um, another thing you, yeah.
No, go ahead.
Uh, another thing you notice is that there's um, the, there's more and more Christmas decorations than ever before.
Do I notice any like suspicious buildings or anything related to like?
Nothing sticks out, you get the sense that uh, a lot of the machinations and like secrets and stuff are not in this town at the moment, other than what you already know, uh, and nothing you could get from a surface level, you got as much as you could get from a surface level, look, with that nat twenty.
Alright, well, uh, I do my wandering and I just kind of, maybe I I head to the Biggie Piggy and I grab a, a, another quick bite to eat, not the massive meal I had last time.
Cool, it's, yeah, you spend up five, five, four gold at the Biggie Piggy to get some good, good meal, uh, as, is everyone ready to begin the attack?
Yes, I mean, I don't think I'd be able to do anything else after.
Yes, Gonka?
Um, Will, give picture of character, like the last one I need.
Will, send it on Zoom.
Send it on Zoom?
Yeah, I don't know, that's, I don't, I get missed messages from both Discord and Zoom, I thought, I, it was just there.
No, no, you're good, you're good, you're good.
Alrighty, alright then.
Um, cool, so does uh, does someone go to wake up Makostra?
I will.
Cool, uh, Makostra, you were awoken, awoken by Anya, as you now have received a short rest.
Uh, Anya, uh, sorry, what time is it? Do I know if I've gotten like a short rest, sorry?
Yeah, you know you've only gotten a short rest.
It's almost noon.
Can you give me like two, two and a half, three more hours?
Um, if you don't wanna come to the battle, then yes.
Battle? Wait, is there a fight?
For the mob.
I don't wanna fight, Zephyr couldn't fight the mob because he made a deal, Makostra could though. Hmm. Uh, can I look at the benefits just real quickly of having a short rest as compared to a long rest? Because I don't think with a short rest, I don't think I get any spell sauce back.
Sitting at the fight from the Luxor, you can take a long rest.
Hmm. I don't take, eh, hmm.
Have we had everyone present at the start of a fight yet?
Our guy was there at the start of the kraken fight.
Yeah, every, I think, I'm pretty sure. Everyone was there for the kraken fight.
Everyone was there for sludge time too, just.
The Golden Door!
Uh, sorry, there's an ability I'm reading up on that's, wording's a bit weird.
The Golden Door with the gun.
That's Luba when he comes, when he comes to dog. It's Boogie with a gun. I like, I like the person holding his dog in the background.
Yeah.
Is is the person wearing a badge?
I love that you know their names, like. I love that you know their names, like.
No, that's uh, his name, it's the darts, or it's like his interns.
Oh, okay, um, alright, cool.
Is he wearing a badge?
Yeah, the guy in the background's wearing a badge.
I'm pretty sure you can't get your spell slots back is the biggest problem.
Yeah, but the thing is, I have an ability that wizards have called arcane recovery. And it's, it's weird in the word, wording that it's um, once per day, once you finish a short rest, you can choose to expand a certain amount of spell slots. However, I used it the day before because I also got a short rest the day before, so I couldn't like regain spell slots. And it says, one use out of a long rest, but in the wording it says short rest, and then if I click on like. Time it takes, it says other or special. So I'm gonna, it's very weird, it says once per day, once you finish a short rest, so.
I'm sure you could get yourself one more hour, because the thing.
Well, the thing.
And I think, if I recall correctly, the quality.
No, eight hours.
It's eight hours.
It's eight hours of light activity, only six of those hours actually have to be sleeping.
Oh.
Oh.
You would have to, then, then you would have to do another two hours of nothing.
I mean, didn't he do nothing the entire night?
That's fair, so yeah, you could get two more hours if you want.
Aiden, I love you. Um, back to bed, bitches!
Sorry if that's metagaming?
No, I mean, that's a very core rule.
I, you guys, that won't change the fact that you all said that you wanted to do it at noon, and he's now saying no.
Yeah.
Hmm, but hour makes it a lot easier to.
We're not gonna have a sudden change of heart, I, I really don't think that's gonna happen.
Yeah, y'all aren't gonna be like, well, the mechanics of life is that if you get two more hours of sleep, you're much stronger.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I know, but this is a gaming thing. Uh.
Oh, we could fight for an hour, maybe, I don't know.
You could not fight for an hour.
For an hour, a round is.
Seven seconds.
No, I thought a full round was, I thought, I thought a full round was six seconds.
Yeah.
A full round is seven seconds.
Hundred rounds of combat.
Yeah, that's bad.
We could do it.
Try?
Uh, anyway, Makostra, what do you wanna do?
Uh. God, this is such a big decision, fuck, um. Because this is, this isn't like a Zack situation, Makostra would totally go to this fight because they wanna be there. Uh, but if I go there, I'm at a severe disadvantage for not only the group, but me, my, like as a PC.
I, I, okay, let me.
Nobody gave him any advice.
Yeah, don't, don't give me any advice, just let me.
Will. You're always, you, you metagame maybe almost as much as Luke does sometimes.
I do.
Hmm.
I'll admit that. I was gonna.
What are you, what are you gonna do, Makostra?
Okay, um. Okay, I'm reading this like arcane recovery thing a lot more easily.
Okay.
After completing a short rest, you can choose to expand s- spell slots to recover. The spell slots are combined level of blah blah blah. Hmm. The wording here is I think I can only use it, I can activate it after taking a short rest, but I can only get the ability back after taking a full long rest. So, which I've not done. Hmm. Hmm, fuck. So yeah, I would only be going in, in there with no spell slots, um.
I have no spell slots?
I have one fourth level and then a couple first level.
Oh, you got.
That's.
That's like Warlock levels of spell slots.
Yeah, and their level.
You're trying to convince the group to let you sleep for two more hours.
Or one, I thought it was one more hour. Huh.
You need six currently up.
Both as a player and as a character, I don't want to do that, this is getting a little annoying, like.
Sorry.
Your choice, please.
Uh.
Give your character a hindrance and then be like, how can I get around this hindrance?
Well, it's not even, I'm trying to get around it, I'm trying to figuring it out, and it's been like two, honestly. Um, fuck. Ah, fuck, I'll just go with a short rest, fuck it.
I've lost my sound.
Yeah.
On your back?
I'll go with a short rest.
Yeah, we can hear you.
I can hear you, you're good.
Alright, uh, that'll get me, that'll get me my HP back, which is pretty nice.
Hello?
Yeah, I've lost sound.
I can't hear us. Oh, nice dick shot, loser, sorry.
God damn it.
Just gonna insult him while he can't hear me.
Someone speak.
Hello?
Why can't I hear you guys?
Alright.
What?
Wait, I have a question, has Makostra gotten any long rest at all since our last battle?
I hear that, I just don't hear, I don't hear it on, let me.
The Kraken, the, they got a, they got a long. They got a long rest before the Kraken fight, after the Kraken fight. It was like the midday, we came back that night. I, they got no rest, and then the next morning, they got a short rest.
Yeah, so we had not had a long rest since the last battle.
The thing is, I didn't use all my spell slots last battle, I just, I'm severely lacking in that department.
Yeah, I mean, it's up to you, man, I just don't like.
Uh, I'm seven wizard, two blood hunter.
That's, oh, that makes more sense.
Yeah, and my, hmm. God damn it, whatever.
Sorry, man.
Speak, people?
Hello, hello?
Are people talking right now?
Yeah, we're talking.
God damn it.
What is happening?
Jack's audio really just.
Unplugging your headphones.
Jack's audio really just stopped working.
He's using his AirPods.
His AirPods might have ran out of battery, his AirPods might have ran out of battery.
Yes, I hear them now, I hear you guys now.
What happened, did your AirPods run out of battery?
Uh, no, it's just like, I gotta call my friend to fuck the zoom up.
Okay.
Uh, what, what are we talking about, what's the plan?
Just debating generally. I'll just do the short rest and then go in there with less spell slots. Um, cool.
We're fucked.
As uh the group uh begins making their way to the library. Uh, you see the, you uh, as you walk in Anisha, you see the librarian, he says. Hello?
Ah.
We're, we're not gonna talk about what happened last night.
Please, I would hope we don't.
Do, does uh, the, the, does the air get smell like shit?
Uh, I mean, maybe it's faster than does?
No, he's cleaned up, obviously. Anyway, how, how can I help you?
I wasn't, I'm very confused while we're here.
We're uh, we're, this is where the mafia base is, Will.
Well, no, I, I, I'm in character, very confused while.
Oh, right, yeah.
You didn't do the voice, you should have been.
I'm very confused.
Nobody even like told Anisha, I mean, oh, let's just assume we told Anisha while we're doing.
Okay.
Were you, was she not at the Biggie Piggy when we?
No.
She wasn't.
No, cuz she was shitting her pants.
Shit ass. So I, I think I, I'd take Anisha off to the side and immediately like.
Yeah. He, he, he would happen.
So.
So I, I.
Okay, you tell me the entire thing, blah blah blah, okay.
Alright, everybody, uh. Let me handle this. I walk up to the guy and I lean towards him and I'm like, so uh. I hear I'm a uh. A friend of the mafia.
Louder, we cannot hear you!
I hear, I can't talk louder, it's a matter of discretion, group. Uh, I hear.
You are keeping secrets now? Big whiny baby man saying all secrets.
Come here, come here, come here! I, can I like pull Karuk over to me?
Yeah, Karuk, you're pulling in.
Oh dear.
Uh. I hear I'm a friend of the mafia, and I've been take, and I've been brought here to take in this, this uh, this fellow, Karuk. He's worth, it's initiation, uh, where's the base?
Roll me a deception check, roll me a deception check.
Nice, that's nice.
Twenty-eight.
Nice.
Can I roll myself, just cuz I, most people would like assume this, but can I roll Karuk an insight check to see if he understands?
Yes.
Dear god. This might be box of doom worthy.
The man's buying this, the man's buying this.
Alright.
For now.
I rolled a nine.
Um, you don't, you. You don't get the feeling that you should fuck this up, but that's a weird statement, which is me, but you're also like, Lava is pretty smart, so maybe I should just let me. Um, as he says, alrighty then, follow me.
Does this work for the rest of us?
Um, you walk just forward, it didn't seem like.
Okay.
Uh, as he uh, he opens like a hatch and just uh sees, and he sees upstairs, he says, I'm down there.
Thank you very much.
If they don't recognize you, they will attack you on sight, but basically they'll recognize you, cuz you're a new recruit, so.
Yeah, don't worry, they'll recognize, uh, bring us a new recruit, come on, everybody, this way! It's time to join the mafia!
Uh, I'll be right back, I'm sorry, I'll be right back.
Oh, cool.
Alright.
Luke be like, every, before every combat.
He got, he's got. Well, that's, that, he's gotta like replenish his blood sugar, whatever, I don't know.
Wait, what happened?
I think Anisha a little bit too tall, so I'm just staying here.
Yeah, this is weird, okay, sorry.
The golden door.
So we're walking down the stairs currently? So.
Well, we're waiting for Luke, cuz we can't.
Oh.
Yeah, I know.
Okay.
Taking a nap now.
We take.
He's getting an extra hour of rest.
Yeah.
Why?
Uh-oh, Karuk's sitting now.
Oh, fuck, no, hold on.
No, stop.
Man, when Anya was telling you guys about her dream in the Biggie Piggy, I was like, please mention The Dreamer, please mention The Dreamer, please mention The Dreamer, please mention The Dreamer.
Oh, god, I.
Yeah, yeah, I fucking read your mind, Coleman.
I'm so mad I missed that too, because I would just be.
Oh, yeah, Anisha knows that in her dream, I guess. I, I genuinely think I have something figured out, something we're not supposed to know yet, I think I got it figured out, like I, I might be totally wrong. But I'm like ninety percent sure.
Wait, I'm curious.
But Karuk can't have it figured out, so.
Yeah, Karuk has no fucking clue, obviously, this is something that I as Aiden know, not anything Karuk.
Did I have what?
Did you have to level down because?
Um, what level are we all right now?
Nine.
Okay, yeah, I'm at nine, I did, I, level nine was, I'm pretty sure what I was in the campaign.
Really, I thought we were at ten.
Yeah, but that level up happened after he was.
After Seth, yeah, you're right.
Yeah, I know, but what's funny is I was at level ten cuz I leveled myself up for a tournament thing we were doing for fun.
Right.
And so then I had to de-level from that. When I get to level, level, level ten is good though, I get like divine.
I'm back, sorry.
Cool, um. As you all head down into the mafia base. You enter and it's. Dark and slimy and very like unkept, as this is where they're keeping some secret information, from what, from the looks of it.
And they left this place completely unguarded? Is it dark in the?
As you walk down, you enter the room that you've came here for, and you see a bunch of mafiosos just kind of lying around with the Dracolich, just standing there. Waiting, as all of them look up at you and see just the six of you walk in.
Oh, bro, wow. None of us have, we were still.
Looks like they're waiting for us to fight, let's do it!
Full initiative as you see.
Lava, what?
Goodness, you son of a bitch.
Wanna get into eighteen, fifteen?
Okay, uh, this is where the bad rolls start.
Nineteen.
Uh, nat one.
Oh, there it is.
No!
You have to say it.
I love, Gonka's like eight feet?
Yes, I literally lowered her height cuz she looked too tall for the party for this time.
Oh my god.
I was like, never mind, I'm gonna nerf her height.
Jesus Christ. Dude, this party is so much bigger than the other one.
I know, it's massive!
You, you, you think Lava would be towering over everyone?
It's, it's the other party he was, in the other party you were.
Yeah, because all of us were like humanoid.
Cuz Hux was like six inches tall, basically.
Yeah, Lava kinda like snaddle talks and kills.
Jack, Jack, I asked this in the nicest way possible, can I be in the farthest backline area?
I feel like Makostra as a character would come in and stand in the back.
Yeah.
You can't really go farther back, but you can just.
Be in like, yeah.
I'm a mod twenty-one.
Did I at least get this thing back? Uh, did I? Oh no, that's a racial fee. Oh yeah, no, this is an absolutely amazing remix.
So are you, Lexi.
God, if, if Makostra dies to one of my favorite songs from one of my favorite shows.
Makostra's not gonna die, I.
It's, it's a, it's a mix of one of your favorite shows and one of your favorite bands.
Yeah.
Makostra's not gonna die, we have a cleric now.
Oh, god.
Cleric does have a healing anyway.
Maybe I'll be more inclined to heal this party, you don't know.
That's fair. God, okay.
I have my doubt.
Who got above a twenty?
Uh, twenty-one.
Not me.
Twenty-one, alright. Who got above a fifteen?
I got a nineteen.
I got an eighteen.
Roll me a tiebreaker, Alyssa.
Wait, what? Oh shit. Ah, fuck me. Uh. Uh, I got a nine.
Cool. Um, Gonka, what'd you get?
Nine, uh, twenty. It was dirty, though.
Uh, alright, who got above a ten?
I got a fifteen.
I got an eighteen.
You already said.
That should have been above a fifteen.
Yeah, I know, but I don't know if he.
Uh, he actually didn't get that, so it's important, um, okay, and then, all that's left then would be Makostra?
Nat one.
Cool. You'll be sitting in the first round now.
I'm gonna, I, I might actually order food, because my mom is like, we have chicken breast in the fridge. I am essentially doing the same thing that would have happened if I took an extra hour.
Karuk, you're up first, Gonka, you're on deck.
Okie dokie.
Alright, um. Are we, can everyone else see the combat?
No, no.
No, it's not up.
Lunchtime, oh no, poggers, like caffeine, oh, here we go, poggers.
Oh, god.
Can I move my boy?
Yeah.
Yes, I can move him, alright.
Hmm.
I'm now color coding my enemies, it's so easy now to keep track of them, it's great.
How many colors do, does it have actually?
Oh, oh, I think you can customize a lot of colors, uh, dang it.
You could also stack colors, so I could just be like red, blue for someone.
Oh, that's, that's.
So first thing I'm gonna do, what's my movement again, oh yes, unarmed movement. So I'm gonna move five, ten, fifteen, twenty, twenty-five, thirty. And I'm going to, as a bonus action, enter me rage.
Nice. He's going berserk.
Do you need me to get my? Uh, wild magic barberry and.
Yeah, send that in the chat.
Send that shit.
That shit's sent.
Alright, there it is, and so. I'm gonna roll that D eight. Uh, a seven, so that means flowers and vines, oh yeah, this one.
Uh, a seven, so that means flowers and vines, oh yeah, this one. Alright, and I get that fifteen foot square of difficult terrain for, for enemies.
Okay, not for allies.
Is it where you stand or just where you're standing right now?
I think it's where I'm standing right now.
But can some, can someone on the biggest square?
Uh, what's the radius?
Fifteen.
Uh, sure. Fifteen, here, there, there, and there.
Should be like, that?
Why are that?
I guess.
Yeah, I think so.
I call, we'll call that difficult terrain, it's just for enemies, right?
Okay.
Yes, it is just for enemies.
Alright, cool.
Alright, so as my main action, I am going to slap this man with my warhammer.
Oh, roll that.
For my first attack, uh, seventeen, does that hit?
Uh, misses.
Alright, I go in again for my second attack, which also misses, and with that, I'm gonna end my turn.
Okay. Um, Gonka, you're up, an enemy is on deck.
Five, ten, fifteen, twenty, twenty-five.
Because I don't, I don't, I don't have chicken breasts.
I got an eighteen and I'm like four, five, twelve.
I wanna smack this guy too.
Okay, cool, roll that.
That's, first roll to hit is, uh, eleven, yikes.
Misses.
Second roll to hit is a twenty-seven.
Hit.
I miss Dark Knight rolling only that twenties for combat.
Dude, I miss Dular rolls, I need some Dular rolls, really fucked.
Dular, there's a like a streak where they just rolled-
Dular could not roll under like twenty-four.
It was literally-
Luke, Lu- Luke gave Lexi an ability that, uh, would unlock, would unlock like a more powerful attack if they got over a twenty-five to hit, and Lexi was rolling so good.
Out of maybe six or seven attacks, they rolled below a twenty-five once.
Yeah.
And this was, that was a typical proficiency with a, like a, like a, like honestly, like, they would have, to get a, get a twenty-five or above, they would have needed a sixteen or seventeen every single roll.
Insane.
But it was, yeah.
Twelve to hit, uh, twelve damage.
Joe. Oh, don't make me do math. Alright, cool. Is that it for you?
Uh, yes.
Well, you watch as a drac-, uh, the drakalich. Uh, breathes and, uh, is gonna begin making its way.
Are these like stairs and walls and different elevations and stuff accurate, or is it just one big?
Uh, no, there's different elevations, yeah. Um-
I think there's an area underneath the stairs.
Yeah.
Um-
Is there like an area underneath here?
Uh, yeah, I think there's a full area.
The drakalich is gonna begin make its way forward, but I would like everyone to make me a wisdom saving throw.
Oh god.
No. Oh wait, what do we do if we're close to, no, Gonka's only close to Karuk.
Oh shit, my saving, that's a good modifier.
Wait, a saving throw?
That is-
Uh, twenty-three.
Eight.
So what's the bonus I get for my saving throw?
Plus one, I think.
Just getting another one, yeah.
Yeah, you just won more.
Uh, nat twenty.
Nice.
Nat twenty.
Damn. I got an eleven, yikes.
I got an eight.
Uh, I got a mod twenty.
Anya?
Yes.
Wisdom saving throw.
Wisdom saving throw.
Got it.
I can tell when Alyssa is responding yes, and that she didn't know what we were talking to do.
Nine.
Nine.
Everyone except for Karuk, Makosta, and Loba is now afraid of this creature.
Uh huh, boy.
You're under the frightened condition.
No, it's me.
Um, you cannot direct, I think, right now you cannot directly attack it, and whenever it comes near you, your first inclination is to run away.
Okay. Got it.
Um, awesome. Uh, as it's, yeah, it's gonna make its move forward.
Tempted to just cast this right now.
Oh dear.
Oh shit, oh shit, oh shit, oh shit.
Maybe I'll do it.
That's as far as it can get. Um, alright, let's get ready to turn. Uh, Alyssa, would you roll for initiative? Oh yeah, you have a nineteen. So Anya, you're up.
I'm gonna try and shoot at him. With my bow, not my, uh-
This song makes me want to take a selfie during a divorce.
God damn it. God fucking damn it. Honestly, honestly-
A twenty-eight.
Honestly, if what he does in the show doesn't make him wanna do that-
Uh, the blue guy, blue colored guy.
Yeah, that hurts. At least a twenty, a twenty what?
A twenty-eight.
Yeah, that hurts.
And then he takes five damage.
And is this, yeah, this is a bow attack, or is this, um?
This is a bow attack.
Awesome.
And I'm gonna do it again. Uh, nat twenty.
Oh shit.
Fuck yeah, baby.
Oh shit, who's green, who's green? Oh, thank god.
That's me.
Uh, he takes nine damage.
Total?
How does something doubled equal nine?
Uh, it's one D eight plus four, so it's two D eight plus four.
No, we double, we double.
That would do crits. You roll one D eight and then just double it.
We do double damage for crits.
Never gotten a crit before. No, I actually believe that she's never gotten a crit. No, Alyssa will roll nat twenties, but I don't think I've ever seen her roll one to attack. It's always like ten.
If that's true, holy shit, you've gone a full year without playing D and D and not doubling the critical. That's insane to me.
Oh, I mean-
So-
Oh my goodness.
Just roll your-
So I roll one D eight and then I double that?
Take your original D eight and your mod and then double the thing total.
Got it.
Double the damage be then?
Uh, eighteen.
See, yeah.
You rolled a nine, you rolled nine damage on a D eight?
Yeah.
Eight, it's plus, or-
Eight plus mod, yeah, mod, mod plus whatever they rolled on the D eight.
She really said max damage.
No, it was five plus four.
Hmm.
Max damage was twelve.
Uh, cool, yeah. As you, uh, strike this guy.
Which guy did she attack?
Blue.
A blue.
Blue boy.
Ice, we gotta ice this broad. She's too strong. Um, as, uh, Loba, you're up, the mafia's on deck.
Alright, I'm gonna, hold on, I need to make, I, let me see what I can-
Yeah, I'm glad what I did, I fixed a lot of my numbers.
I can't cast a spell as a bonus action and as a regular action.
You can do, you can stack a cantrip, uh, spell slot.
Okay, but yeah, that's what I thought. Okay, so I'm going to walk five, ten, okay, wait, hold on, fifteen, twenty, and I'm going to cast Beacon of Hope. Uh, now what this does is, I can choose any number of creatures in range, so I'm just gonna pick everybody, all the whole party. Uh, for the duration, each target has advantage on wisdom saving throws and-
Oh shit.
And death, oh, I forgot about Beacon of Hope on the death saving throws.
Now, this only lasts for, and they regain the maximum number of hit points possible from any healing.
Oh, that's a, what level spell is that?
Uh, that is a third level spell, and I'm cast, it only lasts for a minute, but that's just-
That's ten rounds, that's ten rounds.
Only you has to take a damage.
Is it concentration?
Well, it means any healing for the duration, huh?
Yeah, it just lasts.
Oh, so just for the rest of, every healing will be maxing.
Is it concentration?
It is concentration.
Okay, okay, that's balanced, that's balanced, that's balanced.
Cool.
Yeah.
But I can cast like a healing spell. A lot of my healing spells aren't concentrated, so I can still cast-
Yeah, no, not many cleric spells are concentration.
Awesome. And, and this is assuming that literally this creature has anything that requires us to make a wisdom save.
Which it already did.
Well, they just made us make a wisdom save, that's why-
That's, that's just, that, that was just, that was just for its presence, though. Um, alright, cool.
Now maybe people will be less scared of it. Um, not really, I just wanna stand a bit like, hey everybody, we got this!
Um, you all feel weirdly inspired by Loba? Um, maybe this-
We all get DM inspiration?
We get Loba inspiration, it's a D one.
And looks at you Anya and says, my greatest enemy, I will lay down a suppressive fire!
Oh dear.
Twenty-nine to hit you.
Holy shit.
Uh, yeah, that hits.
Nineteen plus ten, holy shit.
Uh, eight damage to you as he goes in for his next attack. Lay down a suppressive fire! Twenty-eight to hit.
Oh my god.
Jackpuck, Jack-
Jack rolls, Jack rolls, Jack rolls.
Fight, as, um, Makosta, this guy runs, this pink runs up and says, lay down a suppressive fire!
Fuck, oh no, wait, that hits.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's, it's pretty much nearly a guarantee.
Six damage, what's the second one?
Luckily he's rolling bad on damage.
Uh, twenty-
It doesn't matter, you're still doing damage.
Yeah, I think Makosta might be going down.
I don't know, I'm at full HP at least, but okay, there, there it is. That's nineteen damage total in one round.
I said he was doing bad damage, and I could tell, but-
Yeah, you, you shush.
It's max healing, just make sure you stay in the beacon of hope.
Lay down a suppressive fire!
No, they're not a ranged thing.
He's gonna attempt to, uh, attack Karuk. I'm fifteen hit Karuk, I'll try to save Missy's. Goes in for another attack, a twenty-eight to hit.
That misses.
Oh my-
Uh, we have that to two or three, I forgot.
Round down.
Uh, that would be have to, oh yeah, I can go down, so I'd be two. Um, as, uh, this guy is gonna come up and also go for Karuk. Missing.
That misses, yeah.
Missing with a nat one as he, um, he is, he's gonna shoot his own friend.
These ones are rolling bad, they're-
He's gonna shoot his own friend.
He's rolling bad against the barbarian, but against the wizard, he's like, hmm, hmm, hmm.
Thirteen damage to orange.
Uh, good damage, at least.
Go.
He's carrying.
He's do, he's carrying.
He hit orange more than I could.
Yeah.
Uh, green already went, alright, red, red's the last one to go. Twenty, is he gonna go for Gonka? Suppressive fire! Seventeen to hit?
No.
Damn, goes in for his next attack. Seventeen to hit, misses.
No.
Attacks miss. Uh, cool, and now the mafioso in front of him is gonna go for you Karuk with his sword.
How does Lexi always have a high armor cloak?
Uh, the seventeen to hit Karuk.
That misses.
Goes in for his next attack.
I was about to be like four seventies in a row, it'd be kinda funny.
Yeah, I'm like, yeah, that'd be great, actually.
Uh, fourteen damage to you, half to seven.
Who's attack was that, the big guy?
That was, uh, the mafioso.
Ow, oh dear.
That's enough close attacks, you just, as long as you keep your distance.
I see.
Um. And then that was, Makosta, I'm keeping, yeah, cool. Okay, cool. Um, that's it for the mafiosos. Uh, Anisha, you're up, Makosta, you're on deck.
Uh, not on deck.
I need to close my door, I'll be right there.
Makosta is not on deck.
No, I'm not. God damn it.
Alright, I'm back, uh, but-
That high turn is still nuts.
Okay, I have a question.
On like face cam, I'm, I'll still be on Zoom.
What's called terrain stack?
I don't think so.
I- Okay. Hmm. Nah, fuck it, I'll take the chance to do this, why not? Uh, so I am going to cast, uh, Spike Growth originated here, meaning that the square goes to the end of the stairs and to where Karuk and Gonka, Gonka are. Uh, so this-
Do you want the spikes to go all the way up there?
Yes, because there's twen-, I mean, it's twenty, twenty and twenty, but since I don't think I can get the spikes to go down to the bottom floor immediately, that wouldn't be sucked, so I think it's the edge of the stairs and then to where the edge of Karuk.
There you go, that's the new, that's the new difficult turn as well.
Alright, well, this is Spike Growth.
And blue, and the blue one will bleed every-
Yes, okay, so, uh, yeah, so I'm-
So anyone who steps in blue has to make, uh, is on a difficult turn, and also will take damage.
Uh, yeah, so, yeah, I, I realize I've been doing, uh, Spike Growth wrong, so it's actually a lot stronger than it, it thought it was.
Oh my god.
Um, so apparently it adds different, uh, it adds difficult terrain. Anyone, uh, uh, does it, and it still does damage for every five feet, so every step they now take does forty-four.
Yeah.
Um, but also, uh, I'm doing the perception wrong, so pretty much everyone on the stairs sees it. They know it's-
Wait, no, when does school start? I thought it's, it's the first or it's the eleventh?
Uh, but everyone who cannot really see the stairs, they have to check when they reach it.
Anything else you'd like to do?
That is kinda all I can do.
Cool. Karuk, you're up, Gonka, you're on deck.
Poggers.
I'm gonna keep it pretty, so, for this turn, I, uh-
You are, you're-
I am going to hit-
Karuk and Gonka are in the-
Yeah, they are. They can move out, but-
I'm, I'm gonna hit, I'm gonna hit Mabuki and Orange with an unarmed strike.
Cool. Little hit.
You know what I'm gonna do? I'm gonna make this a reckless attack.
Who?
Attack with the pantas, but he'll have the pantas next time he attacks you.
Uh, that is a twenty-one.
That hits.
All right, so for-
So nat one to hit, twelve, that's solid.
Alright, that is gonna be ten damage for that attack.
Okay.
For my second punch, it's going to be a twenty-eight.
That hits.
For another ten damage.
Oh my god, Karuk's just playing into it.
And as a bonus action, I'm going to grapple him.
Ooh, cool. Uh, Romeo, uh, I think it's athletics, it's, your strength versus his athletics.
Okay. Uh, dirty twenty.
Hey, see if our boy can get out.
Oh, ooh, uh, also I'm back.
So you can grapple as a bonus action?
Um, as a, since I took the tavern brawler feat, if you use your attack action to do unarmed strikes, you can grapple as a bonus action.
That's awesome, cool. Um, cool.
Uh, I'm back in case anyone shot me.
No shot you.
Perfect, pog.
Gonka, you're up, uh, the drakalich is on deck.
Alright, so, with the hard terrain, this one only affects, wait, wait, okay, so the blue one-
Blue affects everyone, black of-
Everyone.
Is blue plant growth, spike growth?
You are, you are, you are in it, though.
Five, ten, wait, and this, these two black ones are part of each other, right?
Yeah.
Those black ones are Karuk's, so they're friendly, the blue one is a spike growth, I'm assuming.
Yeah, okay.
Alright, so how much damage does Gonka take by example?
So, you, how much, you moved five feet out.
It's only five feet out.
Oh, I didn't see that second.
Yeah.
Sorry, we just added it. We've just added it, so if, if you, if you like to change-
It's this edge and the end of the stairs as well.
So these guys are in it too?
Can I move through Karuk?
Basically, we drew a perfect fif-
You can move through Karuk, but you're gonna take even more damage if you do that.
Oh, okay, so it, it's per like five feet?
It's, it's per five feet and it's doubled to the difficult terrain.
So are these guys in it too?
No, they are?
Yeah, okay, y'all, whoever drew this, literally just drew a perfect, yeah, uh, it's a twenty foot, so you, you drew a, you drew a perfect fifteen foot one, but this time it's a twenty foot one.
Okay, I'll go here.
Okay, so I, since that's, that uses-
Oh wait, they should give that too.
Yeah.
I'm gonna, uh, yeah, I mean, should I do this box of doom or no? I don't really care.
It's just two D four, I don't think, it's two D four, right? It's spike growth.
No, because it's for every five feet, it's forty-four now.
Oh, whoa, you've upscaled it, you ups, wait, what?
It's because it's in, in, in difficult terrain.
Oh, holy shit.
Just do the roll, do the roll.
Just roll.
Fuck, I am-
That's a first level acid arrow at every single one.
Wait, does Karuk's difficult terrain like stack on top of?
No.
It stacks because of movement.
It's not difficult terrain for Gonka, though.
Holy shit, that's-
Wait, no, it's not, wait, no, 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 will, will, hold.
It's not difficult terrain for Gonka, though.
Yeah, but mine is still difficult terrain.
Yeah, that's-
Yeah, that's two D four.
That's just one movement out of it.
No, it's still difficult terrain, so it takes ten to move out, no? Am I wrong about that?
To go to a destination, I thought it would be the movement.
It doesn't, it's not that like you're moving more on difficult terrain, it's just that your movement is-
You can only move half as much, yeah.
That'd be really buffed.
So it's two, yeah, so it'd be just, it would just be two.
Yeah, you didn't, the spike didn't go up and then they walked like over it.
I'll do the first two that I rolled, so it says six.
Oh, holy Christ, such a clever.
I'm so sorry. Yeah, no, I was confused.
Otherwise spike growth would be the most fucking overpowered shit on earth, holy god.
Yeah, that would be, alright, yeah, if it's happening.
And then I can move freely in the black one, yeah, because that's twenty-four.
Yes, yes, you can.
So-
And then I'm gonna hit him with my, uh, great axe.
Cool, roll that hit.
Can you, oh, right, because you can-
Yeah, the rain.
Now is not the time to give a nat one?
Twenty-four.
That's not a nat one.
That is shit damage, eight damage.
Also, keep in mind to roll at advantage, because I have him grappled.
Oh, roll at advantage, let's, let's see if you can confirm a crit.
Alright.
Just roll a D twenty, I'll see if you can-
No, no crit. Alright, and then, next, next hit is gonna be a, gimme a better roll, nat twenty?
Are you serious?
That's a critical.
Alright.
Okay, being able to attack from ten feet away is such a good ability. What, what, what do you get that from?
Bugbear.
A bugbear.
Oh.
Racial trade.
Uh, so how do we do crits again? Because D twenty rolls it for-
You, yeah, it's, it's stupid, just roll the same damage you do and then double it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, that's, so it'd be, it's an eight, I rolled.
So it's a sixteen.
Plus your modifier doubled.
Plus five is thirteen, so thirteen plus thirteen is twenty-eight.
Twenty-six damage, oh yeah, twenty-six damage.
We, we've been doing this for a full year.
Yeah, but, but-
It's D and D beyond.
Okay, D beyond.
It sucks me up, because it like rolls automatically a crit for you and it rolls differently and it confuses you.
Okay, sorry.
I've never used D and D beyond to roll until today.
Alright, cool, this guy's looking fucked up, one good hit should do him in. Um, it's now the Dracalich's turn, if he's just. Uh, he kind of looks at this spike a- ahead of him and is just like, rrrr, and just kind of starts flying instead.
Oh, my god, that sucks.
Um.
Oh, I like that.
As he's gonna, ah, take a claw attack at Karuk.
That would actually, that would make sense to scare me more.
Keep in mind he's doing this at advantage. You are correct.
Uh.
Nat twenty inbound.
Uh, alright, let's see, he's actually going to, no. Yeah, no, uh, cool, alright. Uh, fourteen to hit. Assume that misses, a twenty-six to hit.
Wait.
Oh, he has advantage, so the twenty-six for the first attack.
Yes.
Um, twenty-six hits.
No crit, that's all, he, he's definitely gonna hit me, I mean, probably both times, I just don't.
Twenty-one damage, halved to, oh.
Ah, fuck.
This is physical, right?
Yes.
Okay.
That hits.
First one's a twenty-three, let's see if we crit, no we don't. Um, a no, seventeen damage, halved to eight.
Okay.
Didn't we have a barbarian in front?
Yep, Karuk does his job as a barbarian very well.
Wow.
He really just tanks damage. Um, Anya, you're up, Loba, you're on deck.
Okay. I'm gonna come over here.
You bitch, you blue says, you ignore it, you're my greatest enemy.
Shoot this bastard.
Sure, roll the hit.
Uh, twenty-three to hit.
That hits.
Epic. Eight damage. And I'm gonna roll again. Oh, that's a nat one.
Oh, no.
It's on damage though, so it's.
Oh, okay, oh, yeah, that's a hit.
It's just min damage?
No, that's just a hit.
Oh, now.
That was a one nat one to hit, it reduces nine damage.
How much damage is the first attack to?
Eight.
Okay, uh, yeah, and then for the second attack, you kind of get cocky, pull back and then, uh, mix, just like throw off your arrow.
Did Aneisha ever take a first turn?
I did.
It was the.
It was a spike growth.
Oh, yeah, I was just like, why is she still standing up there? Oh, spike growth.
It is now, uh, alright, Anya's at it for you?
Of course you gave Aneisha spike.
I gave my, yeah, of course, it's such a great ability.
Yeah, that's it.
I just associate that move with danteen.
Yeah.
Loba, oh, Loba, you're up, the mafia's on deck.
Alright, I'm going to summon a spiritual guardian, uh, or.
Oh, reject your guardian to look.
No, he's called guardian of faith, but yes, um, a luma.
Yeah, baby.
Yeah, and he's floating right.
Let me get that luma picture.
He's gonna be right here, so if the boss moves, so if any enemies move within ten feet of him, if they do, they take twenty radiant damage.
Oh my god, yeah, sure.
Well, no, first they have to make a dex save, then if, then they take twenty damage if they fail and ten if they succeed.
And how, how, how much, im- how far from him do they have to be to do this?
Uh, ten feet, it says when they move, uh, it says that moves to a space within ten feet of you.
Okay, cool.
Guys in front of me don't have to roll until they like move.
Not until they move, uh, awesome. Uh.
And then, and then for my next move, I will move down here, next to the squad.
Uh, squad, um.
Really want that plus one to saving.
Mafia, you're up, Aneisha, mafia, like you're in person, mafia's up, Aneisha, you're on deck. Um. Suppression fire, this man says this is gonna take aim at his greatest enemy, Anya.
Can that guy shoot from up around?
Whoa, yeah, that seems a little far.
That's, no, oh, yeah, you're right, fine, fine, he, he, he moves back to get a better view. You happy now?
I'm just, I'm just wondering how tall that is.
Yeah, how tall is that?
Okay.
You, I mean, you, yeah, you guys could hit him.
Yeah.
Okay.
Works two ways, baby.
Mm-hmm.
Oh, wait, I'm stupid, alright, wait, alright, first one was a seventeen.
Yeah, that hits.
And the second one's a twenty-two.
Yeah, that also hits.
Cool. Alright.
Roll, roll, roll the damage.
Ten, oh.
Anya and Makosta are.
Nineteen damage in total to you.
Okay.
Um, lo-, uh, oh wait, that's, I'm an idiot, okay, now red's gonna go.
I tried to buff her as hard as I could, but my dex was just not enough.
My AirPods are dead, yes, oh.
AirPod dead.
We're just going with normal audio now.
Alright, uh, he has to make a perception check to see if he sees the spike, cuz he was not here when I cast it.
I don't think Jack can hear yet.
Yeah, I just have.
Oh.
Audio now.
Can you hear, can, did you hear what Will said?
Did you hear what Will said?
So what'd he say?
Uh.
The, the goon coming up the stairs has to make a perception check on the spike.
Yeah, oh, must make a wisdom perception check, yeah.
Alright.
Spell save. Turned the past.
Uh, sixteen.
Yeah, that makes it, he knows it's a.
Uh, he, he looks at it, it's like, nope, not doing that shit, this is just gonna take aim at Kud- uh, Kudik.
I will say he did move into it.
Oh, yeah, wait.
He, he is there.
Oh, he's in it already, because.
It is still an advantage, so confirm a crit.
It's like you wouldn't have done in the first.
Yeah, no, I'm sorry, I, I had to say that first.
Confirm a crit cuz it's.
Oh, oh, I just didn't draw it properly.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
You drew a perfect fifteen by fifteen box with the spell was a twenty by twenty.
What are you, are we gonna, what are you, how are you j- oh, like, I what?
What, Luke, what do you say?
Luke, are you good?
Luke, are you okay?
Stroke?
Have you, COVID gives you brain fog.
Confirm a crit real quick, cuz he is still at advantage.
My goodness, everyone's, yeah, no, that's.
Wait, is everyone around Karuk just in advantage? What is the?
Yeah, because he reckless. I reckless attack.
Okay, I see.
I probably shouldn't have done that in hindsight, since there are like five guys.
So I would have advantage too.
If you attack.
If you attack Karuk.
Oh, if you attack Karuk, oh, okay.
Yeah, cuz I, I reckless attacked.
Nat twenty for the second attack.
Oh, there it is.
Confirm a crit.
Okay, confirmed the kick.
Regular damage, cuz you're in range, no?
That still do D, do two D ta- de- plus seven.
Uh, twenty-two damage.
That's a lot, no, eleven damage.
Half to eleven.
Hogs.
Only eleven damage, guys, oh no.
Uh, this kind of, these two are gonna move out, but both will take a D, uh, two D four damage.
Yeah, they will. Uh. Hold on, yeah, I'll do that. Uh, I'll do them, yeah, I'll do them all at the same time, why not? Uh, so first one takes four, the other takes five. Might actually wanna take it off now.
Um. And then, yeah, uh, this, they're gonna keep going. And they're just, this one's gonna take.
Ah, shit, I literally just made a tall target on you, didn't I?
Oh, god.
Thanks, asshole.
Uh, this, this was actually an open mic.
Okay. That hits.
Anybody else hearing Jack a lot now that he does?
I think that's just audio.
Turn myself up.
This is his laptop mic now, instead of his AirPods.
Uh, tw- yeah, twenty-nine hits.
Um, this should be a lot better.
That's much better.
Yeah, that works a lot.
Um, alright, do you, alright, cool, um.
Okay, four damage, four damage.
Twenty-one to hit.
That hits.
Uh, ten damage.
Fourteen total.
Purple's gonna come up.
God, they're all going up there, oh god.
Is that to hit me too?
Uh, eight damage.
Eight damage, that's fun.
Does that hit?
Wait, who is this hitting? Me or, is this hitting me or, sorry?
He's a warlock, so problem.
Makosta.
Yeah, sixteen hits exactly.
Makosta, I'm saying it's, it hits Makosta.
Are these both to Makosta?
Yes.
Okay, both hit. Uh, nineteen damage, okay.
Finally now, pink is gonna go wrong.
Ah.
Twenty-three.
Yeah, that hits.
Actually, wait, no, nah, not, not yet.
Nat twenty for the second attack.
Oh, fuck me.
Okay.
This is why when Will cast that spell, I was like, okay, buddy.
Yeah, no, I was hoping they would go through the stairs.
Then damage?
Uh, twenty, actually, cuz.
I was honestly.
Oh, fun, Jesus Christ, oh, fuck me.
Remember if you're low, turn your thing on red.
When you're friend Aneisha.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm in trouble, guys.
Every single one of the, the minions' attacks have hit me and Anya, not a single one has missed.
No one has shot me at all, and I feel real.
Everyone's taken a decent amount of damage, except like maybe Aneisha.
Aneisha.
Yeah.
Not been hit, I don't know why I haven't targeted. Everyone else.
Gonka's been attacked, she's just dodged everything.
Like, Anya and Makosta, Black Aneisha, think maybe cuz.
Oh, Loba hasn't been attacked.
No, yeah.
Anya.
How did, yeah, I'm confused with a blue one shot Anya, not me, cuz I was obviously closer.
Is, look, they, they don't really have you in se- and, you're not really in their field of view as much.
Okay, that's fair.
You also look like a tiny girl, if you start attacking, it will be scat.
Oh, that's fair, alright.
Cool, Aneisha, you're up, Makosta, you're on deck.
Uh.
Finally, okay.
Alright, well, how did, where am I not clicked in? Oh, I'm not on my pointer, alright, well, go. Uh, five and I will heal, uh, I have done this to her, I feel so bad, but I will cast Kiruan's.
Isn't that, isn't that maxed, auto maxed, because of Beacon Hope, or is that only for, is that only if, okay?
Uh. Wait, so is it maxed? Cuz it, I thought it was any healing, yeah?
It is maxed.
Okay, so, uh, Anya's back at max health then.
No, 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 max healing.
The max the healing can do.
Oh, max healing, uh, eight times three.
Twenty-four.
Twenty-four.
Yeah.
Twenty-four health back on.
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five.
Oh, twenty-five, okay.
Yeah, you got.
Okay.
So maxed, so, okay, makes sense, alright, and. Uh, I can choose to dispel Spike Growth at any time, yeah, I would hope so. It doesn't say I can. I mean, I'd imagine I'd be able to dispel a concentration spell.
Yeah, you can just stop concentrating on this.
Yeah, yeah, I'll, I'll just do that, and then I'm gonna use my bonus action to summon a raccoon.
Yes. Hello, miss, I am here to wreck shop.
We could use it.
And, am I lagging here? Oh, there he is. Uh, I love these little drawings you did, Lexi.
Yeah.
Makosta, you're up, Karuk, you're on deck.
Alrighty, finally, Makosta's kind of like, just, wait, am I up or is?
No, you're up.
Yeah, okay.
I just, I just wanna throw it in there that this, there is still a black square of difficult terrain around me, that didn't go away.
That's just for enemies.
Yes.
Yeah, you deleted it from the map.
I'm an idiot.
Yeah.
No, you're not, Jack, it's fine.
Fifteen. Pretty much. Ah.
Oh no, the pink guy moved over there.
Pink guy! Pink guy!
Alright, cool.
Alright, it's on the table.
Alright, um. Alright, um, Makosta now fueled by like, sort of like, I don't know, just. A couple of fuckups and probably a really awful night is really ready just to lay waste. So they're going to, first off, cast a warp on themselves as a bonus action. Uh, just in case, trying to look into, see if anyone attacks them in the next turn, and then. Is going to cast Chromatic Orb at first level on the pink guy, acid damage, so. Come on, twenty-one to hit. That hits, okay. Alright, fifteen damage, and he's gonna take seven of it on the end of his turn, because it's acid damage. And then I'm gonna go five, ten, and just right there. And just a reminder, just to remind me on how warping works, I used a warp. If anyone around me gets attacked within like five feet, can I burn that same warp point, or is that only burned if I use it?
That's why, oh, I'm an idiot.
What?
Hello, can anyone hear me?
Yeah.
I can hear you.
Sorry. Alright, can, do you mind reminding me, please?
Um, you warp on yourself, that's for yourself, if someone else gets attacked, you can say, I burn a warp point, and then you burn one in your pool.
Alright, so I still could have one activated on me and then burn a different one.
Yes.
Alright, gotcha, sorry. You're good, like, three people talked over you when you gave your original answer and you were cutting out for me.
Well, yeah, that was awkward.
And then I have.
I never have the people talking over other people, but you, I don't, I feel like maybe headphones or.
I don't, I don't know, it doesn't happen often, but yeah, uh, end of my turn.
Cool. Um. Uh, Karuk, you're up, Gonka, you're on deck.
Alright, so what is the DM ruling on what my app options are when I'm grappling someone?
Uh, you have to, I'm gonna say, well, yeah, I'd say it's your, it's your turn to, he's gonna try to break out of again, and you, you can maintain your turn to keep him grappled. Or you can, um, uh, forget.
Okay, so it's an action to maintain it.
Said, Karuk, I made a fucking mistake.
Oh?
This me- the orange attacked you last time, you should not have been able to do that.
Huh?
I'm pretty sure last round, orange attacked you.
Uh.
You should not have been able to.
I don't think so.
Really?
I thought he did, I, somebody, somebody attacked Karuk during that.
I, I was attacked by the orange guy once, but that was before I.
No, I remember, I remember it was last turn, because I was like, wait, did either of them move? Because I wanted to hit them with my spiritual guardian, so I know somebody attacked Karuk from right here.
No, I was attacked, I was attacked a few times, but not by the orange guy.
Turns out, oh my god, anyway.
I don't think.
Okay, cool.
Uh, anyway, yeah, so he's gonna roll another athletics, uh, check, to try to break out. Um.
Does it just keep my initial mod twenty, or do I need to roll it again?
Uh, roll it again.
Okay.
Uh, unless you wanna let him go, uh, you would be foregoing a turn, cuz you can't really attack while you're holding someone.
Okay, okay, I just wanted to ask, cuz I've seen different DM rulings on that.
Yeah, it's a.
I am. Uh, it ain't that deep, I'm gonna let him go.
Okay, cool.
So, did it cost me anything to?
Action, you just stopped.
Do I still have my one action, one bonus action? Okay. Um, in that case, I am going to. Um. This turn, I think I am just going to keep doing what I'm doing, I'm just going to attack him again. With my warhammer, this time just a normal attack, not reckless.
Alright, roll the hit.
Alright, uh, twenty-one.
Twenty-one, twenty-one.[1546.91]
That hits?
More than nine plus a ten there.
Okay. That is going to be nine damage. Uh, for my second attack. Twenty-four.
That hits?
That is going to be eleven damage.
You wanna kill him?
Uh, no, not really.
How do you take him out?
Um, I just smack that Warhammer on the side of his head, sending him flying down the stairs.
Oh.
At a tongue style, baby!
Oh my goodness.
Cinematic, why not? Crank! Just send him flying back.
Cool.
Uh, is that it for you, Karuk?
Um, sure, I'll end my turn there.
Um. Gonka, you're up, the Dracalicious is on deck.
So, I'm frightened of big scary thing, how long does that affect stage, is like?
Uh, it lasts a minute.
That's a long time.
And can I attack it during, or?
Uh, right now you're scared of it. Unless you want it, um, um, yeah, no, not, not at your current level.
Alright.
So basically. Oh dear.
Basically, when my Beacon of Hope has, that's what the.
Yeah.
Can you, can you not?
There is a way to save again, but you have to figure it out yourself.
I mean, to be completely honest, like, your Beacon of Hope should stay up long enough for it to be.
Yeah, because I used it just after, though.
Yeah. For all of us to be fun.
Five, ten.
Not to mention, it's helping me heal on you, so.
Five, ten.
Yeah, that's the biggest thing is the heal. I didn't even notice that, I'm like, oh, wait, and then I.
Can I jump over here? Jump down?
No, you can't.
What?
Yes, that is the thing you can do.
Alright, do you have to make a save for that, or?
No, no, it's, it's so low that you can, you, you'll be.
Alright.
Oh wow, see.
Fifteen, hello! Smash yellow!
Roll the hit yellow.
Smash, please!
Uh, yellow is. Wait, I can't, I can't see what I rolled, oof, eleven.
Misses.
Yeah, that makes sense. Uh, and the other hit is a twenty-six.
Uh, that hits.
Uh, damage is. Okay, eleven damage.
Cool.
That is my turn.
Awesome. Um, it's now the Dracalicious' turn. He's just gonna keep going through.
Are you hearing it, Will?
Yeah, I am hearing it.
Double music, yeah.
Yeah, no, it's Jack, I checked.
I'm sorry.
It's okay.
Fine, it's nothing bad.
Wait, Jack, didn't you get like a nice fancy mic for Christmas or something?
Uh, it, I need a, an audio, because it's not like a USB mic, it's like a professional one.
So you have to like.
Oh geez, that's a lot, yeah, you have to get a full setup then.
Well, if I wanna record good sounds, I do have.
That's just a lot of, that's just a lot of work. Audio's a lot of work.
I know, like, I, I can't actually use my mic on. The computer I bought yet, because I need to get a, a, a jack splitter that will, because.
Is it fourteen?
Yeah.
Yeah, I get that, Coleman.
I nimbly dodge it.
There's a, there's a headphone jack and a mic jack, and they're two separate jacks, and unless I.
That one definitely hits me.
Plug into both, it doesn't.
Pog.
I just haven't bought that yet, so.
Uh, he does.
Oh my god!
Oh no.
Oh no!
Oh no! That is max.
Is it halved at least?
Fourteen, that's a fourteen damage, no, thirteen, thirteen damage.
Uh, this man ain't playing.
Yeah.
Um, cool, that's it for him. Insane, though. Um, Anya, you're up, uh, Lava, you're on deck.
Okay. I'm gonna. Go. Yeah, okay. And then, where is that? Uh, there's a spell I wanna use.
What kind of spell?
Oh, you're gonna use it?
Trying to find it, hold on.
Yeah, I'm trying to find it, sorry.
Nah, it's a lot, it's, it's magic caster, I understand.
I wanted to cast Shatter.
Ooh, Shatter's fun.
And I can choose where it goes, right?
Yeah.
Yeah?
Cool. Sicarino.
I don't think Alyssa's ever had Shatter before.
No.
Where are you dropping it?
I'm gonna drop it right here.
Interesting.
Uh.
What's the range of that again?
Sure, uh, what's the save on it?
Uh, the save is a const, uh, con twelve, and it's a range area of sixty feet.
Oh, sixty feet, yeah, that's.
Sixty feet?
Yeah.
No, that's the, that's the range of like, how close you have to be to cast it, there's no way.
Yeah.
Oh, is that what it is?
It's a really.
It says sixty slash ten, I don't understand.
That's, that's the range of where you can cast it.
Yeah, that means that, like, it has to be within sixty feet of you, and it's ten feet. In, um, radius, I think.
Okay.
Yeah, a creature in ten foot radius.
Got it, got it.
Yeah.
Sixty, I don't know.
So, hold on, yeah.
Yeah.
Be all of us, fuck that.
We don't need to, yeah, that's it.
That's our power.
You can get, you can, you can get this guy, I think, um, or you could.
Looks like it.
Where are you dropping?
Where are we dropping, boys?
Is he on the ground right now?
What? Oh yeah, no, the, the dragon's in the air, so.
I'll drop it in between them, so right here, so I can get this guy and this guy.
Alright, the dragon caused the save, but barely. That's what I wrote, and you got, he had a plus six, I was like, you're not winning, and then he barely. Um, now it's. I don't know, I'll find that. Yeah, not that much. Uh, fails. So, dragon takes half damage, guy takes four.
Okay, they're gonna, let's see, this is forty-eight.
Forty-eight, nice.
Uh, twenty-seven damage. And then.
Half to thirteen, we just went over this, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Uh. Yep, just doing some math real, real quick. Alright. That, no one's attacked the dragon yet, which I think is funny.
I can't.
We can't.
I can't.
Wait, you were attacking the dragon, no.
Who, who, who is scared of the dragon? Me, Karuk, and?
Me, Makosta, Makosta is.
Focusing down the goon the whole time, and now he's dead, so I'll be hitting the dragon.
Cool. Um, awesome, is that it, you, was that all you wanted to do, Anya?
Uh, yeah.
Alright. Cool, good turn, um, Lava, you're up, the Mafia's on deck.
Okay. I don't know if Anya's still red, but it doesn't really matter, I'm gonna use aid. Uh, uh.
Nice.
On three people, I'm gonna use it on Karuk, I'm gonna use it on Anya, and I'm gonna use it on Makosta.
Nice.
Uh, and they all heal ten health.
Oh, fog.
Oh wait, yeah, no.
So that's.
That max?
Yeah, it's, it's just a default ten health, there's no rolling for it.
Uh, interesting. Oh yeah, no, you're right, it is.
Oh yeah, okay. Any other benefits or anything?
Uh. Well, each, each target hit point maximum. Increases, so if you, if, if any of the people I just healed are at max health, or.
Oh, so we get ten, we get ten overall new hit points, oh, that's actually pog.
Wait, so I add ten hit points?
No, you don't add ten hit points, you just get ten health, and if that puts you over full health.
Oh, okay.
Oh, okay, got it.
Sorry, the wording fucked me up there.
So like, so like, I, but I'm assuming none of, I don't, I don't think any of the three people I just healed are close enough to help to do that.
No, nowhere, nowhere.
All you gotta do is that. What else would you like to do, Lava?
Um, well. All I really can do. Because I have fairly any cantrips and eight hundred spells, so I can't really do like, multiple things at the same time. So, that's the end of my turn.
Cool. Um. Mafia's up, Anisha's on deck, uh, they're all gonna take aim at you. Uh, Makosta, but you're worked, so.
All of them? That hits.
No, 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 sorry, sorry, pink will be aiming at you.
Okay, you said all, and I was so scared for a second there.
No, I'm like right next to them, stupid of them.
Going for Makosta, purple's going for, and then purple.
You gonna close my door?
And then Nisha, yellow's going for.
Alright, so first one would hit.
Getting pizza tonight, guys.
Nice.
Um.
First one would hit, what about the, the disadvantage roll?
Uh, well, yeah, it's disadvantage.
That also would hit.
Hmm.
Um, awesome, eight damage to you, he goes in first next to you, still disadvantage.
Nice, okay, come on, come on. Yeah, both would still hit.
Fuck.
Not, it's, my AC isn't even that like, bad, it's just, you're rolling really well.
Well, plus tens is like.
How come no one Jack does to us?
Yeah. So that's gonna be another sixteen damage, okay.
Alright, sorry, did anything happen to me, I was turning on the light in my room?
This one for you, Anisha, uh, hits. Four damage.
Okay.
Uh, second attack is a fourteen, does that miss?
I miss.
Now it's yellow, yellow's going for you, Anya. Uh, I mean.
I was gonna say.
Gonka.
Ooh, that hit, is it twenty-three?
Yeah, eighteen.
Yays.
Uh, next attack, eighteen to hit.
Eighteen don't hit.
Cool, misses, so he swings his first attack hitting you for.
Only plus eight if it's a.
For another one, missing.
We have eight, okay.
Eight damage for his next, yep. Um, awesome, uh, poor green, he's just gonna, he's gonna run up running.
Alright.
Oh yeah, green's just been down there the entire time.
Yeah.
Red's gonna lay down a sup, a suppressive fire on Lava.
That is so hard.
That hits.
Yep. Um, ten damage.
Alright.
Listen for his next attack, twenty-eight to hit.
That hits.
For ten damage. And now blue will be going for his eternal enemy, Anya, who he hates very much.
That hits.
Yeah, very much. Uh, four damage to you, Anya.
Alright.
Sixteen to hit.
I'm gonna burn.
He's dog shit.
Yeah.
Uh, four damage again, eight damage in total to you.
It fucking sucks, I tried so hard to see if I could make it any higher, and there was just no way.
AC, yeah.
Yeah, tends to be magic casters AC.
Anisha, you're up.
Thank you.
I don't understand how Lexi has like seventeen, eighteen AC in every, every character they make? Cause I can barely get mine to be higher than like fifteen.
I know, I don't get it.
Shields, shields are very helpful, I, I suggest.
Okay, Lava has a shield and armor, and he's still only fifteen.
Yeah, you have to be proficient, it, it's for, for anything.
Oh no, they work, they work.
Uh, Anisha, you're up, Makosta, you're on deck.
Cool.
Alright, I'm going to use my bonus action to summon another raccoon.
Hell, yes.
I love that no one has questioned this at all.
Honestly, honestly, Makosta would probably just think, ah, maybe they're a druid.
I mean, you're, I mean, you're in like the back, so.
That's fair.
Not even looking at you.
Um, and then I'm going to actually use my action to hit something. Uh. Hmm. Okay. Uh, let's, yeah, let's do this. Fuck me. Uh, four, does a fourteen hit?
Who, and no one?
I, I can only hit the mafia people.
Uh, it does not hit.
Uh. And then I got second attack.
Oh.
Alright, that's better. Twenty-eight, and I, I should iterate, I'm hitting pink.
Also, another note about pink, because it did acid damage to him with a chromatic orb, he takes another half of that on his, on the end of his turn.
Oh.
So that would have been seven damage at the end of his turn.
Fuck, why did I, okay, I got pink damage, it's, uh, five damage to pink.
That was last turn.
Yeah, that was his last turn, I just forgot to mention it, and I didn't know if it counted.
Oh, I'm dumb.
Cool, that's it.
I'll keep that in mind for later.
Um. Uh, an insane turn. Um. Makosta, you're up, Karuk, you're on deck.
Woo, um, so, hmm. Oh god, what was that? Was that my, that wasn't me, that was me, okay, pog, um. Can you move pink over to the right real quick, I wanna see what he's next to? Oh, he's on, is that a torch?
Not.
No.
Is that a torch, the little orange thing right there?
It's, it's a candle.
Okay. Cool. No, I'm asking because I have control flame, and if there is a natural flame in that, it can, can expand out for five feet, which that would hit three of them.
Three of them, nah, it would only hit the pink, purple.
Expand. Five feet?
Oh wait, no.
We changed that rule, we changed that rule.
Yeah, so it's five, it can hit all three of them if he doesn't.
What?
Uh, I didn't think it was in all directions, I thought it was only in one direction.
It might be, it might be in one direction, I thought I would just make it ex, like, kind of like, explode.
Maybe like shoot some fire up his butt if you want.
Uh, I don't, yeah, the thing is, I feel like that would be a save to see if it would do any damage, um. Um. Damn. Nah, that wouldn't work either, um. Fucking me, um. I don't have any other AOE's. Um. I'm going to cast another chromatic orb, this time at purple. Uh, same thing, acid damage. Come on, hit.
Yeah, it'd be nice if.
Twenty-five to hit. That hits, okay, um. Same thing, acid damage, so. Uh, it'll, he'll take four damage at the end of his next turn, and then, uh, I am going to. Run. Five, ten. Fifteen. Uh. And that's gonna be it.
Four damage? At the, at, at.
End of his turn, at the end of his turn.
Four, or just four at his next turn?
Uh, it's how acid damage, it's like, the damage, and then the end of their turn, they take half of that taken damage.
Okay, cool, and just once?
Just once, yeah. Just once, um. And then I'm gonna ready another warp.
Okay, awesome.
Uh, yeah. It's, it's a stupor, stupid OP compared to poison, which every other creature has resistance to.
Um, awesome.
Especially because not a lot of creatures have like, resistance to acid.
You're up, Gonka, you're on deck. Um, at this point. Um, it's been long enough, it's not been a full minute, but it's, it's been at this point where in, anyone who failed their frighten save can remake it.
Alright, we have advantage on it.
We have.
Yeah, you, you have advantage like this time, this is the last time you're gonna get the advantage.
Okay, gotcha. The wisdom save?
Yeah.
Wisdom save.
Already made it, and no one who succeeded doesn't need to make it.
Okay, so.
Oh, cool, twenty-four.
Alright. I'll do. Okay. Alright, well, I got a mod twenty on my first roll, so I'm pretty sure that's fine.
And then Anya?
Let me try, so it's wisdom, right?
Yeah.
You got advantage on it, too.
Sick. First one, twenty-one.
Cool, you succeed. No one's, everyone's no longer scared of the big beast.
Alright, cool.
Um, Gonka, you're up, Gonka, you're on deck. Karuk?
Oh, oh, sorry, I missed her. Um, is the creature still, is he like within melee range, or is he in the air?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, I'm going to move. Uh, five feet down, and I am going to reckless attack him with Warhammer.
Uh, dope, roll the hit.
Uh, that is a mod twenty-five.
Oh, that hits.
Don't tell me what hits.
No, 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 sorry, I just looked at that, and I was like, hmm. That's a large, that's a big number.
Um, that's nine damage on the first one.
Okay.
And for my second attack, does a mod twenty-five again.
Okay.
It's hot.
Alright.
I just looked at my thing going, how long does my Luma stay there? Eight hours.
Nine damage.
Okay, awesome, you're chunking away at this guy.
And I think.
Luma's there for good.
Yeah, I'm just gonna end my turn there.
Awesome. Um. Gonka, you're up, the Dracalicious on.
Oakley, Oakley, uh, I'm gonna smack yellow again.
Roll it in.
Okay. Uh. Wait, I lost my great axe, there it is, alright, first hit is a fourteen, wow.
Yeah.
Second hit is a seventeen.
Damn.
Damn it, alright. Um. Yeah, that's all I can do.
Awesome, it is not awesome, it is now the Dracolich's turn, as, uh. He's gonna make a wing attack, um.
I don't like that.
So, this one will affect. I would like Luba and Karuk to make. Uh, no, no, uh, dexterity saving throw.
Dexterity saving.
Natural one.
Uh, mod twenty-one.
Nice.
Um, Karuk, you succeed, Luba, you fail, um. Each of you take, uh, twelve damage, however, Karuk, you stand still, while Luba, you fall prone.
Oh, no, no, no!
Oh, wait, um, actually, wait, we'll make you take.
Is it half damage, because we made the save, or did that just?
That's six damage to you, and then half.
And then half again to three?
Am I still prone?
Uh, yeah, you're still prone, let's just.
So to clarify, I only take three damage.
Uh, yes.
Okay.
You are in range.
Somebody come help me up! I fell over!
Um, Anya, you're up, Luba, you're on deck.
Okay.
Anya, come help me up!
Uh, okay.
Literally, we know, don't know this man, and he's like, get the fuck over here.
How, how do I help you up?
Now, I will say, before you do this.
Yeah, it's gonna be very hard, uh, once, if Boogie fell, that's gonna make a noise.
I'll try, how do I, how do I try and pick him up, or get him up?
Help action, no?
Roll me a strength deck.
Alright.
Uh-oh.
Uh, that's a three. I'm not strong, Coleman.
Neither am I, despite my size, Boogie is.
Is this your self-insert Boogie two-nine-nine-eight?
Boogin' two-nine-eight-eight, self-insert character, being a god.
Does that take up my whole action?
Yeah.
Cool.
Um.
I was finally ready to attack on my.
Take your movement to get up, uh, Luba?
Oh, right, it just takes my movement?
Oh my god!
Why did I ask her for that, I forgot, I.
God damn it.
Yeah, we are.
Well, I mean, now I can't walk up to the boss, but, you know, I can still use. Can still use sacred flame, which is like, the one good cantrip I have. Ah, and I, I make it descend on the boss, uh.
Do you have to roll ahead?
It's a, it's a dex save.
Cool, oh, okay. Uh, what's the save, what's the save? Fifteen? Nope, he has nothing to dex, so thirteen, fails.
Yes, take, uh, two D eight of radiant damage, I'll roll it, hold on.
Uh, exactly half of what you could have rolled.
Um, now, my original plan was to ru- then run away from him and go, come at me, come at me, but now I can't move, so. But I will, for my bonus action. Summon a spiritual weapon right behind him, like, right here.
Oh, yeah, because you're just gonna find the cantrip.
Actually, yeah, wait, don't summon it behind him, summon it like.
Well, the spiritual weapon, a cantrip or a spell?
No, it's a spell.
Spell, but the sacred flame was a cantrip, the only attack cantrip I have. Yeah, just put it like, right there, like, next to Karuk, yeah, that area, um. And when I cast the spell, I make a melee spell attack against a creature within five feet, so, I'm gonna roll to hit. I rolled a two, uh, D and D beyond sucks, I, uh, nine, nine, does a nine hit? Okay, well, see, this is why I didn't go up to him and use this, I was scared to go up to him and use inflict wounds, because I, I had a sense that my rolls were about to become really bad.
Honestly, only one of these was really bad, so far.
Up Anisha, you're on deck.
I did roll on that one, early on, uh, saving throw.
This guy's going to attempt to climb. Yeah, he climbs. Uh, now he's up here.
Oh, yeah, wasted your turn, Anya.
But he doesn't have, oh, he's got line of sight on Makostro, I was gonna say the right.
What about Anya, the mortal enemy?
Mortal enemy, he's gonna go, he does have line of sight on his mortal enemy.
I'm gonna burn a, uh, warp, I'm gonna burn a warp.
This is what you get for ignoring him.
Will just negotiated for you to get hit, Alyssa.
Fuck you, Will, you fucking suck.
I was gonna, I was gonna burn a warp on that, but I think Will laughed over me. No, you're good. The still hits.
Yeah.
Wait, is your AC fourteen, does a fourteen hit?
No, fourteen doesn't fucking hit me.
Okay, pog.
I just take fourteen damage.
No, that's to hit.
Oh, that's to hit.
Yeah, that, that's the second attack to hit, the first one did hit, though. You only take eight damage.
Okay, I got confused.
So I saved you from, I, okay, I saved you from one attack, that's, that's satisfying, it left.
I said that as a joke, I didn't think you would be serious.
Will, you can never say anything as a joke here.
Honestly, probably best situation, honestly, best, probably best situation, that guy probably would've hit me twice with a fuck ton of damage, and he only got, um, Anya for eight.
Oh, yeah.
Uh, duh, 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 oh wait, it's more not, this guy's gonna.
Thank god we have a cleric, right?
You, you've done ten healing.
Oh, no, yeah, no, okay, I did healing, but I boosted Anisha's.
You boosted mine, yeah.
Would you say he was shooting at? Uh, I, I did say Anisha, but it's actually more actually Karuk, but I'm, I'm, I don't know how to feel me, and so I'll reroll. Did I eight to hit? Karuk?
Uh, okay, uh, remind me, if it meets the armor class, does it hit or miss? Yes, I said hit or miss, and you said yes.
Hit, it hit.
Okay.
I knew, I knew the question was gonna be, does it hit? Right?
Uh, I was, I was asking, did it hit or miss, and everyone was like, yep, and I'm like.
Hit or miss?
Yep.
Take three anyway.
That sounds like the, that sounds like the Germa gibberish.
Um, awesome. Gonna go for Gonka?
Gonka?
Uh, missed, uh, hidden?
Uh, yeah, that hits, my AC's nineteen.
First attack, second attack, and that one, his sword really falls out of his hand. Um, miss, I know, in your heart of hearts, you can forgive me.
Talking right now?
Uh, I think he's talking, but I couldn't hear him.
Oh, damn it, why am I?
No, I heard it, I heard it.
I could hear it this one.
I could not.
You're right, Will.
Yeah.
I heard him.
Okay, that's just Will, I could hear you, alright, cool. In your heart of hearts, can you forgive me?
Cool, if I do, you're just gonna attack me again.
A great point has been risen, um. We're gonna go for Gonka, he says, no one dies young. Uh, seventeen to hit, which is a misses.
Gonka's smart, they're going down there and triggering the less strong hit rolls on the.
I'm not, I mean, can you guys not hear me?
No, I can hear you fine.
I can.
Seventeen hit?
No.
Second attack.
You just, you just.
Oh, no!
You dropped. There comes a time.
We can hear you, it's just, it's literally exactly what Lexi was talking about, where too many people talk, it like.
Yeah.
I swear, it's like, you, like, headset mics work better than any other, if you wear a headset mic, it will never cut you off.
Don't have a headset mic.
I'm gonna put my, your AirPods back in.
Yeah, they charge pretty quickly.
Yeah, I think she'd be really good, if she could.
Wait. Alright, you fuckers, um, uh, so as this guy also drops his sword, he goes, miss, in your heart of hearts. Can you forgive me, as, uh, Purple's also gonna come in and try to.
Oh my god.
No, I'm gonna get her.
Damn.
Okay.
No, you're not.
Your loss?
Oh, there you go.
I was hoping for rule of three. Uh, fourteen damage to you, and he says, ah, yes, yes, I did it!
Good job!
As that happens, the acid damage hits him back again.
Oh, you're, you're right.
The pink and the, oh, no, the.
I don't check snap very much, and I just opened my snaps and saw a video of Jack telling me how Peter Parker looks like Scott the Was.
He does, they named Peter Parker, looks like Scott the Was.
Hey, y'all, Spider-Man here.
Hey, y'all.
He also takes some acid damage.
Only like, four, though, yeah, um.
Yeah. Uh, cool, that's it, from Mafia, um, Anisha, you're up.
Oh, alright, I am going to use my bonus action to summon my last raccoon.
I am here, I am queer, get used to it.
And then I am going to take aim, and it, oh, if I get a natural one, huh, I'm gonna smack my raccoon by accident. You know what, I'm not taking that risk, I love my guys too much, so I'm gonna shoot, uh, pink.
My god.
Alright, cool.
No, I like him in character or not in character?
Anisha likes the raccoons more than the raccoons already.
Oh shit!
Critical hit, that's a critical hit.
Critical hit, so. Uh, so, let's see, one goal, just aim, gotta roll that back to the league. Cause D and D beyond hates me.
It hits home rules.
Eight, nine, twelve, I'm twenty-two.
Damage?
Damage, yeah, eleven.
Fuck!
Twenty-two damage for the first.
He looks like he's, he's, he looks like he's another hit away from that.
Alright, and I get to roll again.
Alright, go for it.
Fuck, yeah, mod twenty.
What the?
That hits, roll, roll damage.
Ah, fuck, min damage, but that's still fine, five damage.
Alright, do you wanna kill pink?
Fuck, I, I was just about to do something with that shit, fuck.
I think I do, I'll just go an arrow straight through the temple.
Miss, in your heart of hearts, can you forgive me? As he falls into Gonka's arm.
Oh shit.
Another world and another life, we could've been friends.
As the other arrow.
I forgive you, but my family gum don't.
As a yellow and a purple salute, and.
Gonka salutes as well.
Um, awesome, anything else you'd like, no, that's it, that's all you can do, just gonna move. Alright, cool, uh, Makostro, you're up, Karuk, you're on deck.
God damn it, I was gonna do something with.
Has Anisha moved from the.
I think once.
No.
Anisha's, Anisha's moved like, one square.
I've been sniping everyone.
God damn it, I was gonna, fuck, okay, sorry, the plan would've worked better if Pink was still alive, but it's whatever, um.
You were gonna do some fire thing.
I was gonna do a big fire thing, no, you're good. It, it would just, it would just not be worth, with the amount of people that are there now, as compared to the worth of a second ago. Um, but I'm not complaining, another, a person's dead, alright, I'm gonna use my bonus action to cast, uh, god damn it, where is the fucking? Not cast, it's not a spell, um, I'm gonna use, uh, sorry, I need to get the name of this exactly. Blood Curse of the Binding on the, uh, Dracolich, essentially what that is, is that, wait, hold on. Oh no, oh no, oh no, oh no, oh, thank god.
Use your words.
Uh, I was, I need to see him, and he needs to be at least thirty feet within from me.
Alright, cool.
And he's good, right? No, there ain't, there ain't no mathematic formula that would need me to do shit right now, okay.
Oh, that's a good point, he's flying, so.
How far is he flying off the ground?
If, if, if he's flying low enough that the can, that can hit him, he can hit him.
I, I just wanted to fuck with him, I just wanted to.
Yes, I was about to be like, oh, uh, uh, it's also funny.
Words that trigger Makostro, a satire, yeah.
And Ignis. Uh, fuck, my life, uh, okay, so Blood Curse of the Binding, uh, creature that can see, uh, you can see within thirty feet of you, um. Uh, that is no more than one size larger than me, I'm like a medium target, is he a large target, or is he like a big, big target?
Uh, big target.
So is he like, more than one size bigger than me?
Yeah, I'd say so.
Alright, then I can't do it, never mind, okay, cool, um, never mind, yeah. Uh, cool, uh, there goes my entire turn. Fuck my life, um, you know what, whatever, uh, chromatic orb on blue. Never mind, cool, GG.
Did you roll bad?
I rolled an at one.
Oh.
Um, as I.
On one of my only spell, uh, spell slots, cool, okay.
He does a triple million backflip, dodging and says, you're not an Anya, you're not my worst enemy. I, I refuse to die to anyone that's not that bitch.
Alright, cool, uh, and then I'll just end my turn.
Okay.
Then I'll just end my. I'll end my turn.
I mean, sure, if you wanna die.
As he begins blushing and says. Maybe? Maybe I just don't wanna live in a world without you. You're up, Gonka, you're up.
No, wait, and I'm just like, it would be an honor to kill you.
Oh my god, no!
Mr. Obama. Barack Obama, it'll almost be an honor to kill you.
Um, Karuk, you're up, Gonka, you're on deck.
Alright, I am going to, I'm gonna hit mans with another reckless attack.
Cool, roll ahead, you're giving him advantage, you know this, right?
No, I am, I know.
Okay.
I'm okay with that, uh, twenty-four to hit, is that it?
Yep.
Sixteen damage on the first one.
Insane.
And for my second attack, uh, that is going to be a mod twenty-seven.
Cat hit.
Uh, for that second attack is gonna be a thick seventeen.
Wow.
You are just, holy shit.
You might solo this guy.
Yeah, Karuk just does all the damage to the dragon while we heal each other and deal with the mobsters.
Yeah.
Honestly, not a bad strat, um, Gonka, you're up, uh, the Dracolich is on deck.
I'm probably gonna attack the dragon.
I don't hit a man who doesn't have a weapon, I'm gonna hit Purple.
As yellow looks at you, which says. Respect.
Purple time. Um.
Time to shoot another armed man.
I really wanted Purple also.
Nah, that, that's a miss, right, I think that's a miss.
Seventeen, the seventeen misses.
Yeah, second hit does, oof, eleven, so nothing this round either.
Oh, man.
Sit up down here, it's okay, we're all in.
Uh, Purple looks at you like, we've all been there, alright?
We heal each other, we get each other.
It's not you, it's me, it's something you're bad at attacking, I'm just good at dodging. No, oh, you, you're really good, man.
Dodging down to a key.
The best and weirdest battle ever.
Yeah.
Alexi's character complimenting the Goon characters.
I'm in a weird relationship with this other guy, where I'm like.
He hates you, but he's also in love with you, it's so weird.
It's like, he wants me to kill him, I don't know.
He either wants to die to you, or he wants to get married and have five children, and he doesn't know which ones are.
Oh, you know, I'll do a bonus.
Sweet, time to kill.
Oh, no!
Anisha, no!
Anisha's just gonna kill everyone.
These feelings are complicated. Um, uh, what else did I say to Gonka?
Can I give myself Shield of Faith?
Yeah.
What, okay, yeah. Wait, wait, does that mean you're at a full twelve armor?
You're on twenty-one AC.
That would give them a less than fifty chance of hitting you.
Yeah, yeah, you know what, I'm gonna cast Shield of Faith on myself.
Hell, yeah, man, why not? Uh, it's not a Dracolich's turn, it's, he's just gonna go in nutty on Karuk with advantage. At this point, we can assume he, like, at that point? I think he will reliably hit.
We'll see.
Uh, sixteen, oh, maybe not. No, nah, I'm kidding.
I was really hoping for the comedic timing.
The boss. Sometimes the dice don't work with comedic timing, sometimes they do. Uh, eighteen damage after nine, second attack, an eighteen to hit, that hits normally, or let's just, yeah, does an eighteen hit?
Yes, an eighteen hits.
God, barbarian soaring the boss, always.
Um, twenty-seven, half to, uh, thirteen, I mean, Baron kinda put in some of the, Baron did the most work against Iron.
See, you, see, you, you said we could assume that he hit, but if I had a one point higher in AC, that second attack wouldn't have hit me.
It's true, um, no, no, I remember Baron, Baron did solo Lyran, but he definitely like, was the most like, active.
Baron, Baron was definitely doing this kinda stuff during a lot of the battles.
Yeah.
Cause usually I rolled really bad, like, if it was, I would try to use like, guns or bats, and I'd go bad.
Of all things.
Yeah.
Um. Intr- ooh, uh-oh, uh, Anya, you're up, Luba, you're on, oh, no, yeah, Anya, you're up, Luba, you're on deck.
Okay, I, I wanna, I wanna stream to, to my blue man and be like, my rival, my enemy, also possibly my lover. What is your name?
My name is Frankie.
Either you change your ways, or you die here today.
I can't change who I am.
Then perish. I'm gonna roll it.
You're gonna hit Frankie, bro?
I'm gonna hit Frankie.
Tell me why, when you said I'm gonna hit, my heart actually sank. I felt bad for Frankie.
Than the grunts than the main like boss.
Yeah.
Oh, you guys are just obsessed with the grunts.
Does a twenty-six hit him?
As the twenty-six hits Frankie.
Roll to hit Frankie, max damage twelve.
Nice.
If we get Alyssa to roll well, it just has to be someone she loves.
As Frankie says, uh, man, it's a, it's a terrible day for rain, and, uh, the other guy. Raining Frankie, and Frankie turns to him and says, yes, it is.
Red guy, what the hell is your beat?
Yeah, as Red says, okay, Jesus Christ, I don't know what the fuck is going on anymore, as he just looks over, Green's just kind of hiding. Um, Purple and Yellow are just hanging out with Gonka, Blue is trying to get married, it's insane.
I, I pull, I pull my second shot back, and I tell him, it was never meant to be, and I'm gonna roll to hit.
No!
Oh my goodness.
I'm surprised this never happened with Myra, like, Myra is one of the enemies.
Oh, fucking scores!
Okay, Alyssa's gotten two nat twenties to hit in this session, and apparently she's never gotten any before this point.
Frankie's fucked, this is a full character arc that's happening like, less than a round.
Frankie's like the new detective, where it's just like, or, no, yeah, I don't know, it's something where it's just like, I did not expect this character to have any this much development, but here we are.
Oh my goodness.
Alright.
No, it's, it's like that one pirate, like, how all the pirates died in the final fight.
And then there's the one.
Stayed the course.
How much damage?
Uh, let's see.
You kill Frankie.
Eight, plus four, which is twelve times two.
That's max damage crit, that's a max damage crit.
I refuse to hurt the one I love, as Red says, you should, she's gonna kill you, as Frankie turns and says, you wouldn't get it, you son of a bitch.
I'm sorry!
No, you're not, Frankie says, as Frankie drops his bow, and just like, does this and says, do it, hit me, you son of a bitch. I refuse to hurt the one I love.
Hold on, I have, hold on, I have movement left, hold on, shut the fuck up, I've got movement left, use it!
Go to him, go to him.
And I go up to him, and I, I hug him, and I'm crying.
Okay, wait, what in the hell is going on?
As, as Red is looking from below, just like.
I love this boss battle.
You know what, you two have fun over there.
Hold on, hold on, I'm gonna try to make a meme.
I am actually going to, I'm going to ignore Anya.
Luke, is this recording?
Oh, yeah, it is, hell, yeah.
Good.
Better.
This has been the best session we have ever done.
Yeah, I love this.
And with that, my turn is done.
Insane, Luba, you're up, Mafia's on deck.
What the hell? I'm, I'm, I'm gonna attack the big dragon dude, uh, and I move down here and use, uh, inflict wounds.
What the hell just happened?
What the fuck is going on right there?
Bobby, what the fuck?
Seven, come on. Does a twenty hit the dragon?
Yeah, it does.
Okay, excellent, time to roll six D ten.
Holy shit.
Welcome to inflict wounds.
Thirty-seven damage.
Oh!
And then, and then as my bonus action, I'll have the, uh, the spiritual weapon hit him again.
Oh my god, yeah, roll the hit.
I wanna actually, what is your spiritual weapon, I wanna know?
Um, it's, I haven't really thought, I've thought more about the Guardian Luma.
We'll say it's a sword for now, we'll say it's, we'll say it's, it's Starship Mario.
Yeah, sure.
It's Starship Mario, it just kamikazes into the thing over and over again.
That's like a, his final smash in Smash.
Oh, hell yeah, that better be.
Does a twenty-three hit, yes it does, alrighty.
Yes, it does.
Now, I'm gonna do one D eight plus three, I'm rolling very well on here, so I don't wanna roll anywhere else. Yes, yes, roll twenty, roll twenty either blesses me or curses me, uh, eleven damage, max damage.
Insane.
Nice.
I just did forty-eight damage to get a one.
I keep thinking that since we recorded campaign two, I'd wanna be able to make a trailer for it.
Oh, that'd be cool.
Didn't Jack make them?
I mean, I made like, I made one using no existing footage.
Yeah.
Oh, no, that's very fair, that is actually very fair.
God, if I could draw...
Alright.
Yeah, same.
My, my turn is over, I did a satisfying almost fifty damage.
I wish some of this shit could get animated, it's so good.
It's so good.
Some, I mean, the, you, I'm talking about your guys, I'm not being like, my, my story, I'm, I mean like, I mean more stuff like this.
Memes up, memes up, memes up.
Memes up.
Oh wait.
No, fuck you, Luke!
What?
Not Zima!
Is that insane as well?
Why is that true?
Oh my god.
I want, I want someone to make one of like, um, it's like, them like, it's like, it's Anya and Frankie like, with each other like, like hugging, and then like, like Red just like, and like, if there's any meme that's just like, some guy walks...
Oh, no, 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 okay, okay, I'm, I'll make it, I'll make it, I'll make it, I'll make it, make it.
Yeah, anyway, um, from below preferably. Um, that's it for Lava?
Yeah.
Insane, Mafia's up, as, um, as, uh, Frankie holds you, Anya, and says, "I won't let them hurt you," but then Red climbs up. "Okay, this is so stupid, this is dumb, this is the definition of dumb, I'm going in," and he's, uh, he tries to plunge a knife into you, Anya, "but Frankie's gonna take it for you."
The mobsters are killing each other.
Let's see if he hits Frank.
Oh no.
He misses Frankie, as Frankie says, "I won't let you hurt her," as he says, "No, Frankie." He hits Frankie for the second attack.
Oh no.
Frankie's nearly dead, too.
Um, Frankie, so, a knife plunges into Frankie. "Won't back down," as, uh, Red says, "Then I will kill you," and Frankie says, "Just try, you son of a bitch."
Don't hurt him!
Look at, look at, look at Jack's campaign real quick, look at Jack's campaign real quick.
This is so sick.
The feeling when your voice stops actually fighting, it starts like...
Anya, the red one. Oh my goodness. I'm like Frankie.
This is what they look like now, they all wear color-coordinated suits.
We're dealing with Batman villains at this point.
Oh, that has to change them now, change them in.
Okay.
Frankie makes it out of the, the battle, that's what he's gonna be like. Stay psyched right now. Um, insane, uh, it is now Frankie's turn, as he's gonna fight Red. So dumb.
This has been the most chaotic thing ever, and I love it.
Oh yeah, I fucking love this.
Uh, twenty damage to Red.
The goons are all...
Hell yeah, go for it.
Okay, all four of these goons are extremely chaotic, and then there's the green one, that is just like one.
He's hiding, he's hiding, he's just kinda watching.
I don't know what this is, I'm confused, no, okay, if Red and Blue were having that whole scene, we need like, an even further zoomed out meme. That initially said, where Green is just like, a mile away.
I...
What the hell?
Oh my god.
This is so good.
I was getting, I was...
What if I could get this scene commissioned, where like, it's the whole battle, and you can see the whole thing with Gonka going on, my thing going on?
I think the commission artist would actually murder you.
No, well, we could just show them this clip, just show them the clip. You would have to pay them hourly, but just pull them this clip, pull them the clip. Alright, who's, what's going on?
They the wiggles, um, alright, I believe...
They are the wiggles.
I at least want a commission of like, what's going on with Anya and Blue here.
Of course you would.
His name's Frankie.
Frankie.
Uh, I have to, let, let me, I have to reopen campaign two point five. Are you going to the bathroom, Luke?
No, 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 I was just, I was just wondering where my turn was.
Okay, no, it's still the Mafia's turn, sorry, just...
No, you're good, so much shit is happening, I'm just like, I'm just like, what the?
There are characters in their own right, um, okay, uh...
Oh my god.
Uh, Gonka, we're gonna cut over to you.
Uh, okay.
Um, as, um, it is now, uh, Purple's going to attack you. Sixteen missing.
No.
Eleven missing, as Yellow picks up his weapon and says, "I have it now, uh, I took everything I said back, I never cared about you."
I, I figured, I figured.
What? You figured, but, oh man. But, no, but you didn't, what? Twenty-three to hit.
Hi, got it.
You're so nice, sixteen damage to you. Alright, I'm gonna go in for another attack, as he goes in for another attack, a twenty to hit. Uh, missing.
Wait, wait a minute.
Missing, missing, with spirit, with armor, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, you used that.
Or with, uh, Shield of Faith.
Yeah.
As he misses, you are very strong, you are very, I'm intimidated.
If anything happened to me in the past few minutes, my dad killed me.
No, no.
No.
Just Frankie stuff.
All legendary character drama.
Yeah, just Frankie shit.
Everything, he was kinda the MC of this campaign, um, alright, Anisha, you're up, Makostra, you're on deck.
Alright, time to fucking, okay, I have a question first.
Yep.
Uh, do I, cause I know I can order the raccoons with my bonus action, do I have to take a bonus action to get them to stack and another?
No.
Action to get them to attack?
Uh, no, you can just tell them to stack and then they can attack, stack and attack, we'll call it a stack attack. You gonna, you gonna ask them to stack?
Yeah.
Uh, I need you guys to stack and fix whatever situations going on over there.
I'm literally, I'll be pointing.
Point at Blue and Frankie.
Okay, as the raccoons go over to Frankie and say, "You are not worthy of this young woman, die, die."
Wait, 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 did Will command, I came back, did, I came back, did Will command the raccoons to kill Frankie?
Uh, no, Anisha just said, "Take care of whatever's going on over there," the raccoon.
The raccoon, I literally left it to the DM.
The raccoon, the raccoons miss.
Thank Christ.
Everyone's so invested in Frankie living.
I, I, I looked the raccoons dead in the eyes and I'm like, "You hurt him, you die."
Didn't you attack, didn't you attack him way more than we have?
This is different now!
Alright, I'm gonna, I'm gonna use my bow to attack Yellow down there. Hell yeah!
Eh! Post, post that, post that, can you post that image, can you post that image? Can you post like the crop, can you? Can you post the, that crop thing real, oh, you know, you already got a blue one.
Frankie kinda like low-key hot.
Yeah, Frankie is low-key hot.
Why is Anya honestly making the right decision?
It's me, I hope Frankie, I hope Frankie survives so that he can be...
Hell, oh my goodness, he is, he'd be sexy.
Yeah, and Red is just like, mm.
I'm gonna fucking destroy the raccoons and Red.
Bro, Frankie's like an eight out of ten, Fred's like, Red's like, uh, I called him Fred, I called him Fred.
Red works so well with the fucking, um, like, yeah, that looks perfect for like a stay psyched right now.
I, I said, I said, I said Fred by mistake, but I think Fred sounds like a good enough name to give Red anyway.
Sure, Fred and Frankie.
I'm, I'm sending all these images in Jack's campaign.
Fred, Frankie, a bunch of other F memes.
Oh my god.
Oh my goodness.
Stay psyched right now!
Gonka POV Wario and Walrus. The poor, the pink one died before he got to be a character.
I don't think the pink one's still alive, I don't think he's dead, I think Karuk just...
No, the pink one I sniped, the pink one is dead.
No, yeah, the orange one died way before any of them got to, everybody else was like...
Yeah, pink, yeah, no, nevermind, that's the orange one, pink just died a long ass time ago.
Uh, Anisha, what would you like to do for your turn?
Uh, so, uh, I already rolled to hit Yellow, uh, twenty-eight, I'm assuming hits.
Yeah, that hits.
Roll damage, fuck, I got men damage again, five. Uh, I'm gonna, I'm gonna roll again to hit.
Aiden, where are you fighting?
To hit?
I just have them on my...
Uh, eighteen, eighteen does hit.
Okay. I'm gonna roll damage again. Okay, uh, eight damage for the second attack.
Eight damage, nice.
Nice, cock.
Jack, you gotta give Yellow, Purple, and...
Oh, I am, I am.
These are all too good. Have, have you changed, have you changed Blue's health to Frankie's health?
Oh my god.
Shut up! Ew! So dumb, um, god, I feel like this is, this is, this is our equivalent of the party adopting the Goblin, you know that meme of?
Yeah.
Well, okay, usually Jack ri- would write like a bunch of color-coded goons, like, color-coded snapping off... This time we like, created them out of the goons he put on the board.
I love this.
It's nuts, um, Anisha, Anisha, that's it for you?
Yeah, that's it, this is the greatest fucking session we have ever played.
Damn!
The green one has to be, has to be the risk.
Yeah, yeah.
We'll, we'll get to, we'll get to...
He'll throw up at the end and be like, "Riddle me this."
Makostra, you're up.
Alright, Makostra takes like, a look around, sees all the shit that's going on, is just standing there, goes five, ten, fifteen, jumps down, twenty, twenty-five, thirty, looks at Green and is like, dude, look at everything that's... Yeah, I was just about to ask you, can you just, I was, I was...
Turned into a cow, can I go home?
Dude, hey...
Anyone else?
Yo, excuse.
Um, "Can I leave?" he says, looking at you.
Yeah, I was gonna ask you, like, you're, you're, the yellow and purple one, they dropped their swords and are like, hugging each other. Blue over there is fallen for my party member, and Red's attacking him, Pink, I don't know what happened to Pink, uh, and Orange tripped on a staircase and fell, and I don't know, the Dracolich seems to be about dead too. Uh, can you just like, show me?
I'll level with you, this is my second day here.
Can you?
I was not ready for today.
I was not ready for today either. Can you?
I'm gonna go, I, I don't know what you're talking about, I think what you want's back there, I'm gonna go that way, you go that way.
Uh, just actually, uh, yeah, no, 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 one thing.
You go that way.
I, I, I was gonna, I was gonna say, I was gonna say, you just come with me, because up there is probably, you, no, 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 if you go up there, you're gonna get dragged into whatever chaos, and I cannot predict what will happen.
I'm just gonna keep hiding.
Alright, cool, can you at least just like, show me where like, the thing I came for? No idea.
Second day, second day.
Second day, okay.
Oh no, I was not ready for today.
What is, what is like, the?
I woke up today and I was like, "It's gonna be a lovely day at work," didn't notice what happened.
Where, where is like, where is like, the main like, thing that they always hide, like, what door has like, the most guards behind?
Right behind me, uh, probably, probably there.
Alright, alright, thank you, thank you, thank you.
I'm focusing on fixing this, I'm gonna keep hiding.
I'm, I'm not gonna fix that, if I fix that, it'll get worse.
You're right, honestly, I, I, I feel like...
Honestly, just like, just like...
You're probably the equivalent of each other.
I got like, no sleep last night, I got like, yeah, the, the purple dude, you see him over there, he like shit the bed and then like, started running around our hotel room? And like, woke me up in the middle of the night.
Insane.
Yeah, and then, and then, and then, and then my roommate, and then my roommate is now trying to fuck Frankie.
This is getting to levels of I don't care that much?
Yeah, that's why I came down to ask you, cause like, if, I think I would just get more injured, alright, thanks, dude.
Let's hear it, go ahead, ma.
Recommend, don't go, don't go up those stairs or something that I cannot predict.
I wasn't planning.
Alright, perfect, and then Makostra is done with their movement, they would keep going if they wanted to.
Oh my god, insane.
I had, I had the idea of just like, asking the other dude, it's like, hey, is it even worth it anymore? Like, yeah. What's his name, what, what's your name, Greenie? Not in the slur way.
My name's Thomas.
Thomas, Thomas, I'm, I'm, I'm Makostra.
Icona.
Icona.
Um, so... I come here and duck.
Alright. I'm gonna reckless attack him again, it feels like it's been like a half an hour.
It's a half an hour now that every single goon has a backstory.
Makostra's turn was running over to the green goon and talking to the green goon, like, "Yeah, do you have any idea what's going on? Me neither, let's just make..."
Let's just, let's just not do anything. Uh...
Alright, do you wanna kill him?
The dragon?
Yeah.
Holy fuck, um...
You, you almost sold him, I came in and helped him.
Yeah, dude, I'll, I'll, I'll fucking bash his skull in.
You... As he falls to the ground dead.
Nice work, big man, hey!
Uh, alright, you're a, it's a little stinky, you could use like a, a mint or something.
Alright, I guess... I just look around and I'm like... That only used one of my...
Use your current image, Makostra and the, and Green are like talking to each other, like, "I know, right?" Um, Gonka, the other two are trying to hit Gonka, and she just keeps dodging and saying, "It's alright, you, you'll get him eventually," and then Anya and like Frankie are like hugging each other while the raccoons and Red are both trying to go for the two of them.
So, uh... I'm going to, um, throw my warhammer over at Purple guy.
Go for it, roll the hit.
That works. Gonna fucking toss this shit, why not? Uh, twenty-two.
Uh, that hits.
Oh shit.
Uh, fourteen damage to him.
Um, nice, so, who was it again, who, yeah?
Purple guy.
Purple guy. Follow.
Purple guy! Bite of eighty-seven!
Purple guy!
I, I posted a new meme.
Oh no.
Oh wait, is that his name, Tom?
It's Thomas.
What the fuck, bro?
Pretty much.
What the fuck? This is, oh my god, insane, uh, awesome, yeah, you, whoa, ah, man, he hit me, he hit me, Gonka!
Do something about it, he hit me!
Gonka, you're up.
You can take a hit or two, you got this.
Really?
Is Gonka coaching a fight between the two of them now?
This is great.
Alright, I'm gonna use my turn to heal up, cuz I'm actually looking a little messed up. These guys are doing a good job.
Really?
Yeah, you guys got me so good that I gotta heal. I can't even attack.
Aw, we're flattered by that, Gonka. It honestly means a lot to us. What do you heal?
Uh, I'm just using my lay on hands on myself.
Is that a bonus action or a main action?
It's a main action.
Awesome, I'm gonna go to the bathroom, no.
Holy shit. What the fuck is happening? I, I, I always know the non-lethal route is optional in D and D, but this is not even non-lethal because people have died.
It's not even non-lethal, but this is like weird.
This is. This is, okay, like, three different animes are going on right now in each location of the battle. You got Anohana happening in the top left. You got Attack on Titan in the middle. You got, you got, uh, not, um, I don't know what, hmm. I don't know, I don't know, I don't know what Gonka would be because it's just like.
Aneeshia has not moved.
Aneeshia has not moved, and then fucking, and then fucking Ichii. And then fucking.
Battle started was like goofy, I was like, hey, looks like it's starting to fight.
Yeah, it's insane.
Then Ichii Joe is happening in the bottom left where we're just like, yo, what the fuck, bro?
Uh, twenty-five.
Awesome, is that it from you?
Yeah, that's gonna be it from me.
Awesome, um, it's now, it's now Anya's turn.
Great, okay, this is what I'm gonna do. First thing I'm gonna do, I'm gonna take my bonus action, I'm gonna use Crimson Right.
Ooh.
Which can imbue a weapon, so I strike for one D six extra damage, but I take one D six damage for it.
What was that?
Rolling for, uh, I'm using Crimson Right, so I'm rolling damage on myself.
Okay, cool, yeah.
I take two damage, that's fine.
You always wanna roll low on that one.
And then I'm going to use my bow and try and hit, uh, Fred.
Do you not have a melee weapon? I guess the bow is probably better.
Yeah, Blood Under skin can be any kind of attack bow.
You, you've cursed Red?
Yeah.
Or, or, okay, what kinda curse did you?
The way that Crimson Right works is that, uh, I can imbue a weapon to strike for one D six extra damage. And it lasts as long as I hold the weapon or until I take a turn along.
Yeah, roll the hit, uh, Red.
Fuck, yeah, man. That's twenty.
Are you serious?
That's the third one! This is, this is storytelling.
This is, what kinda story? Oh my fuck.
Anya's now fighting for the one she loves.
The game's like, the game's like, Alyssa, you're gonna learn how to roll for crits, right now.
So now it's a D eight plus four.
Plus a D six. Doubled.
Oh, times two, so yeah, roll all of that.
Roll all that. Oh my goodness, please be.
Please be like a good amount of damage.
I hope so.
Minimum, minimum, that's twelve damage. Right of your roll, ones on both and then the four.
Okay.
Oh yeah.
Five times.
Five plus four.
Nine.
Nine, times two, eighteen.
Eighteen damage.
Eighteen damage.
Not bad.
Wait, what about the plus? Oh, five with the D eight, put these things.
You bitch, she says, as, uh, Frankie looks up and says, don't. Or to her that way.
And then I'm gonna try and shoot him again.
Yes, that is the woman I love. Roll the hit.
Twenty-three to hit.
Frankie's actually gonna become like party member number seven, isn't he?
Right, uh, Red takes.
If he makes it out of this.
He takes ten more damage.
Nice.
Okay.
Well, my turn's next, right?
Yeah. Um, is that it for you, Anya?
Yeah, hold on, I'm just gonna. Yeah, okay, there you go, I'm good.
That's right, Anya, that's what you do it. I knew I was made to be with you, and Red's like, you don't even know her last name!
I don't even know my last name!
What? Uh, Lava, you're up.
I'm making sure Frankie stays alive.
And I use Thalmatergy to shout and make my voice boom. So, uh, the dragon's dead? I don't really know what's happening right now? Do any of you mobsters actually want to fight us anymore, or can we just like stop this and like chill? We already killed your boss. If anyone wants to fight still, say aye.
Uh, Red goes, aye. And then purple and yellow are like, yeah, yeah, I can fight. And then Green's like, I'm good, I'm done fighting, I'm not, no.
Quiet, Thomas, quiet, quiet, quiet. Don't get involved, don't get involved.
I was ho- So we can't just go home. Alright, fine.
Sorry, sorry, Lava, I think we have to finish what we started.
I'm gonna move this, uh, spiritual weapon twenty feet over here, uh, and then use it to attack purple, the purple guy.
The purple guy? He's seven? Eighty-seven?
So, so, so the weapon's over here, I'll just, yeah.
Ah, shit.
Uh, and I use it to attack the guy, uh. So let me roll D twenty plus seven. Alright, will you a- alright, well you asked for it. Twenty, does a twenty-six hit? Yes, it does.
I'm gonna, I'm even more racist now.
What?
It's okay, I'm no longer racist, just kidding, I'm ultra racist.
What is that yellow line?
I don't even remember what level.
That's the spiritual weapon.
Yeah, what was I roll? I was rolling a D eight plus three, that's right, yeah.
That hit, oh shit, that's a fucked on him.
It does different amounts of damage depending on what level I cast the spell at. I'm just gonna say I cast it at level one, or level, yeah, the lowest.
Level no.
Level no. And though I didn't.
That's what a cantrip.
Level low.
Six damage to the purple one.
You did six damage to purple guy? That's a bite of me.
Eighty-seven?
And now my turn is over.
Okay.
I was hoping I stopped the fighting, but.
Uh, it is now the mafia's turn, as Red's gonna go for Frankie. Frankie could die here.
No!
Can I try and defend Frankie? Can I put myself in harm's way for Frankie?
Yes, you can.
Epic, awesome.
Um, yeah. Uh, I'm gonna say that's something only you and Frankie can do for each other.
Revive Frankie.
Got it, got it.
Yeah, we can, do we wanna revise our, our one revival spell ever?
I have a health kit that I can use on him.
Uh, fifteen to hit, my thing, which hits you.
Yeah, that hits.
Anya.
Oh my god.
No, it wouldn't have hit Frankie, fun fact.
Yeah, it's fine.
Cause Frankie has a way higher armor class than on.
Is Frankie strong? No.
Advantage since you're actively trying to get hit by it.
That's still a fucked ton of damage though!
Thirteen damage to you.
What is that damage, my guy?
As he says, stop it.
Yeah, they do good damage up close.
He goes, and again, do you once again put your bot, try to shield Frankie?
Yes.
Uh, can I secretly use a re-warp reaction just to try to calm down whatever's going on?
I'm very much low on.
Yeah.
Yeah, you can, you can warp to see if this can miss, we'll go again.
Oh.
No. Uh, eighteen damage to you.
I'm down.
No!
Um, holy shit.
Holy.
Yeah, okay, so I'll be.
Music plays louder.
Stop over there and kill the red one, just so we can be.
Yeah, no, I, I'm, that's what I'm gonna do too.
Yeah, I'm at negative health.
Wait, how much negative health? Because you might have a lot, it might not, this might be.
What's eighteen, seven, minus, uh.
That's not a math equation.
Frankie watches as Anya falls to the ground.
That's negative eleven, holy shit, that might actually, that's, that could be a decent amount. Cause it's only your con mod tongs too.
As Frankie watches as Anya hits the ground.
Oh my god, is this Anohana thing?
No, this is not Anohana.
No. Anya, get up, get up, as he turns to Red. I'll kill you, you son of a bitch! I'm on that.
Aneeshia and Lava are just like watching.
Yeah, I know, pretty much.
Twenty-two to, twenty-one to hit, which does hit.
Oh!
Um. Red looks like he's on the cusp. One good hit could do him in. He needs to hit though.
Come on, come on Frankie, come on.
Missing.
Oh no!
No, I'll end you! Um, as, Pearl's gonna go for you, Gonka. Twenty-four to hit.
Oh, no!
Twenty-four hits.
This is the team four star version two.
Yeah, it's really good.
It is good, they make good music.
Twenty-six to hit.
Holy shit.
These guys are good.
Yeah, that is.
Uh, now yellow's gonna go for you.
Yellow is not as good.
Oh man, I wish it could be like purple.
Yeah, who knew the yellow guy isn't as. Holy shit, yellow guy got pissed. Mario's fucking falling? The yellow guy isn't nearly as deadly as the purple guy.
As they say, we did it, Gonka, we hit you!
Good job, good job.
I do die. Okay.
You know what, I'll die proud of, of, of my two bosses.
If Gonka dies here just to inspire the two enemies.
Go hide.
Wait up.
Um, oh my god, insane. Um. Uh, Aneeshia, you're up, Makostra, you're undone.
Cool.
I'm gonna go, five, ten, fifteen, and twenty, going to use my action to heal Anya.
Thank you, cuz I think Frankie needs to be the one to defeat Red.
Yeah.
Go for the healing.
Uh, okay, well, Anya's, I think Anya's back up, but you're back up at two health if you're at negative eleven.
I am, thanks.
Yeah.
My love!
And then I'm gonna use my bonus action, uh, to order my raccoons.
I need you to attack Red now!
And do, buckaroo.
Alright, here we go.
Missing, damn it!
Psych right now.
Say psych right now.
To buff the raccoon soon. Why is everybody missing the red?
Um, Makostra, you're up. Karuuk, you're undone.
Okay, Makostra just like kind of looks around, seeing Thomas goes in one direction. Five. Five, ten, fifteen, twenty, twenty-five, uh.
Like, no, I didn't sleep enough for this.
Does, okay, does the big blue orb on the table look more, um, more interesting or wherever Thomas is hiding? Like? What?
Oh my goodness, I love.
Jack, did you hear Luke's question?
Uh, yeah, sorry, I'm having to negotiate.
Oh yeah, okay.
Okay. Negotiating a trade deal right now, holy shit. I, I have this, I have the fate of the, uh, day of fate, like, link saved, so.
This campaign have been very goofy. There was sludge time and this, I guess the Kraken. Even the Kraken had Karuuk like riding it.
Yeah.
Yeah, um, awesome, um, ma- Alright, what would you like to do, Makostra?
Uh, I'd like to like, uh, is the big blue orb table more interesting or wherever, like, because I think Makostra at this point is just considering the battle over and is just looking around.
Uh, yeah, the, the blue, the blue's more interesting.
Alright, I'm at twenty-five, uh, can I, thirty, and then can I investigate from here?
What?
Can I investigate from here? I, I used all my movement to get to where I am.
Roll, roll an investigate check.
Cool.
Interesting.
Yeah, battle's over, time's up.
Makostra knows nothing bad will happen at this point, every, the, the whims of chaos have like.
Gonka could get owned up.
My Gonka's actually not doing hot right now.
And Karuuk is red.
Karuuk is also, oh dear goodness, I wasted my.
Alright, roll an investigate check.
Uh, sorry, no, 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 I dropped my dice, I dropped my dice.
Lava had like three different ways to revive somebody from being dead.
Oh, Lexi has lay on hands pool, so I think Lexi will be.
A little bit less, yeah.
Yeah, uh, okay, uh, mod twenty.
Um, you have found, in the orb, you see the location of Santa's workshop.
Ooh, where is it?
Uh, you see it on the map, it's a bit, it's a, it's pretty far north.
Ooh.
My god.
Hey guys, I found the, the, the map.
As we cut back to everyone who's still fighting. Karuuk, you're up, uh, Gonka, you're undone.
Oh, I was gonna paste it.
Five feet, jump down, ten.
Oh my god.
Fifteen, twenty, twenty-five, and can I pick back up my warhammer that I threw at purple guy?
Yes, you can.
Three seven!
And I, I'm gonna reckless attack purple.
Cool, roll the hit.
Uh, twenty-three hits. Uh, fourteen damage.
Do you wanna kill purple?
Nah, I'll just, uh, I'll just slap that hammer in between his legs.
Gonka, did I do it right?
I love how he.
Over his body, I go in for my second attack on yellow. Uh, actually no.
Is, is the final confrontation gonna be between blue, red, and?
Alright.
Yeah, right. This is the main story.
That's the main, that's where the plot went. That's where the plot went.
Twenty-six.
Uh, twenty-six does hit.
Alright, so my second attack on yellow is gonna be twelve damage.
Cool. Uh, yellow's still up, no one's really fought him that much.
Yeah.
You knocked out my best friend. But thank you for not killing him. Anyway, he did pretty good Gonka, right?
Yeah, no, definitely.
I'm proud of him.
Way better than I thought y'all would do, I'm impressed.
Yeah, Gonka, you're up.
Five, ten, and then I'm gonna heal, uh, Karuuk for twenty.
And I'll leave him.
Awesome. Oops, um, Karuuk, you're healed for twenty. Um.
Oopsie.
I put that spiritual guardian Luma there, nobody wins with.
Anya, you're up, Lava's undone.
That's not even the weirdest thing that's happened this fight.
Yeah, I know.
It's like the third most normal thing.
I'm gonna try and shoot Fred again.
His name's Red.
I, I said Fred at some point, I, I, I called him Fred by mistake.
Works, well, we can call him Fred, um.
He looks, he looks like a Fred, he looks like a Fred, he looks like a Fred.
Uh, yeah, twenty-two does it.
What's Blue's name again?
Uh, Fred is Fred.
Ten, ten damage.
Red is Fred and champion. Uh, ten damage.
Is, is Fred dead?
Uh, do you wanna kill Fred?
Absolutely.
As you kill, as, uh, shooting to Red, he looks, he looks into, he looks at Frankie in the eyes and says, I choose. I loved you. And I. I've loved you since the first moment I laid eyes on Frankie, and Frankie says, shut the fuck up, just kicks him over.
Makostra just hears his body flop on the ground, looks behind them, is like.
As Frankie turns to you, as Frankie turns to you, Anya, and says, so, do we, um, I don't know, what's the word for it now? Um, make love?
I mean, can we, can we just do holding hands and kissing first?
Can we wait till marriage? Can we wait till marriage?
Um, well, not really, um, as. Uh, Lava, you're up, the mafia's one to.
So you're good now, I don't need to do anything over here.
Yeah, we're good.
Oh, we're more than good, my friends.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna move five, ten.
First time dating an NPC, that's a good one.
Twenty-five, and, uh, use inflict wounds.
I can check that off my list.
Aiden's the only one who's done it.
Yeah.
Oh, and Coleman, duh.
Oh yeah.
Second level inflict wounds on yellow.
Dating an NPC. It, it was Coleman and Aiden up until now.
And now Alyssa.
Tell me, baby.
Does a nineteen hit the yellow goon?
Uh, yes, it does. Every time someone's dated an NPC, it's been something I did not plan.
It has never been scripted.
No, Macy was, Macy was made to tease Alyssa, I did not expect Aiden to take that bait.
Yeah, um, so four D ten, twenty-one damage to yellow.
Uh, you kill yellow, or do you wanna kill yellow?
Uh, yeah, I kill yellow.
Oh goodness.
Well, who cares?
As he, as he, as, as he looks at Gonka and says.
Frankie and Green that I can interrogate, that's all I care about.
As he looks at you, Gonka, he says. I'm sorry, I wasn't strong enough.
Oh, we're good.
Alright, are we done now?
Please, can you over?
I'm pretty sure we're good.
Uh, okay, Frankie! What do you know, what do you, what, what, what do you know about your group? What's your group doing with the killer Santa? That's the only reason I came here and I literally do not care about whatever else is going on here.
Uh, not quite sure, I'm just following orders, uh, from what I understand though, uh, we're trying to, uh, get him to join our group, so we've been trying to find Santa so we can recruit him.
Alright, uh, anybody seen Makostra?
I walk up with like a bunch of maps under my arm and like a couple of things, and I'm just like, oh yeah, I have the orb in one hand, and then like, I'm just like walking next to like Thomas, and I'm just like, guys, he's cool.
Thomas come out after we're done?
Yeah, I'm leaving, Thomas says.
He's cool, guys, don't worry.
I won't turn you guys in, I'm just gonna go rethink many life decisions.
Yeah, be careful of Xanathar, I don't, I, if you tell him about what happens here, I don't think he'll kill you, I just think he'll be very confused.
Not talking to Xanathar.
Who's Xanathar?
The head boss.
Anyway, I'm outta here.
See ya, Thomas, be careful on the way up.
Bye, Thomas, Frankie says.
So, uh, Macostra, what'd you find?
Uh, the location of Santa's workshop, they had it marked out right here.
Ooh. X.
Yep, it's in this orb here, and then I like toss it to Loba.
You toss it to? Uh, uh, I ca- I'll roll, what should I roll to catch it? Cause I was not expecting that.
Uh, roll me a dexterity check.
Oh, no.
Um, that would be a twelve?
Okay.
You kind of, you kind of.
Okay, no more throwing magical artifacts.
I also wrote it down.
Loba? I don't know.
(laughing).
No, no, she got it.
Um.
Alright, and I, I put it in my pocket, and I'm like, alright, well, let's head to Santa's workshop then, shall we?
I.
Wait, do we wanna watch the mayor's announcement first, Frankie says?
Oh my god, I forgot about the mayor's announcement, alright, let's go!
Uh, give me a second, I'd like to look around.
It's gonna be like nine PM, and we back.
Yeah, let's go watch the announcement and then we can leave.
I'll be right back, I'd like to get some money, so I can pay for my hotel room.
Also, Frankie said.
Uh, I, I'd like to investigate. I'd like to investigate a bit to see if I can find.
I kinda owned you guys epic style, don't, don't.
Uh, I'd like to investigate around this.
You needed adult support, right?
Who is, is somebody going to fill me in?
Anya, would you like to?
Anya, please.
Only you could explain it.
We are, uh, together now.
You are telling.
(laughing).
Karuk, stand here, and he be soloing this, this lich for like ten minutes, and you are out there flirting with the monsters?
Look, it turned.
That is, that is essentially what happened.
It, it was complicated.
Karuk, that's a s- Karuk, you are dead on correct.
What you do with your sex class is your business, the church does not discriminate in that regard, uh. Can I, can I make an insight check to determine if this guy would turn on us for the sake of the mafia?
Actually, please, I would like to do the same.
Uh, I'll do.
Loba will just kill him, like.
I'll, I'll do the same.
Yeah, I'm ready to do.
That is three fourteen.
Uh, I rolled a nat one on my insight check on Frankie.
Oh, no.
Um, Maco- alright, so, you don't really know Anisha, Macostra? As you're looking at this man. You sense something within him, you sense spirit. You didn't believe in reincarnation, until now. This is your longest lostest brother, not Ignis, but someone you didn't even know about. This is him, he's here, my god, this is your brother. Uh, and that's for anyone who got not a shitty roll, like anything above a ten. No, Frankie is deeply, deeply in love with Anya, so I'm not betraying you guys.
I.
Alright. Wait, so what about, what if you get a, wait, what did I roll again? Is that, is that me too? A four, fourteen dude?
Yes, he would never betray.
Anything above a ten.
Yeah, anything above a ten.
Oh, above a ten, I thought you said below a ten.
No.
Pays me to roll an insight. Uh, okay, I'd also like one more thing, can I just like look around and like loot the gangster's bodies? I really need some gold, I don't want to, I don't, I.
Well, yeah, actually, what were they?
Um, you know, uh, no, no armor that's like better than yours, they're just kinda built different.
Well, I know, but their attacks were like plus ten, I wanna know what they, what weapons they were using.
Uh, that was, that was their attack bonus plus some like normal crossbows, they're just really kinda what they do.
Yeah.
I, I just wanted to, cause ev- uh, when I looked at them, I'm like gun, they all have a gun, it was all.
Oh, no, it was crossbows, yeah, they all have guns, um, no, as, uh, yeah, uh, Macostra, roll me a loot check.
Uh, can I use my passive investigation for loot check?
Nope.
Okay. Alright, coolio, I'm mostly just looking for like ghoul- gold or anything, like if I, if I roll high enough, I'm rolling, I'm, I'm looking for gold, I'm looking for gold! Over nat twenty, a nat twenty, nat twenty!
Prove it.
I was!
Um.
There it is, it's on the dice I rolled.
Oh, okay, you get, uh, you get about forty gold.
Forty gold, pog.
Alright, I'll, I'll make a loot check as well, I'm.
Cool.
Eat my dust, Karuk.
Uh, I got a twelve.
Uh, yeah, you get about twelve gold.
Twelve, okay.
Yeah.
About what you rolled with the twelve?
I, yeah, actually, I think I'm gonna, it's, hmm, so the drake, the Draco lich, whatever the fuck it's called, it's just a bunch of bones, right?
Just a bunch of bones.
Okay. Damn it, I wanted to see if I could get like a hide or something.
As, uh, is there anything you guys wanna do before the big announcement?
Uh, I wanna help heal up Frankie.
Of course, naturally, everyone kinda patches each other up, but I was wondering if anyone does anything like big, or if we can just cut to when you guys go to see the announcement?
Uh.
Have you rolled for dick sizes yet?
Sure.
Let's, let's do it a-.
Not right now.
Let's do it after.
I'm really interested in Frankie's dick size now, I don't know why.
I feel like Jack's had it, like, this session has been so long.
It's been filled with content, though.
Battle was as long as sludge time, but in a completely different way.
Yeah, that was, like, this has been the fucking best session, like, so much shit is weird.
Alright, let's go, uh, let's get to the mayor's speech.
So, yeah, you guys wait and you go to the announcement, um, and you watch as the mayor steps out with Hawk and Amelia behind her, and she says, Hello, everyone. I have come to a change of heart in the last few days. Christmas is what is important to this town, Christmas is everything. So, I would like to welcome back, as you all are standing like a giant crowd, uh, Mr. Happy, he made a few mistakes as Mr. Happy went so, he attacked some innocent people. But god damn it, he's got the Christmas spirit. Mr. Happy has gone as far to provide me, Amelia, and Hawk with some classic eggnog. And we will be indulging in setting.
So, Loba has no idea what's going on here.
Nope, as, um, first, the mayor takes a sip, and nothing happens, okay.
Oh, I wanted to try and shoot one of them off. I do not want sludge time anymore.
Please, go for it.
I swear, if I roll horribly, this is gonna be really bad.
Who are you shooting at, what glass?
You are trying to shoot at the mayor, please do this.
I really want to see what this happens.
Tell me what your expectation is here and how you're gonna be surprised when you're punished for it.
What'd you roll?
I'm punished for it, I just do not want sludge time, I'm thinking about this in character.
What'd you roll?
So, I don't know, I'll roll the hit.
Uh, twenty-two to shoot the glass. Cool, immediately shooting the glass, they say, get her, and Hawk, and everyone seizes on you and grabs you.
Why'd you do that?
Hey, Loba, 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 Loba.
As, Anisha's pulled away to be arrested.
Loba.
Bye, Anisha.
Loba, let it happen.
Bye, small one.
Um, okay, so, we fought, remember the sludge thing I told you about a few nights ago at the bar?
Yeah.
Uh, it came from the eggnog.
As the mayor's now being pulled away after an assassination attempt, and everyone's freaking out, like running around screaming, uh, Hawk walks up to you guys and says, that was fucking weird.
Yes.
Oh, uh, well, you see, I think there may have been a bit of a mis- Well, you see Hawk, I think there may have been a bit of a misunderstanding there, uh, this, according to what this group tells me, uh, Mr. Happy is the one who turned them all into sludge at one point, right?
Oh, yeah, well, they looked at this eggnog, it's normal, it's not the sludge eggnog.
Fuck.
It's normal eggnog?
Yeah, it looks, it is a little, um.
Know what I would assume, I would assume.
It's a little. Fuck, it's coming down a little weird.
Uh, you sure it's not sludge?
As he begins choking.
Oh, oh, yes, uh.
And falls on the ground, as his, uh, veins turn purple, I pick him up and heimlich him.
Uh, I don't think he's choking.
Uh, Karuk.
I think it was poison.
Karuk doesn't have critical thinking abilities, I pick him up and heimlich him.
No, that's what I'm saying!
I'm gonna use, as, um, Hawk begins.
Kill him now, I don't know what he's doing.
I, I, I use raise, can I use raise dead?
He's not dead yet, as, as Hawk looks at you guys, he says, you guys stop Santa, or else, we're all fucked. And he explodes.
I guess I'm not using a spell on that.
Shit, uh.
This world will be ending our session.
Oh. Oh, no.
Uh.
Roll for dick sizes.
Dick size roll.
It looks like Anisha made the right move.
Uh, actually, I, I think that was, I think that was the, I think that was the Kraken thing.
Yeah, I, I made the right move, shot the wrong glass.
I think that was the Kraken thing.
How do you know all the glasses didn't have?
Fun fact about this session.
Oh, yeah.
There was an alternate combat encounter if you guys chose to try to prevent Hawk from dying, no one did that.
Yeah, nobody would tell Loba that that's what the I was for, Macostra didn't tell them.
There was an, I wrote in a completely different combat encounter if the goal was to try to prevent the assassination attempt.
Macostra was like.
But no one cared.
I, I was, I was really, really tempted just to be like, uh, my name's Macostra, what's yours?
I honestly, I'm really.
All the rest of you made the deal, and nobody ever even told me that the I was to kill Hawk. Like, I remember I got mad at Macostra about it, and then Karuk showed up with the.
Didn't think you guys would kill Hawk, but here we are.
We are off, the dick size, dick size, sign.
Alright, alright, Karu- alright, Karuk's up first with dick size.
Alright, so it's D six plus con, right?
Okay.
Yeah.
Oh, D six.
Or am I D six? Oh, what'd he get?
Oh, my god.
Holy shit, that's half, that's half as tall, that's half as tall as Hawk's.
He was so insecure, his best friend had somehow even larger than him.
Alright, Loba time.
Loba time.
Seven.
Seven?
Pretty good.
That's respectable, that's re- that's respectable.
Five.
That's, that's average, that's fine.
That's pretty good. But, wait, 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 wait.
Jack, you have to roll for, uh.
Nevermind.
Frankie.
Roll for Frankie.
I don't wanna disappoint anyone.
(laughing).
Show him his best!
Macostra has a bigger dick than Frankie.
Um, I would love to have a post talk for anyone who's.
Uh, I'd love to.
Yeah, I would love to have a post talk.
Can, can we do a post?
Do a deep chat.
Okay.
Alright, end of this.
Uh, I feel bad. Insane.
Insane!
Going into this session, I was like, alright, here's this one combat encounter I have, it's a backup in case they don't go for, to try to save uh, Hawk, but they'll like Hawk, so they'll go for him, and then you guys did it, everyone was just like, no.
Macostra doesn't like Hawk, or Zephyr, Z- yeah, Macostra didn't like Hawk.
I was going to tell Hawk, and then I heard the mayor's announcement, then I was just like, no, he, I probably would want him dead, though.
What?
Well, not want him dead, but if that's gonna further our goal, we might as well, I, I, the other thing, the mayor's, the, the mayor's announcement gave, uh, gave me like no hope in the law enforcement, so I was like, okay, I guess I have.
See, the thing is, Hawk, Hawk's always been on your side, but he's just.
Hawk was like the one that was actually helping us, though.
But I didn't know that.
Again, I would like to reiterate, Loba probably would have objected to killing Hawk, but nobody told him that that's what we were doing. Macostra wouldn't tell me.
I, I, I didn't want to because I would have put a target on their back by saying, yeah, hey, we're trying to assassinate Hawk through the mob.
And, and then, and then right as I was about to, like, intimidate the information out of him, uh, Karuk shows up with the headquarters of their base, so I just like forgot about it.
Hmm.
Yeah, damn it, if, if I had shot, I have a question, uh, Jack, if I had shot, um, Hawk's glass, would he survive?
Yes.
Ah.
Wow.
I, I know, I, I take value, like, again, I wrote this story with Hawk living in mind, but wrote this alternate path where he doesn't. You guys just took the alternate path.
Mm-hmm.
I, uh, yeah.
Cause my assumption is Hawk would come in, prove himself useful after he's like strong and also out there to help you guys, so then after you give the poison to them, it'll be like, alright, how do we save Hawk? But no one cared, everyone is like, cool, and now Hawk dies, and I'm like.
I, I was surprised that I was the only one freaked out by the eggnog.
Um.
Well, again, Loba doesn't know.
I get why Coleman is, but everyone was just like.
The problem is, it, it would look like an assassination attempt.
It would look like an assassination, yeah.
Well, I loved that even a session that crazy ended with Anisha, like.
Getting arrested.
Yeah.
If we, if we went into this session thinking that Ani- uh, Ni- uh, Anya would, would get with a random NPC that you made up because of, through an ultimate path line, Anisha would shoot the mayor, Anisha would shit, nearly shit herself. The conversation between Macostra and Bear- and Loba happening.
Here's the thing I'm, I'm most in awe of, and this is like a huge congratulations to all of you, frickin' Loba Hubbard reappeared in this session, and he didn't do any of the like top three craziest things that happened. Like, Loba was being fairly normal.
He was, I, I.
That's the thing, I.
I think he was the straight man in a lot of this.
Level one, I honestly think Anisha's one of my most chaotic characters.
Yeah.
Oh, my god.
I'm just, I'm impressed, your chaos levels have exceed, have begun to exceed mine. Anyway, I have to go eat dinner, so I think I'm gonna.
Go eat din-dins, Lamo, go eat din-dins, Lamo.
That was a good session for Karuk, too.
That wasn't, um, yeah, that was a great, I think everyone had their moments in that session, which I'm really happy.
I really liked that moment with Karuk, I liked that moment with Caitlin a lot, actually.
Yeah.
God, and I still haven't heard Jack shit up from Anya about the dreamer, cause I would actually like to talk to her about that.
Anya wasn't there to talk about the dreamer, yeah, they left.
Yeah, I wasn't there.
They left to go eat a pie.
Anisha was being, Anisha was being so chaotic.
No, because I was.
Honestly, yeah, she just shit her pants, she shit her pants and tried to kill the mayor, but.
I did not try, I did not try and kill the mayor.
I know, it looked.
I lo- I love how you said, I didn't try to kill the mayor, but not, I didn't try to shit my pants.
No, I, I, I did try to stop that, but I was just like, fuck it, I didn't expect you guys to be on the other way, but that's fair, uh, Jack didn't do me like that, uh.
Oh, god, I honestly, I honestly, if Macostra probably went to the other, the other combat encounter, like, they probably, I was very scared at the beginning of combat encounter with the nat one, and like, only getting half asleep of them just dying. And I was so scared of that happening, but.
But I liked, you, you, you pretty much did your own thing in that round.
Yeah, there was a point, I think, when everyone kind of just like went off into their own corners, and I was like, I think the best thing for Macostra to do.
Like, cool, nobody's gonna attack me now.
Yeah, I think Macostra would just be like, I'm just gonna be the straight man and just walk and get the info and maybe leave if I get the chance to.
Yeah, also, I just realized for your meme in Jack's campaign, you misspelled Macostra.
I did? Wait, hold on.
Macostra.
I was trying to type that as soon as, let me see that, where is it, where is it, where is it, where is it?
Oh, yeah, I know in the meme.
Which meme?
The one with Tommy and Macostra, what the fuck?
Oh, yeah, I think that, yeah, I just fucked, yeah, whatever. Uh, I'll leave it up, but whatever, because I misspelled Tommy too, I, I, I just assumed that every single like E, like Frankie is spelled with an IE, all the mobsters just have IE at the end of their name.
Alyssa, we need to talk, uh.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah.
Uh.
We can talk about it later.
Yeah.
I, I was so.
God, I'm so excited for the next session.
Early in the session, we were like, Alyssa, why aren't you talking? And then by the end of the session, she was falling in love with an NPC mobster, like.
Yeah.
All, all the balance restored.
God, fuck, uh, I really want this next, I wanna know when the next session is, I'm, I'm already really excited.
I'm excited, huh.
How is this party so chaotic that Loba shows up and it's like, what, what is going on?
Yeah, this, this actually, I think we surprisingly get along, but we are all so chaotic, uh.
Yeah, campaign, campaign two was like, everybody was morally dubious, but most of the characters weren't that chaotic.
Yeah.
Like Myra and.
Myron the Baron was chaotic.
Myron and Baron.
Jack's made this joke before, but Baron was chaotic lawful, like, he was fucking, it was hard to pinpoint what he would do. Actually, it was easy to pinpoint what he would do, but he would do something either very like lawful and orderly or chaotic as all shit.
I, I'm so happy I've finally actually been able to roleplay Anisha's chaos, finally, like, pretty well.
Yeah, she wasn't, I don't remember her being this crazy.
Yeah, I don't think she had many options to with being on a boat.
Yeah, here's the thing, uh, I, I think after I wrote more of what, uh, she's done, I was like, yeah, now I think it's definitely time to be more chaotic.
Mm-hmm.
Well, you did unmask Dark Knight Grunreap.
I did.
Yeah. God, I wonder what, how Dark Knight would react to, um, with, uh.
Probably pretty similar, he'd be like, what are you guys doing? Let's go.
This is not justice.
This is not.
I don't know what this is.
Like, so does Anya fall on chaotic good?
Uh, I guess.
Anya's good, I don't know, how, I don't know how chaotic she is.
Anya's chaotic, I don't remember.
Yeah. No, she's true, she's true chaotic neutral, because she doesn't remember anything, so that makes her neutral.
True.
Not make her neutral, her actions speak otherwise.
Mm-hmm. Ah, god.
Oh, no, that makes sense, actually, now that I think about it.
For the longest time, I'm so surprised that none of you were guys were like, wait, who's Makostra?
Oh, yeah, what if somebody like didn't watch the mayor?
Everyone, yeah, I wanted, I wanted to be the one who did that, but then like we just glossed over it, I'm like.
Yeah. It's fine, it just kept going, so whatever.
Yeah, it was whatever, it was like, we were all okay with it, like, to be honest, none of us would have known you.
True.
None of us would have known Makostra, Loba's. I'm always like, okay, does, uh, what does Loba know from campaign two, and the answer is nothing related to Makostra.
That's true.
That was, because the Makostra stuff was going on literally at the same time that his chapter was going, so like. Does Loba even, I guess Loba has probably heard the Baron name.
Four of chapter four is the Baron, is the, yeah, it's the Baron session.
Mm-hmm.
Like, you, that was called the Baron one-shot in that thing, but I consider that session four.
Of chapter four, yeah.
Of chapter four, and just that episode's called Baron Alone, it's like the Zuko Alone. Shit like that.
Hmm.
Baron Alone, betrayed by everyone.
No, yeah, and it's funny, cause recently I've been like, oh, I hope this campaign like lives up to the memes of our previous ones, and it did.
This one, this one's already made it more meme-y than I think maybe one point five and one were, honestly.
This is so much more meme-y. This may already be more meme-y.
I mean, two, I don't, I don't know if two will ever be topped, just cause I think about the Baron and laugh.
Well, the thing is Baron has kind of evolved past being a character and just into like a shitpost, just like Monokuma.
He is the Nagito Komida of fucking, of our campaign, cause he's, by, by all means, kind of, he's a pretty serious character sometimes. But we treat him like such a joke.
Like, no one, no one said the Baron in this entire arc, because no, because like Makostra knows who the Baron is. But like, Loba doesn't know who the Baron is, really, and like, no one else that's alive knew who it was.
Loba's probably heard the name The Baron, but.
Everyone.
Because the Baron wasn't with that group, he would, he wouldn't really.
He doesn't have a relationship, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I love it, because like we have, cause I think of like three of us have like people we know that were in the Nocturne event, and then we just don't talk about it.
Hmm.
The entity of the Baron thing will never be recreated, but.
Yeah, you guys have connections that you don't even realize you have.
Yeah. We haven't talked about those connections yet, mm.
Yeah.
I'm really, uh, honestly, I really hope we get to that at some point.
To see what the fuck happens next session, mainly because I'm just kinda.
I don't know who's gonna be like, yo. Yo, do we need to go get?
Break you out of jail like we did with Myra back in campaign one.
Do we, do we need to go get Anisha out of jail?
Saw this image and just laughed, and I was like, he's talking around the corner, and I captured it, Monokuma, I have a business.
I'm basically Myra, but I'm not a whore.
Yeah, Anisha's becoming.
Okay, okay. What's, 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 what's? It's just Rangers.
I guess.
Rangers are all chaotic.
Legit, what's, what's, what's more chaotic? Uh, killing a child while kidnapping a religious figure, shedding your pants in the back alley.
I for, I for, I forgot we had, I forgot we had the, I forgot we relived the where is he moment, this, this was a really good session.
Yeah. The, the shit.
I'm glad I'm playing as Loba, and I mean, Dark Knight was funny, but I don't know.
Loba is so like cunning, but when he fails, he's like so awkward.
He also, Loba gets so pissed also.
Yeah, no, I just realized.
It's like when things are going his way, he's like, what is going on right?
I think, I think what was the moment, the moment like when he was like in the dream with like Warren and we're talking about the Dreamer and like Lyra and all that shit, what, what did he say? He's like, I'm out of here, I don't care anymore, yeah, and that like.
Was this when we were, was this when the dream started being about Myra and Ponson's love life?
No, 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 this was, this was about like plot relevant stuff that would've been like.
It's like, Pyra, My- Pyra, Mont- Myra and Ponson having to like. Face each other and like talk about the, Myra's feelings for her, and it was very like dramatic and stuff, and Loba was like, I don't care.
Yeah, he was exactly like that in this session too, I think he may have said the same line, I don't care anymore.
Yeah, Coleman, honestly, I feel like you haven't really changed much with Dark Knight, because you get just as pissed.
Yeah.
Dark Knight was a man baby, but.
Dark Knight, yeah, Dark Knight was a man baby, Loba is like. Loba, Loba is like a goofy country bumpkin slash evil schemer. Uh, but, yeah, he definitely also gets pissed.
Oh, my god, if I ever do another. If I ever do another, um. Campaign vines video, I'm definitely gonna do the, what the fuck, is that allowed?
Red one, you should, you should do one just for two point five.
Yeah, do one for two.
Stop.
Stop, stop, stop the heck.
It's been too long since I've had a good problem.
I hope you guys continue to chaotically watch, okay, I also just, I loved the entire bit of me trying to mission impossible my way into their room and failing for.
Because of insomnia.
That's what, when Luke rolled a nat one and he was freaking out about it, I'm like, he doesn't know, but this also, but this actually.
I was, I was ready for like a real dramatic moment where the two would like face down because you break in. But then you were like, I don't wanna go into that room, and then you banked on the idea that another character would jump out a window instead of just going through the door. Which you completely forgot, and then.
Okay, but they said, come out the window, we're outside the window.
I don't think Makostra would jump out the window, I think Makostra would just go through the like the hallway like a normal person, also, that would've been way too funny to mess up.
Yeah, I do, I do, it was, uh, cause like Dark Knight would fly out windows.
Anisha's walked out windows, who's Caitlin flew out a window?
I, I just figured if I prompted you to climb out a window, you would.
But no. And that ruined your entire plan.
And then I tried to stomp away.
And then I was like, wait, you, you're like Boogie, wait, I definitely would hear that.
There's, there, there is a lot of, uh.
What's up, ladies and gentlemen of YouTube, Boogie2998 here.
Wait, where, where'd the height chart go, where'd the height chart go? Is in memes?
It's up there.
There was.
Oh, there it is.
There, there was a lot of, uh, shit.
I love, I love the wor- I love the hands, I love the hands out.
Oh, my, yeah, I also love the, huh huh, right next to.
Like, green Boogie, or no, purple Boogie is probably more accurately what Loba looks like.
Yeah, for the longest time, I just like, was thinking of an orc, but this is way funnier. This, this character has evolved into Boogie2998, it wasn't based off of him, it was based off Loba, and then we were like, wait, no. Wouldn't it be funnier if it was Boogie2998?
No, I was like, what's Loba's like actual humanoid form?
I would love to commission Loba from someone.
Hair was for immersion.
Like, and all you have to do is just ask them, please draw Boogie.
2998 as a fat orc.
Um, the other funny thing is, Coleman will literally never have to ask for a commission of the Baron, because Palmer is exactly what he looks like.
Yeah, it really is.
Like, with characters like Monty, we're like, oh, well, he kinda looks like this, but it'd be cool if we had like a commission of him, but like, I feel like Palmer is like, that is the Baron, right?
Ain't still hasn't got his commission.
It is, and I'm literally, I have usurped, I have usurped. Palm, it is not Baron is Palmer, Palmer is.
Baron.
Because the Baron has usurped Palmer.
It just came, cause you were like, I saw this guy in the Final Fantasy, it was much funnier. And, and yeah, like, I honestly, I don't think there's anything about that look, look at the danganron, suppose that I would be like, oh, I wish we could commission, like, honestly, that, that looks exactly what I picture him looking.
Yeah, I don't, yeah, I really don't feel like he'd look anybody, yeah.
Like, that's how he dressed too.
Uh, yeah, that was how he dressed, there was, there's nothing about it that, if, if I was gonna commission anything, I'd commission like Baby Baron.
Please commission Baby Baron.
Oh, god.
Oh, god damn it.
So Baby, okay, Baby Mario leaning back and crossing his arms is a Baron, is.
Cartoon character crossing his arms, fuck.
Uh, this, this is the fun of D and B.
Oh, my god.
I wanna get Anya and Frankie commissioned.
God damn it.
Honestly, commission Nemenda, is that allowed pose?
Is that allowed?
I, I, I like the Wolverine one, I really like the Wolverine one, cause I think that just captures a, a little bit.
Everyone else.
I, I, I think I actually imagined that like pose, and I was like, I, I wanna, I want Makostra to be in Wolverine situation where they just. Like, look away, seem like, seem like positioning to and just walk that direction towards the green dude. Like, cause he has done nothing, and I think that if I just reasonably explain, tell him like, look, what's going on right here? Dude, just. And I love how he immediately agrees.
So if we ever run into Thomas again, the green one, uh, I feel like it's gonna be like. If, if any of you watched Psych, like that one Asian dude from Psych that they hired to be their assistant. And then like every time they run into him in future episodes, he's like, oh, oh god, not you guys again. Tommy would react if we ever run into him, like, oh god, not these guys again.
I like, I like the one we associate characters with like an image being like, oh, this character is that character, like, so with Macy, I did Mika from Kaguya. So I get images like this, that just may, that I'm like, oh, that's Macy, and I'm like, no, it's not.